If everybody will take their seats, please. We're going to go ahead and get started. Hopefully, we have enough seats for all the youngsters, soccer players, and coaches coming in. The November 4th, 2015 meeting the city council's called to order. This meeting has been properly noticed and posted in compliance with the open meeting law. These proceedings are being recorded as well as presented live on KCLV Cable Channel 2 and are closed captioned for our hearing impaired viewers. Please note, customers of CenturyLink may view this program in high definition on Channel And some customers of Cox Communication who do not have a cable box may view this meeting on digital channel 89.5. The council meeting, as well as all other KCLV programming, be viewed on the Internet at www.lasvegasnevada.gov. The proceedings will be rebroadcast on KCLV Friday at 4:00 a.m., Saturday at 7:00 p.m., Sunday at 7:00 a.m., and the following Monday at 4:30 p.m. This building is protected by state-of-the-art fire detection and suppression sprinkler systems. If the alarm should activate during today's meeting, please evacuate using the exit at the back of the chambers out to the mezzanine. Proceed out the double doors to the terrace and down the back staircase. For anyone who has difficulty with stairs, please check with one of our marshals or fire officials for assistance. Once outside, assemble on the northeast corner across the street from City Hall at Lewis and First Street. Employees wearing safety vests or our city marshals will inform you when it's safe to re-enter the building. For public comment-related items on the agenda, citizen participation, and public hearing items, we have available a speaker card, which you may complete and submit to the city clerk. Cards are available online in the clerk's office or at the rear of these chambers. If you do not submit a card, it does not prevent you from speaking under public comment, citizen participation, or specified public hearing items. If anyone is present today who is in need for hearing impaired equipment, please see our city clerk staff up front. If you parked in the parking garage, every one of you on the team, if you parked in the parking garage, all of you, I'm sure you're old enough to drive, across the street, please make sure, coaches, that you get your tickets validated, and you can do that right outside by our security officials outside. Before we proceed with the agenda, would everyone please rise for the invocation given this morning by Chaplain Steve Sanson, Veterans in Politics International, and remain standing for our pledge of allegiance?
Before I get started, I'd like to say Happy Veterans Day, and Las Vegas City Councilman Bob Coffin, thank you for your service. God bless our city and make it safe and prosperous, a place for families to freely live, grow, and worship. Give our leaders guidance and understanding, and help them fear God rather than men. Replace poor, corrupted government leaders with strong ethical leaders who will serve the people wisely, and justly, and unselfishly. Shut down the corrupt and expose them for who they are. On November 10th, we honor the courageous service and sacrifice of our Marines with whom we are privileged to serve as they celebrate the 240th anniversary of their Corps. We give thanks for all our Marines, past and present, who have remained always faithful to their call to serve their Corps and their nation. We are told that they are, that our purpose is to contact, close with, and destroy the enemy, but we know that in your eyes, the lives of our enemies are just as valuable as the lives of our comrades. Help us focus on our ultimate goal of pursuing world peace and establishing security for all your people. And may we do our part in upholding the legacy of our Corps, maintaining our values of honor, and courage, and commitment. As long as Marines are on duty, may this nation find rest in us, as we submit to you, Semper Fidelis, always faithful to our God, our families, our friends, and our Corps. On November 11th, we will remember all those who have come before us and given the greatest gift to our democratic nation, their lives. Their duty, their honor, and their lives are precious gifts that must be given to the future of our country and our families. The duty of our veterans, past and present, is the fiber of the word "freedom," and is stronger by our recognition of service and sacrifice. We honor the service and sacrifice today, and should carry it forward for our children to honor. Freedom and democracy are the result of all of the most honorable this country has produced. Today, we stand to remember the most honorable amongst us, and we must continue to carry the burden of their sacrifice lest we lose sight of what true freedom is. We pray for the veteran who is crippled in war with the loss of limb, blindness, deafness, and other lifelong reminders of horror. We pray for those injured by the unseen wounds of the mind, those who suffer from post-traumatic stress disorder, traumatic brain injury, and other neurological disorders. We pray for our military veterans in homeless shelters or out on the streets, suffering from wounds they do not understand. Give them comfort, protect them from hunger, cold, and cruelty. We pray for those on active duty and those who are in the reserves. We pray for those deployed who have taken up the baton of legacy. Keep them safe, give them hope, and let them know that they are loved. We pray for the families, the Gold Star Wives, mothers and fathers. We ask you to secure marriages that have paid such a high price with multiple deployments. We pray for the children who will miss their mothers and fathers this holiday season. Today is for remembering. Stand in honor of them, walk in their path of duty, remember the cost, and hold in your heart the cause of freedom. Thank them for their service this Veterans Day and every day. Amen.
(Inaudible)
Morning, everyone. Because we have all these wonderful young people here that are dying to get back to Sorry. Yeah, I see the heads shaking. You'd love to spend the morning with us, and we'd love to have you. And so you could have the whole day off, but we're not doing that. So what we're going to do is we're going to move things around this morning, so with the rain, you can have safe travels back to your schools. So our first item this morning, I'm going to turn the microphone and front and center off to our wonderful Councilman Stavros Anthony, who you see his grin.
Thank you, Mayor.[597.82][597.82](Applause) Well, good morning, everyone. It's always good to see our City Hall crowded with our Las Vegas residents. On the weekend of October 23rd, 24th, and 25th, the City of Las Vegas, in partnership with the Downtown Soccer Club, hosted the Las Vegas Mayor's International Youth Soccer Tournament. We had over 400 teams from around the United States, as well as around the country, including teams from Mexico, Canada, and Haiti, just to mention a few. And of all those teams, and of all those thousands of players, 15 of our local Las Vegas teams took first place in their division. I mean, that is absolutely awesome.[647.04][647.04](Applause) The ages of the players during the October tournament is, their age is 7 through 13. And these are some great soccer players. This is a very competitive golf tournament. Teams come from all over, like I said, the country and the world, and they're ready to play some serious soccer. So to take first place in your division against some serious teams is really a big deal. This is the 16th year the Las Vegas Mayor Soccer Cup has been held, and it is the largest international soccer tournament in the country. And it's held here in the great Las Vegas. Not only do we have some great soccer teams that come here and some great soccer games that are played, but in the month of October, as well as in February, where we have the older kids, the ones that are in high school and ready to go on to college to play soccer, we get about $11 million that's pumped into our economy that weekend. We're from, teams are coming here, thousands of players, they're renting hotel rooms, they're eating a lot of food. You can tell these soccer players eat a lot of food because they need the energy to play soccer, they're renting cars, they're spending a lot of money, and that creates jobs and puts people to work. So that's the other great thing about this particular tournament. I just also want to mention the great partners that we have. It's not just the City of Las Vegas, but we have Chapman Jeep Dodge, we have Generation Adidas International, the Las Vegas Pro Soccer Challenge Cup, and the Downtown Las Vegas Soccer Club. That is our primary partner. And the president of the Las Vegas Downtown Soccer Club is Roger Taber. So why don't you come down here, Roger?[761.82][761.82](Applause) And the reason I get to do the presentation today is because the finals for the soccer tournament are played at the Betty Wilson Soccer Field, which is in the Great Ward Four, which I represent. And I'm honored to go out there on Sunday and hand out trophies, and I know the mayor goes out there, and Councilman Coffin also goes out there. But it's a lot of fun showing up on Sunday and handing out the trophies to not only our local teams, but from teams from all over the world, and see how excited they are to get first place, and how excited they are to, not so much to get second place, but they do get second-place medals. So with that, I'd like to ask Roger Taber to say a couple of words about the tournament.
Thank you very much, Councilman Anthony. First of all, this wouldn't work as well as it does without the support of the City of Las Vegas and the Parks Department. What I'd like to do is just get a show of hands from all the kids that played, if you thought Betty Wilson was the best soccer field you ever played on in anywhere in any city.[831.57][831.57](Laughter) So, anyway, Betty Wilson's actually, I mean, the parks were absolutely spectacular this year, better than ever. Weather conditions were terrific, and, you know, we're very proud of this. Councilman Anthony, forgot to mention that we broke into Chile this year for the first time, so we actually had another team that came all the way from Chile that played in the tournament. Chile, right? Okay. Yeah. Or as my dad would say, "Hot today, chilly today, hot tomorrow." Anyway, I wanted, on behalf of Downtown Las Vegas Soccer Club, the City of Las Vegas, wanted to congratulate all the kids that won today, but also the parents that come here to support them and get a chance to learn about city government. So thank you all for coming.[876.57][876.57](Applause)
Thank you, Roger. You know, as Roger mentioned, there is a lot of work putting, put into not only leading up to the tournament, but the actual weekend of that tournament. There's a lot of folks that are involved, and the ones I really want to recognize are Tim Hacker from our Parks and Rec Department. Tim, where are you? Tim, stand up. Thank you, Tim.[901.13][901.13](Applause) And then from our Operations and Maintenance, Daphne Legars and Steve Ford, are you guys here? Daphne, go stand up, thank you.[913.82][913.82](Applause) But the one that is out there all weekend, probably 24/7, I think she actually sleeps out there, and the one that I get to hang out with on Sunday when we're handing out trophies is Sherri Alexander. So Sherri, why don't you come on up here? She's really the heart and soul. All of you just need to look at Sherri and understand, she's the one that puts this thing together. So do you want to say anything?
Thank you. You know what? The Downtown Soccer Club does all the work for me now. I started this 18 years ago with just 56 local teams, but with their 400 volunteers, they're the ones that do all the work. I'm very thankful to have this job, to be able to be part of this tournament, and I just thank all you guys for coming out here and participating, and for winning, too. It's awesome to see local talent take first place in these tournaments. It's really fantastic. So thank you.
Good job, Sherri.[981.63][981.63](Applause) And lastly, just a nice shout-out to the parents, all the parents that drag their kids to soccer games and practice and put in the time to make sure that their kids get the training that they want to get, and their family members, and the coaches that volunteer their time. There's a lot of folks that are involved in putting this great tournament together. So with that, what I would like to do, and we're going to kind of go through this pretty quick, is I am going to call your team name and coach. I want you to come down here. We're going to get a picture taken with the mayor and the entire city council. We're going to send you off to school, because that's where you're supposed to be right now. And then we're going to call the next team down. We have 15 teams. We're going to go through this so all of you get a picture of your team with your trophies and the mayor and council. So with that... Want to help me move this, Jace? Okay, our first team is the Boys Under Nine Chapman Division Winners, Players SC07 Elite, Coach Fernando Alas. Come on down here.[1054.88][1054.88](Applause) And we also have a certificate of appreciation signed by the mayor and the city council for the coach and the players. All right, everybody taking these. Oh, you guys don't need to take a knee, you're too short. So everybody stand there, let's squeeze in and get a picture.
All right, ready? One, two, three.
All right, next is the Boys Under 12 Adidas Division Winners, the Barcelona NVTFA07, Coach Steve Escalante. Come on down.[1114.11][1114.11](Applause) All right, everybody squeeze in? All right, everybody squeeze in? Our next team is the Boys Under 13 Chapman Division Winners, Vegas All Boys FC03 MT, Coach Armando Orozgo. Come on down.[1181.65][1181.65](Applause) All right, congratulations. Our next team is the Boys Under 13 Chapman Division Winners, Vegas All Boys FC03 MT, Coach Armando Orozgo. Come on down.[1191.65][1191.65](Applause) All right, congratulations. Okay, next we have the Boys Under 13 Adidas Division Winners, the LVSA03 Red, Coach Thomas Tate. Come on down.[1211.92][1211.92](Applause) Good job, congratulations. Okay, next we have the Boys Under 13 Adidas Division Winners, the LVS A03 Red, Coach Thomas Tate. Come on down.[1231.92][1231.92](Applause) All right, good job. Next we have the Boys Under 14 Chapman Division Winners, the LVS A02 Red, Coach Jeff Manday. Come on down.[1249.92][1249.92](Applause) Are they not here? Okay, we'll give them a nice round of applause. I guess they couldn't make it.[1253.92][1253.92](Applause) Next we have, and this team I believe was not able to make it, the Boys Under 14 Rotary of Las Vegas Division Winners, the NSYSL Manchester United, Coach Jose Perez. Are they here? Oh, they are here, all right.[1266.42][1266.42](Applause) My notes said you weren't here, so I'm glad you made it.
If you're tall, you're going to have to be on your knees in front. Let's have you be in front. All right, ready? Look right here. One, two, three.
All right, congratulations.[1326.92][1326.92](Applause) Next we have the Boys Under 14 Chapman Division Winners, the LVS A02 Red, Coach Travis Colomas. Come on down.[1338.92][1338.92](Applause) Under 8 Division.
And you might announce that if they've been not in their certificates today, and their coaches can leave to board their buses.
Is your daughter on his team? That's awesome. That's good to know.[1345.92][1345.92](Applause)
All right, we're going to have you, do you want to get on your knee and line? Do you have the trophy? All right, ready? Everybody's going to look right here, okay? Ready? One, two, three.
All right, congratulations.[1353.92][1353.92](Applause) Next we have the Girls Under 10 Adidas Division Winners, the LV Revolution Green, Coach David Ren. All right.[1366.04][1366.04](Applause) Got their trophy with them?
All right, congratulations.[1369.04][1369.04](Applause)
Next we have the Girls Under 10 Adidas Division Winners, the Rudy Girls, Coach Rudy Manuel. Come on down.[1380.92][1380.92](Applause) The Rudy Girls.
All right, ready? We're going to look right here, okay? Ready? Everybody look right here. One, two, three.
All right, congratulations.[1388.92][1388.92](Applause) Next we have the Girls Under 11 Adidas Division Winners, the SSG SL Ginga Brazil, Coach Everton Sistari.[1415.92][1415.92](Applause) Ginga, Ginga Brazil.
Did I say Ginga? Did I say Ginga? I'm not sure. I probably did. Congratulations. Good job.
Way to go, girls. Way to go, girls. Push the captain.
Good job. Good job. Good job. Good job. Good job. There you go. All right, everybody look right here. Ready? One, two, three.
Hold that pose. There's a lot of dads taking pictures. Smile at your dads. All right, congratulations.[1438.92][1438.92](Applause) Next is the Girls Under 12 Chapman Division Winners, the LV PSA04 Red, Coach Michael Madrid. Are they here? I don't think they're here. Give them a nice round of applause.[1451.23][1451.23](Applause) Next is the Girls Under 12 Adidas Division Winners, the LV Neon04 Blue, Coach David Asparizou.[1453.23][1453.23](Applause) Hey, happy birthday![1455.23][1455.23](Applause) All right, congratulations. Next is the Girls Under 13 Chapman Division Winners, the LV... Did I read this already?[1459.23]
You get it?
Alright, congratulations. Next we have the girls under 10 Adidas Division winners, the Rudy Girls. Coach Rudy Manuel, come on down. The Rudy Girls.
She has her trophy to work. I like that.
Alright, ready? We're gonna look right here, okay? Ready? Everybody look right here. One, two, three.
A lot of mom taking pictures. Stay right where you are. Stay right where you are. Are you smiling?
We got him.
Alright, congratulations. Next we have the girls under 11 Adidas Division winners, the SSGSL Ginga Brazil. Coach Everton Sistari. Ginga. Ginga Brazil.
Where are they? Here they come. Oh, here they are.
Did I say Ginga? Did I say Ginga?
I'm not sure which one.
I probably did. Congratulations.
Good job. Congratulations, coach. Way to go, girls. Way to go, girls. Push the captain.
Good job. Good job. Good job.
There you go.
Alright, everybody look right here. Ready? One, two, three.
Hold that pose. There's a lot of dads taking pictures. Smile at your dads.
Alright, congratulations. Next is the girls under 12 Chapman Division winners, the LVPSA 04 red. Coach Michael Madrid, are they here?
Is that 13?
Okay, it says here that they couldn't make it, so congratulations. Next we have the girls under 13 Rotary of Las Vegas Division winners, the LVNEON 04 blue. Coach David Buanto, are they here? Okay, congratulations. Then we have the girls under 14 Chapman Division winners, the LVPSA 02 red. Coach Nelson Medina.
We're all gonna screw them together?
Yeah.
You're gonna go up to the chair or?
It's the way down.
Put it on your knee right there. Yes, you're gonna have those big buns. Congratulations.
Should've sent them to the team before. Yeah. We'll call them angles.
Do you wanna have you do this?
Do what I? Counselor right here? Yeah, you got back.
Alright, one, two, three.
Mom's got it?
Got it, thank you.
Okay, we do have one, the Las Vegas Neon 03 blue team, David Buanto, the division winner, so we have the coach and the one team member here, so come on down and we'll get a picture taken. Alright, congratulations, all the teams. Las Vegas had a big showing, thank you very much.
Wonderful. Well done, councilman, that was great. Alright, now we're on to our original program. And it's much cooler in here now, do you notice, without all those little hot bodies? Okay, anyway, we're into our ceremonial portion of the agenda, and I'd like to invite our Neighborhood Services Director Steve Harson, please to come up here, and Deputy Director Dr. Lisa Morris Hebler to join us. And the round of applause, I think there's a team here. Hi, good morning. I love it. You never know. Every day she comes in, she looks different, every single day. Alright, so everybody's kissed and hugged, everybody, okay. So, as we all know, this portion of the agenda, this is our action team. Our employees strive to be superheroes in the workplace, meeting our values of action, and those letters stand for achievement, creativity, teamwork, integrity, and ownership now. They build our community, make life better. When we have a team of employees who exemplify these values, we recognize them as an action team. The city of Las Vegas is working hard to help improve educational development in our community, and Lisa leads a team committed to this goal. The Batteries Included program, one of my favorite, favorite, favorites, has been a great example of what success can be if opportunities and support are evident. The program focuses on developing team leadership in several of our city schools. In the 2014-2015 school year, 135 high school seniors were involved in this program, and 135 of them graduated. Is that awesome? That's leadership. The city staff works cooperatively with the Clark County School District, UNLV, and Nevada Partners organizations to increase student achievement and graduation rates simultaneously, preparing our high school students either for college or entering a career path into the workforce. This program nearly doubled in size from seven schools that were participating to 13 this past year, and we're on schedule to add two more schools next year. I ask all the employees here, who are with us today, representing Batteries Included, to please come down and join us here at the podium. So let's thank each of them by a round of applause as you all come on down here. Awesome, there's nothing like success for more success. Excellent. Steve and Lisa, we have certificates recognizing this group's accomplishments that I want to give to you, but I'd like to ask each of you first to say a few words about the program and this great team.
Thank you, Mayor. First and foremost, I think that as we build community to make life better, there's no better way than to do it through our youth. This is a team of individuals that have done an incredible job for our community. I remember 12 years ago, working with the former Deputy of Leisure Services Director, researching this kind of program, and to see what these people have done in this time is absolutely amazing. So again, big round of applause to you guys, the difference you make is unbelievable. I'm gonna let Lisa talk a little bit about the program, but again, we're very proud of you.
Thank you, Mayor, and good morning to everyone. This is one of our favorite programs because we are really helping our youth to stay on track to graduate, and we hear a lot in the news about what youth they're doing wrong, and this program is all about what youth they're doing right. And we have a great team of adult advisors that work both in the community and in the schools with our young people. We brought on a couple of new sites this year, Bonanza High School being one of them, and then also West Prep. But these young people are out doing leadership, they are also learning about careers and college opportunities, and really about how to grow into responsible adults, and I think that is something that's remarkable, and we should be proud to have such a program. I also want to thank Director Hacker, because his team is involved, and also Director Nancy Deener, for her support of the program as well.
Great, wonderful. Congratulations. We look forward to next year. Is anybody dying to say something to add to this? Wonderful.
Good morning. I would just like to say, I really congratulate the hard work that the adult leaders at each one of these sites, schools and community centers, that they give every day consistently their life and their passion for these young people, and that's why we're here today, because of their great support and all their hard work. Thank you, guys.
Absolutely, we're so grateful. Any other comment? You're cool? Okay. You thought I was gonna pass the mic to you, I wouldn't do that unless you say yes. So congratulations, we're so proud, everything that you do, all the time, every single day. And Lisa and Steve especially, thank you for this, this is wonderful. Congratulations, and I think we have the certificates for each of them. Wonderful, thank you. For our next item, I was going to give the microphone over to Councilman Barlow, because we have a wonderful collector's car show coming to Las Vegas. Councilman Barlow of Ward 5, who is going to be doing this recognition, is out of town actually in London on behalf of the Las Vegas Convention and Visitors Authority World Market that he goes to. And he couldn't be here today, but he asked if I would recognize, which I adore doing, the 2015 Auburn Cord and Duesenberg West Coast Meet, November 6th through 8th, that's gonna be held at the Fremont Street Experience. Last month, I was lucky enough to have a photo op with these beautiful automobiles, and what a treat that was, and those pictures are gonna go in my office. But if you want to talk about luxury, well, let me tell you, these cars are on a plateau by themselves. And joining us today is West Coast Meet Chairwoman Candace Polino. So Candace, will you join us down here, please? And thank you and your club for bringing your show. I mean, this is wonderful, you have anywhere in the world to take the show, but here you are, coming to downtown Las Vegas. And I'm gonna give you the mic, tell us a little bit about it.
Thank you, Mayor. The Auburn Cord Duesenberg Club was formed about 60 years ago, and we get together and we recognize the cars from the 1900 to 1937, when the cars were originally built. The club was formed about 60 years ago, and we've been doing meets throughout the United States and Canada for well over 60 years. For 58 years, the club is in California, and for the 59th year, they asked me to host the event. I told them I would only do this if they brought it to Las Vegas. They did. And I'm so pleased to have these cars coming to the streets of Las Vegas, they're gonna be starting to arrive today, some people will be actually driving their cars from the state of Michigan, and I have cars coming in from Texas, Oklahoma, Michigan, Washington, California, Arizona, and of course Nevada, so I'm very pleased to be having these cars. They are very, very special. These cars have not been made for almost 80 years, and we have them still on the roads, and to have these people bringing their cars out, driving them, not only are they keeping history alive, they're keeping history preserved. And I love having our American cars on the streets, so I'm very pleased to have these cars on the streets of Las Vegas for the next five days. So I'm very thankful to have this, thank you so much, Pete. Thank you.
And we have a proclamation, the city of Las Vegas proclamation, so it's with great honor that we present the Auburn Cord Duesenberg Club 2015, ACD Club West Coast Meet, as they celebrate their first annual Las Vegas Automobile Collector's Show at the Downtown Grand Hotel and Casino. And so, we present this proclamation to you and all of our council, and I have signed this. We're so proud and excited that you chose Las Vegas and especially the downtown. Thank you. Thank you so much, and congratulations. So nice. Oh, here he is promoting. Okay, let's all come in and have a picture, so if we can do this. See, now what's happening, Councilman Barlow represents the north side of Fremont Street, and of course Councilman Coffin represents the south side, so he's really pushing to have the cars on the south side of Fremont. Just amazing. It's great. So it's wonderful, it's raining, now all the cars can be wiped down with the clean rain, you don't have to go to a car wash. Great, so thank you very much. Thanks, thanks so much. Okay. And that's it. So, believe it or not, because then we were gonna do the teams, but we've done the teams, so it is six minutes of 10. We are gonna give everybody a chance to get their whatever, cup of coffee or something, we'll be back exactly six minutes. So the microphone's yours? Thank you very much. [MUSIC PLAYING] Hey, happy birthday!
[CHEERING]
Alright, congratulations. Next is the girls under 13 Chapman Division winners, the LVPSA 04 red. Coach Michael Madrid, are they here? Okay, it says here that they couldn't make it, so congratulations. Next we have the girls under 12 Chapman Division winners, the LVPSA 03 red. Coach Nelson Medina. Okay, congratulations. Then we have the girls under 14 Chapman Division winners, the LVPSA 02 red. Coach Nelson Medina. Okay, congratulations. Next is the girls under 13 Chapman Division winners, the LVPSA 03 red. Coach Michael Madrid, are they here? Okay, it says here that they couldn't make it, so congratulations. Next we have the girls under 13 Rotary of Las Vegas Division winners, the LVPSA 02 blue. Coach David Buanto, are they here? Okay, congratulations. Then we have the girls under 14 Chapman Division winners, the LVPSA 02 red. Coach Nelson Medina. Okay, congratulations, all the teams. Las Vegas had a big showing, thank you very much. Wonderful, well done, councilman, that was great. Alright, now we're on to our original program. And it's much cooler in here now, do you notice, without all those little hot bodies? Okay, anyway, we're into our ceremonial portion of the agenda, and I'd like to invite our Neighborhood Services Director Steve Harson, please to come up here, and Deputy Director Dr. Lisa Morris Hebler to join us. And the round of applause, I think there's a team here. Hi, good morning. I love it. You never know. Every day she comes in, she looks different, every single day. Alright, so everybody's kissed and hugged, everybody, okay. So, as we all know, this portion of the agenda, this is our action team. Our employees strive to be superheroes in the workplace, meeting our values of action, and those letters stand for achievement, creativity, teamwork, integrity, and ownership now. They build our community, make life better. When we have a team of employees who exemplify these values, we recognize them as an action team. The city of Las Vegas is working hard to help improve educational development in our community, and Lisa leads a team committed to this goal. The Batteries Included program, one of my favorite, favorite, favorites, has been a great example of what success can be if opportunities and support are evident. The program focuses on developing team leadership in several of our city schools. In the 2014-2015 school year, 135 high school seniors were involved in this program, and 135 of them graduated. Is that awesome? That's leadership. The city staff works cooperatively with the Clark County School District, UNLV, and Nevada Partners organizations to increase student achievement and graduation rates simultaneously, preparing our high school students either for college or entering a career path into the workforce. This program nearly doubled in size from seven schools that were participating to 13 this past year, and we're on schedule to add two more schools next year. I ask all the employees here, who are with us today, representing Batteries Included, to please come down and join us here at the podium. So let's thank each of them by a round of applause as you all come on down here. Awesome, there's nothing like success for more success. Excellent. Steve and Lisa, we have certificates recognizing this group's accomplishments that I want to give to you, but I'd like to ask each of you first to say a few words about the program and this great team.
Thank you, Mayor. First and foremost, I think that as we build community to make life better, there's no better way than to do it through our youth. This is a team of individuals that have done an incredible job for our community. I remember 12 years ago, working with the former Deputy of Leisure Services Director, researching this kind of program, and to see what these people have done in this time is absolutely amazing. So again, big round of applause to you guys, the difference you make is unbelievable. I'm gonna let Lisa talk a little bit about the program, but again, we're very proud of you.
Thank you, Mayor, and good morning to everyone. This is one of our favorite programs, because we are really helping our youth to stay on track to graduate, and we hear a lot in the news about what youth they're doing wrong, and this program is all about what youth they're doing right. And we have a great team of adult advisors that work both in the community and in the schools with our young people. We've brought on a couple of new sites this year, Bonanza High School being one of them, and then also West Prep. But these young people are out doing leadership, they are also learning about careers and college opportunities, and really about how to grow into responsible adults, and I think that is something that's remarkable, and we should be proud to have such a program. I also want to thank Director Hacker, because his team is involved, and also Director Nancy Deener, for her support of the program as well.
Great, wonderful. Congratulations. We look forward to next year. Is anybody dying to say something to add to this? Wonderful.
Good morning. I would just like to say, I really congratulate the hard work that the adult leaders at each one of these sites, schools and community centers, that they give every day consistently their life and their passion for these young people, and that's why we're here today, because of their great support and all their hard work. Thank you, guys.
Absolutely, we're so grateful. Any other comment? You're cool? Okay. You thought I was gonna pass the mic to you, I wouldn't do that unless you say yes. So congratulations, we're so proud, everything that you do, all the time, every single day. And Lisa and Steve especially, thank you for this, this is wonderful. Congratulations, and I think we have the certificates for each of them. Wonderful, thank you. For our next item, I was going to give the microphone over to Councilman Barlow, because we have a wonderful collector's car show coming to Las Vegas. Councilman Barlow of Ward 5, who is going to be doing this recognition, is out of town actually in London on behalf of the Las Vegas Convention and Visitors Authority World Market that he goes to. And he couldn't be here today, but he asked if I would recognize, which I adore doing, the 2015 Auburn Cord and Duesenberg West Coast Meet, November 6th through 8th, that's gonna be held at the Fremont Street Experience. Last month, I was lucky enough to have a photo op with these beautiful automobiles, and what a treat that was, and those pictures are gonna go in my office. But if you want to talk about luxury, well, let me tell you, these cars are on a plateau by themselves. And joining us today is West Coast Meet Chairwoman Candace Polino. So Candace, will you join us down here, please? And thank you and your club for bringing your show. I mean, this is wonderful, you have anywhere in the world to take the show, but here you are, coming to downtown Las Vegas. And I'm gonna give you the mic, tell us a little bit about it.
Thank you, Mayor. The Auburn Cord Duesenberg Club was formed about 60 years ago, and we get together and we recognize the cars from the 1900 to 1937, when the cars were originally built. The club was formed about 60 years ago, and we've been doing meets throughout the United States and Canada for well over 60 years. For 58 years, the club is in California, and for the 59th year, they asked me to host the event. I told them I would only do this if they brought it to Las Vegas. They did. And I'm so pleased to have these cars coming to the streets of Las Vegas, they're gonna be starting to arrive today, some people will be actually driving their cars from the state of Michigan, and I have cars coming in from Texas, Oklahoma, Michigan, Washington, California, Arizona, and of course Nevada, so I'm very pleased to be having these cars. They are very, very special. These cars have not been made for almost 80 years, and we have them still on the roads, and to have these people bringing their cars out, driving them, not only are they keeping history alive, they're keeping history preserved. And I love having our American cars on the streets, so I'm very pleased to have these cars on the streets of Las Vegas for the next five days. So I'm very thankful to have this, thank you so much, Pete. Thank you.
And we have a proclamation, the city of Las Vegas proclamation, so it's with great honor that we present the Auburn Cord Duesenberg Club 2015, ACD Club West Coast Meet, as they celebrate their first annual Las Vegas Automobile Collector's Show at the Downtown Grand Hotel and Casino. And so, we present this proclamation to you and all of our council, and I have signed this. We're so proud and excited that you chose Las Vegas and especially the downtown. Thank you. Thank you so much, and congratulations. So nice. Oh, here he is promoting. Okay, let's all come in and have a picture, so if we can do this. See, now what's happening, Councilman Barlow represents the north side of Fremont Street, and of course Councilman Coffin represents the south side, so he's really pushing to have the cars on the south side of Fremont. Just amazing. It's great. So it's wonderful, it's raining, now all the cars can be wiped down with the clean rain, you don't have to go to a car wash. Great, so thank you very much. Thanks, thanks so much. Okay. And that's it. So, believe it or not, because then we were gonna do the teams, but we've done the teams, so it is six minutes of 10. We are gonna give everybody a chance to get their whatever, cup of coffee or something, we'll be back exactly six minutes. So the microphone's yours? Thank you very much. [MUSIC PLAYING] 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 Okay, alright, so we are three, and Councilman Beers is in the back there. We're four, very good. Okay, Agenda Item 8. Public comment during this portion of the agenda must be limited to matters on the Agenda for Action. The amount of time any single speaker is allowed may be limited. All comments made will be cross-referenced to the specific items of anyone submitted a speaker card, or who wishes to speak under this portion of the Agenda.
If anyone submitted a speaker card or who wishes to speak under this portion of the agenda, please come to the podium and state your name for the record. We'll set the time, good morning, at one minute.
Good morning, Council. My name is Paul Casey, producer of Car Stars, downtown Las Vegas for the last eight years. And last month was the Back to the Future Global Celebration. We were the official kickoff from NBC Universal, and Mayor Goodman, you were so gracious to be a part of it. So what we have here is a commemorative book for you. As you can see, over 45 DeLoreans in existence, and on the back, the entire cast and crew. And this is for you to thank you. And then, as the future is now, here you are in the car.
Oh, wow.
So thank you very much for all your support. Councilman Ross, I will see you at your car show next month. And I'm very, very excited to participate in that.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. God bless. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I do have cards here from Dennis Bass, Pat Foley. I'm not sure it says Agenda Item Two, but I think it's a different number. Then we have Guy Cutino on 11, and William Karcher on 11, and Jewel Dixon on 29. But again, you don't have to submit a card, but we do have those. So anyone else who wishes to speak under this portion of the agenda?
William Allen.
William Allen. Okay. Good morning. There's a button under the...
Okay. Woo, all right. Viva Las Vegas. Good morning. Boy, this is a soccer town. I love it. So we need to bring the World Cup here. But I'm Alan Karcher, President of Karcher Insurance, 955 Hillwood Drive, Las Vegas, Nevada, one of the oldest companies in Las Vegas, speaking on number 11. I'm just speaking on behalf of the small business community. Please keep it here. I think the last debate was an insurance broker against the bank. It's, we are your local families, as you all know. Our kids were raised here, and I've got another third generation coming into this business. So it ain't going to stop with me. There will be another one coming up here, talking to you. So I just want to say it's an honor to work and be part of this city, and I hope that you support the small business. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else? Please come up and state your name. And we don't need an address, just name, please. And the item that you're referring to.
Item 11. My name's Guy Cutino. I'm a broker with Levitt Insurance Agency. With me today is Jerry Levitt, one of the owners. And just on item 11, we have no absolute information to give to you at this time, just any questions that you might have. Like Mr. Karcher, we ask that you support the local businesses. We currently do the insurance. I know Mr. Conley said that there isn't much expertise here in town. We currently do the insurance for Boulder City, City of Henderson, parts of Clark County. We've done the aviation insurance for the Metro Police since they bought their first helicopter. And we currently are now doing the employee benefits and workers' compensation for the Las Vegas Clark County Library District. So we do have some expertise in this area, and I just wanted to make you aware of that. We also have expertise in the cyber liability area. Mr. Conley spoke in great detail about that. We have, in fact, given your city a proposal for cyber liability that's now with your IT folks, I believe.
Thank you.
Is that the beep?
Yep, that's the beep. And you'll be welcome back on the Agenda Item, or afterwards for public comment.
No, that's fine. I just wanted to say that as far as I know, the city is the only public entity in the Valley that does not have cyber liability. We have it on all the others, as well as North Las Vegas.
So we need cyber liability. Hello, Ms. Fretwell? We need that. Well, I know, this is public comment, no comments. We don't need any. I'm just saying. And we may already have it, but you'll... Right. Thank you. Yes, sir.
Good morning. I'm Patrick Foley with Wells Fargo, and I'm a lifetime citizen of Las Vegas, Nevada. And in turn, we are here...
What high school?
Bishop Gorman.
Okay.
In fact, I have a gate that goes into the old Bishop Gorman High School right now, and grew up on 15th Street.
Okay.
So a strong citizen here.
Add some seconds for that.
In the city of Las Vegas. And I would like to address the issues that we have had under number 11 regarding the contract opportunities with Wells Fargo on the insurance side. Wells Fargo was, has, there's been some accusations against Wells Fargo not being a local provider here. And in turn, we do have an office here in Las Vegas that does have staff and operations. Our team does report up to, and with the dotted line, into Kirk Klosen. And we, through Kirk Klosen, we all have our responsibility to take care of our relationships, that being with the city of Las Vegas. And any issues that we do face that the city does have runs through my department, which is the government banking team here in Nevada, as well as what we have with insurance, with what we have with Wells Cap, and other operations. Wells Fargo is a major employer here in the city of Las Vegas with over 2,200 employees employed in southern Nevada. We do have a strong relationship with the city in other operations and have provide financing opportunities with the city of Las Vegas, and we are a strong corporate citizen along with the city in making strong donations to many people here. We appreciate our relationship with the city of Las Vegas, and in turn, we are a great citizen of the city.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Go ahead.
Hi, good afternoon, or good morning. Just thank you. I want to introduce myself. I'm Dennis Bass. I'm the Managing Director with Wells Fargo Insurance here in Las Vegas. Also handle the Reno office, relocated in January from California, so this is new to me. And as I told Patrick and the rest of our team, you know, winning and losing are two different things, but this is really about me guarding our reputation here locally, and we are very much a part of this community. I am here, I am here to stay. I have a team of people, seven people, at 6325 South Rainbow in Las Vegas. So we are here, which is contrary to the allegations that we are not local. We are, in fact, local. I take great pride in that. And just with the process, with the RFP process, we felt, with regard to our reputation, I do feel that we followed the rules. We played by the rules. We did everything above board and put out the effort and actively won the opportunity. And so I'm clearly disappointed to not have that opportunity to serve the city and save the money that I believe we were going to save the taxpayers of the city of Las Vegas with regard to our bid and that winning bid. So I appreciate your time today, and thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you for coming. Thank you both. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, we will move on now to Agenda Item Nine. For possible action, any items that council staff or applicant wish to be stricken, table withdrawn, held in abeyance to a future meeting, may be brought forward and acted upon at this time. Mayor protest.
Thank you, Mayor. Staff is requesting that Agenda Item 11, Bance Item Contract Number 150190CB, be stricken from the agenda.
And that's your motion?
That's my motion.
Thank you. There's a motion to strike on Agenda Item 11. Please vote and please post. Motion carries. We will now move on to Agenda Item 10. Items 10 through 20 without Item 11, which we've just stricken, on the consented agenda are considered to be routine, recommended for approval by the departments, and may be enacted in one motion. Are there any items that council wishes brought forward? Anybody? Councilman?
Seeing none, Mayor. I would move to approve the consent agenda.
Okay.
Items 10 through 20.
Without 11.
Without number 11.
All right, there's a motion to approve the consent agenda without 11. Please vote. And please post. Motion carries. Agenda Item 21. Report by Vic Vermani, Development Services Systems Manager and the Implementation Development Services Process, DSP, and the ongoing project EDDI, Electronic Development Department Integration, a multi-year project to update the functions and systems for all departments at the Development Services Center, DSC. This is referenced to all awards.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Jorge Sarantas, Executive Director for Community Development, here with Rick Vermani. This is our annual update where we provide you a status update where we're with the integration of development services. This report's going to be a little bit different than previous years. In the past, we would come up here and give you some of the accomplishments, some of the milestones we've reached over the last 12 months. This report's going to be a little bit different. The reality is, what we're doing out at the DSC is really a component of a larger strategy that we're proposing citywide, where we integrate functions amongst different departments and use technology to create the integration for a better customer experience. And so Rick will be touching on that, also looking further in the future, grabbing the same technology, not only to interconnect our departments, but interconnect with outside governmental agencies throughout the Valley. We've seen already some of this occur last year when we integrated the state business licensing with our city business licensing, where we now have real-time data going back and forth between the two agencies. And look forward to trying to do that with other agencies. So Rick will present this presentation and show how that's kind of coming together.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Sarantas.
Thank you, Jorge. Honorable Mayor, City Council members. I'm here, basically, a year back, you guys saw me.
I'm going to ask you to announce yourself again, just for our record.
Oh, sorry. My name is Rick.
Thank you.
Vermani, I'm the Development Services Systems Manager, and I'm here to present the update on the development services process. Now, this Project EDDI that we've been talking about is a derivative of the implementation of the DSP. But let's start out with a quick, brief history about how we got to where we did. This whole effort of the DSP started out in 2009 with the Kirchhoff Report, which was a total of 95 findings requiring cultural changes, organizational integration across the DSC, also process improvements, as well as systems, to bring all of this together. And this was back in 2009. It was a tall order. So from about 2010 to 2013, we spent about four years doing major organizational changes at the DSC. These were cultural changes that were difficult and take time. We improved a lot of processes, and we also implemented a lot of simple systems changes during that time. By doing that, we, basically, the results were that we overcame 45% of the original findings of the Kirchhoff Report. We also completely addressed those, and now there were 38 that were partially addressed, 38%, sorry. So moving on from there, in 2014, we began to put together the plans for this major integration effort that requires major project effort. By the way, we named it Project EDDI, which was selected by staff. That name and that little logo or mascot you see up there was designed by our own Don Jacobson. So it's the representation of what we are doing, along with a lot of support from a lot of different departments. So this kicked off in earnest in January 2015. We're replacing existing systems while improving business processes. So it's a very major undertaking, and I'll talk a little bit more about it. And we are implementing improved processing using electronic plan review, which is a centerpiece of this effort. We are also enabling all development processes to be done online, and this literally means everything to be done online. So it's a major undertaking. But in the scope of this effort, it all centers in on the replacement of the Hanson system with what we're replacing it with is Infor. And this is a major process. It's not just a replacement or an upgrade. We are rethinking all the processes and the way we handle business at the DSC. We have Internet customer functions that will be integrated into this. We are going to be implementing a know-your-customer strategy that I'll talk about later on, and apply and pay and submit practically everything online. We're also doing interactive voice response. We are keeping this, contrary to some belief that interactive voice response, this is the kind of telephony-based transaction processing where you can pay for permits and things online. There's actually an increasing demand for that rather than a shrinking demand, so we are upgrading those capabilities. We are also introducing the capability to do transactions with text messaging, which is being received very well by the newer, younger generation. And we are also bringing online the electronic plan review, which is going to allow us to do parallel plan review process, further reducing the time it takes to process. So all of this is being fully integrated alongside with mobile systems for staff. We're bringing iPad-based solutions, which will allow them to take pictures in the field and attach them to work that they're doing in the field. This is going to be of huge value for improving how we service the customers. And also, this will provide a much faster response for the customer to allow us to turn the results back to them really quickly. So that basically takes, at a higher level, the scope of what we are doing. So as you can see, it's pretty large. It's got a lot of different facets to it. And so in the process of doing this, we have had a lot of breakthroughs. When you get the opportunity to rethink business processes, you are automatically going to have a lot of breakthroughs, because we haven't been efficient in everything all along. But I want to touch on four major breakthroughs that I think are significant for us today. The first one is rapid communication with customers. It'll give us the capability to, across the board, reach out to customers in a manner that is unprecedented, through text messages, through emails, and all of this. So we have a much faster back-and-forth process with the customer. We will also have the opportunity for interdepartmental controls. Right now, departmental controls have been confined to the application going through a single department. Down the road, we can control these things cross-departmentally, which is huge. It'll give us a comprehensive view of the customer's process. So rather than looking at it from our application standpoint, we will now have the capability to look at it from the customer's perspective. And finally, this last thing is, I think, very critical, because we have found that opportunity after we started the project to embark upon a much better strategy for getting to know our customers, our citizens. And I want to talk a little bit more about this. So right now, we have the same customers represented across multiple different systems. Like, for instance, John Doe could be John B. Doe in a different system, and we don't recognize that as the same person. Along with that, we also have entities like Bob's Deli, which could be represented in multiple applications that we have. So now what we're going to do is, we're going to combine these records, and we are going to create multiple profiles that are representative of our functions. Because when you look at it from different functions that that customer performs with us, we still need to know, say, for instance, for licensing, we still need to know their business address. And we may also need to know their license billing address. But from a permitting standpoint, we may need to know their site address and the permit billing address. And for the planning, the property owner address. And then we could have shared contacts across this whole platform. So you can see how we are still tracking all the different functions, but we are centralizing that customer record, because this will play into a much larger plan where the customer comes to us right now, applying for different things, doing different things with us, and we treat them separately in the different areas. Yes, Mayor?
Mr. Vermani, could I ask you? The people with the same names, do you give every, will you be giving everybody a code or an ID number or something? So when you have John Doe and John B. Doe, they may be the same person, they may be different people. So will every entry that is connected have the same code?
Yes, that's exactly where we're going. So when you log in online, you will be able to go to licensing, going to permitting, wherever you go, you will use the same login. And that's how we are looking. But see, we already have multiple records. So some of the challenges that we are facing is that how do we combine these? How do we make them one? And how do we start representing to the customer that we know who you are and we know what you come here for?
And going beyond that, how do you protect, I mean, insecurity? The break into that code or whatever?
That's a very, very good question. We are looking at using social media logins, so we don't store any of their login information. You use your Google login to login with us. You use your Google login to log in with us, so we don't store all of that. Google stores it, or Facebook stores it. We don't get into that business. That way, we are safe from any hackers. So basically, what you're seeing up here on the screen is a separated relationship. And this is exactly what you're saying, Mayor, is that we're looking to centralize that customer service. So it all comes through one place. We know who you are, and then we route it to the appropriate department for processing. So looking at this, we're looking at new systems, we're bringing in new procedures, and we are doing a lot of additional controls, automation, and rules. Some of this could be too much, too fast. We literally have to manage change. This is the biggest challenge for our project, is managing the risk of change. Because oftentimes, projects fail not because we're trying to do great things, it's because we're trying to do them too fast. And so we are breaking down the phases as we roll out. This stuff starts to roll out in early 2016. We're actually moving up some things. We're going to get them out sooner, and we're going to stagger some of this down the road. So we will spread out the change over time. We will gradually implement the new features. We will continuously improve the process. What we are building on is a platform that is highly flexible. So even after we go live, if we have issues and improvement ideas, we can accommodate those. And we will be changing the culture in parallel, because when you go to doing stuff from inline to online, there is a cultural change that occurs as well. And so this scope is what I talked about here. Right now, in Phase 1, we have building and safety and fire prevention. In Phase 2, following shortly after, we have planning, licensing, public works, and O&M is also coming along. So this is the scope for Project Eddy. But this is all at the DSC right now. How do we scale this out to apply this approach of a centralized customer record to the entire city? So we extend the capabilities of these city logins citywide after we're done here. We can then also have a highly scalable technology platform. What we have here is extremely scalable. This is the same technology being used by cities like LA, which are much, much bigger than us. And we also personalize interaction with, you know, citizens. We've all gone to those awesome websites where you log in and they know who you are. Amazon is a great website like that, where it remembers who you are and what you come there for. And so that's where we are driving to make our city capabilities the same. From there, we're looking at integration, like Jorge was saying, Las Vegas Valley-wide. What about our agencies? We are already integrating with the Secretary of State, where if they don't have an active license with the state, we know right away when they are applying. But we have a lot of opportunities like that in the development process to integrate with utilities and others. So that's what we're calling real-time interaction with agencies.
Mayor, with your permission, let me stop you there just briefly. How is that affecting the multi-jurisdictional business licensing with the other governments as well?
Very, very good question. The multi-jurisdiction implementation was done in a technology that is now about 10 years old. It requires a lot of manual and stepwise processing. So when we move to this newer approach, when it's more like a publish-and-subscribe approach, where we publish transactions, saying that we are doing this, how does it affect the other jurisdictions? They decide in their applications. So we don't control the transaction on their end, but we publish it out there, saying that we have a special event, and that may require the Health District to check on food service. So you see, so we just kind of serve up our information, and they serve up theirs, and we integrate and interact that way. Does that answer your question? So beyond open data, there will be open platforms. Right now, we are focused on open data, but how do we have a platform across the entire Valley on which we all can operate, all the different agencies? So this is some of the vision that we are building upon. We want fluid participation and communication, not something that requires human intervention. So beyond that, we want to showcase Vegas as a leading city for transaction processing online, doing all of these technology capabilities online. And we want to attract technology investment through doing that here in the Valley. And we want to lead with technology legislations as well, because alongside with attracting companies that can invest here, we have to show them that we are willing to legislate to accommodate technology in a visionary manner. That's my presentation for today. Are there any questions?
I don't have any questions, Mayor, but I do have some comments, with your permission and through you, of course. Thank you, Mr. Vermani, for the presentation. I want to say this, I think we are leading the way in regards to customer service, and you use the word "customer" several times. Years ago, when I was first elected, I didn't see our residents, the people we interacted with in businesses, customers. And I think a lot of departments didn't see that either. So we turned the big ship in regards to being more customer-driven and customer-oriented.
Yes.
I certainly know, in my office, when it comes to technology, we direct everybody, a lot of people to the city's applications, if it makes it easier for them, do these things online, get information, report challenges, and it's very, very effective for me and my staff to share that information with our customers, if you will.
Yes.
But it's pleasing me to no end that everyone sees that. Those are our customers, and we're taking care of them as customers, and trying to help them get to where they need to be. So I just want to say thank you, and to all the guys in the departments, thank you very much for all that you've done over the past several years, Ms. Fretwell. It's a testament to your leadership, again, with the great team that you've put together, moving us forward in technology, setting the bar extremely high, and hopefully interacting more with the other local governments as well, to make it more smooth for them. So thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you very much. Great report. We look forward to the next step, and everything being live, as you tell us it's ready.
Yes, soon.
Good. How many are helping you?
We have approximately 80 people across the city working on this, but what is even more of a monumental achievement is the fact that we have seven different vendors working in this project with us. Usually, we would outsource it to a single vendor. Here, we have seven of them working directly with us to get all this done.
Goodness, corralling all those people. Wonderful. Thank you very much. We look forward to your next report. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you.
Councilman?
Thank you, Your Honor. Can you zoom out one more time? Is that the galaxy after that?
That's right. Yeah, when I said beyond, it could be that far. But yeah, we are looking at really getting a lot of visibility, because honestly, what we're doing here is unique. We are a city of a size that is not too large to do something like this, because when we get too large, then the departments become too separated. But we're not too small to not be able to afford to do this. So I think we are at a sweet spot to lead in this sort of, you know, manner. And we are very fortunate.
Thanks. Thank you, and your team.
Thank you. And Mr. Sorantes, as you go forward into new projects, the infrastructure and running those cables, what's happened in the heart of the city as we go forward with this, where everything, you can't go underground? And how do you connect everybody? Is it all going to be through Wi-Fi?
A combination, Mayor. Actually, as we're doing a lot of these rowing projects downtown, in anticipation of technology we knew was coming down for years now, we've been putting the infrastructure in place so that we have the ability to provide connectivity amongst not just us at our public facilities, but even private facilities. So we have the ability to exchange information between us and even the private side. And so certainly, we can set up wireless networks downtown. We also are putting the infrastructure in to have hard-wired fiber-optic systems to serve our community downtown. And as we see some of these starter companies come in, these technology-starter companies have the ability to service them and provide them the infrastructure also.
And if I may continue with that thought, as we go into the replacement and rehabilitation of the spaghetti bowl and Doc coming in with Project Neon, is that all that a part of it?
It is to a certain extent, Mayor. As they do all these freeway widening in the past, part of their system of communication, what they call the FAST system, the Freeway and Arterio System of Transportation, they're putting trunk lines on these highways to communicate to the cameras, to the digital message signs, and then those in turn feed out to Arterio Streets, which we control. And so we have access to use our fiber to jump on their trunk line to keep it out to the northwest or other parts of the Valley.
Great. Thank you. Thank you both very much. Appreciate it. Thank you. And we will move on to Agenda Item 22, report by staff concerning the 2015 78th Session of the Nevada Legislature and a Progress Report on the Council's Education Priority, reference all wards, and this is Mr. McInall and/or Dr. Morris Hibler, or together again.
Good morning, Mayor, and members of the council. Lisa Morris Hibler, Deputy Director, Office of Community Services, and with me is Brian McInall, Government Affairs Manager. We're here this morning to provide a report on the 2015 Nevada Legislature, in particular, education bills that are of interest to the city, and a progress report on the city's education priorities. Quick overview of what we'll discuss today includes the state of education in Las Vegas, the 2015 Southern Nevada Forum, key education-related bills, and the city's education endeavors. So we start with why education matters to the city. I don't think today that we still get the same questions we did about three years ago when we first started to get involved with educational support. At that time, there was a question of why the city was there. But what brings us here are these things that we constantly deal with, and that is the fact that our citizen satisfaction of the overall quality of public schools in Las Vegas was 24% compared to the U.S. average of 54%. National comparisons show the quality of education in Nevada, and specifically Las Vegas, lags behind the rest of the nation. This is seen as a hindrance to the quality of life, not to mention a major obstacle in attracting new businesses. Enhancing education in Las Vegas will improve our overall workforce, make us more attractive as a potential new business site, and improve our quality of life. Simply stated, solid education benefits everyone, not just students.
Dr. [inaudible]. Could I ask, when you're speaking city, you're talking about our all-six wards, correct? You're not just talking about the heart of the city?
No, all six wards, that is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Oftentimes, the focus is on CCSD, but the reality of it is, we look at pre-K, workforce development, college matriculation, and also the graduation rates. Education has been a key priority for the city of Las Vegas since 2011, when the City Council adopted the Corporate Scorecard, which included education attainment goals related to third-grade literacy and high school graduation rates. And as you well know, we have retooled some of our programs, such as Batters Included Today, focusing on graduation rates, and our Safe Key Program, which now incorporates a literacy component. Partnerships with education service providers and community stakeholders created synergy for more expansive collective impact projects, such as our Downtown Achieves and our Las Vegas My Brothers Keeper. In many ways, the city has been and remains a convenor, a facilitator, a funder, and a catalyst for smart change, leading to better outcomes. The 2015 Southern Nevada Forum, this is an overview of the 2015 session priorities. So legislators, government affairs, managers, other officials come together and look at what the agenda should be for Southern Nevada. Their priorities were to revise the K-12 funding formula, and that was related to Senate Bill 515, funding for class size reduction, resources for literacy, pre-K professional development related to the academic content standards, supporting one-time expenditures for capital projects, fund data-driven assessments, programs to guide instruction to meet the needs of students, and provide transition program for students already in the pipeline. This year, they've already held their first meeting here in this chamber. There was a good cross-section of individuals that attended, from county commissioners to school board trustees, the other legislators. They are already looking at the agenda for '17 and what work needs to be done between now and then. Their next meeting is going to be held on November 12, again, here at City Hall. We're going to discuss a couple of these bills in depth, but these are the key education bills that we were focusing on during the 2015 session. As you all know, education was center for 2015 legislative session. Bills were coming, and we were trying to make sure that we knew what the impact was going to be to Southern Nevada and to stay ahead of those. So we have a couple I want to point out, the Alternative School Framework, SB 460. The intent of that bill was to provide equity in framing and reporting school performance with respect to populations of severe need. So the bill allows the district and charter schools who serve populations with at least 75% severe needs to qualify for an alternate framework to measure their school performance rather than the current star rating system. It's believed that this bill will help schools serving these populations not be punished for having high percentages of our most challenging students. Senate Bill 474, the Great Teaching and Leading Fund, funded $2 million for implementing the next-generation science standards, $1 million for the Nevada Educator, $1 million for a performance framework for teacher recruitment, development, and retention, and $900,000 for leadership development. An RFP was already released, and they received $12 million worth of projects for funding requests. So we're waiting to see which of those have been selected. Senate Bill 508, the New Nevada Plan, where the Department of Education is required to produce an update on base and weighted funding formula over the interim. The process of transitioning to a full-weighted funding formula is supposed to be done by 2021. That changes the per-people allocation. And it will move Nevada away from a strictly county-based funding formula. The Achievement School District, which I've mentioned before, the intent of what we call ASD, or the Achievement School District, is to find the district schools that are struggling after various interventions, and to convert them over to a high-quality charter operation for a six-year period. This will be an all-charter district, which is limited to a maximum of six new schools per year, and it's intended to bring additional talent to Las Vegas and improve outcomes for students in their schools. Currently, a national search firm has been hired to conduct the executive director search, and their goal is to hire the executive director as soon as possible. City staff, myself and Brian included, met with the search firm and provided input on the qualities an ideal candidate should possess. We were afforded this opportunity based on our relationship with the state and our efforts related to education. Our next steps related to this Achievement School District will be meeting with interim state superintendent and about the selection process for charter organizations and how the public schools will be chosen. Because we didn't have complete data for last year, that was one of the criteria that was going to be used to select the schools, so we want to make sure that we understand that, and also how these charter organizations are going to be selected to manage these schools. The Charter Harbor Master, SB 491, will seek an organization to recruit and develop new charter schools that have a proven track record of success nationally, to open charter schools in our highest-poverty communities in the state. The Department of Education has already issued an RFP for the Harbor Master, and they expect that a selection will be made in the next 30 days. Just to kind of give you an idea, one organization that's interested in being the state-funded Charter Harbor Master is Opportunity 180, and that's headed by Allison Seraphin. Many of you may know her, she was on the State Board of Ed. And they estimate that 82,000 students in Clark County are attending low-performing schools, 82,000. And their goal is to create high-performing seats for 25,000 Clark County students, with the goal of offering resources to launch up to 31 charter schools and organizations over a 10-year period. Their mission is to provide students outstanding educational opportunities and help prove that every child can achieve regardless of ethnicity, zip code, or family income. So as you can see here, the state will match $5 million per year for this Charter Harbor Master to go out and recruit these charter schools to come into our urban core, will be one of them, and other areas where there's underperforming schools. The Read by Three Bill, SB 391, this bill intends to improve student achievement through highly effective teachers, new assessments for students in K-2, and a competitive grant. highly effective teachers, new assessments for students in K-2, and a competitive grant program to assist schools in paying for literacy programs. They feel that by investing additional resources in learning strategies, early intervention strategies, and targeted reading programs, and creating universal full-day kindergarten, it is believed that the districts will have the systems to be in place in every school to ensure that every student will reach their goal. One of the key components of this is that by 2019, students who are not reading proficient by the third grade will be retained. Why is that a concern to us? Because we know we have some of the schools with the highest number of long-term subs, and they don't have credential teachers. So we want to make sure that we're seeing how this bill is going to be implemented so we don't have a significant amount of students that don't get the instruction that they need in order to be proficiently reading.
Excuse me, I just, I hate to interrupt here.
That's okay.
I've been reading about this, I've been hearing about this, I've been seeing leaders supposedly in this educational area bemoaning the fact that we need all these substitute teachers. I know for a fact that we are using substitute teachers, untrained, totally untrained teachers in working with children with special needs. Has anybody come forward and said, you know, maybe if we paid these teachers what they're really worth, we would have better teachers, and they wouldn't be leaving our district in droves? Two things, just two things are needed, better salaries for teachers and respect for teachers. And they're not doing it. All this money gets spent year after year after year on all these highfaluting committees, none of which I've seen any of the master teachers on, by the way, from the school district. And we come to all this money being spent in the most convoluted way we're going to do these things. Our charter schools are failing right now, and we expect that we're going to have them all make it in the future. I have to tell you, it is so disturbing that as an educator, I try not to read about it because it bothers me so much. It bothers me so much. When in the heck is good sense going to take over? I've just spoke last weekend to teachers in California, and after about 10 years teaching, they're earning more money than a teacher who's been here the full 30 years. Now, can you believe, why would you come? We're not going to be able to produce the number of teachers we need at this time, not yet, from the schools, universities we have here in Nevada. And as someone who was a teacher at one time and who did look for jobs at one time, I wouldn't come to Nevada. I might have come to Nevada when Kenny Gwynn was superintendent because it was regarded, it was regarded at such a high level at that time. Our CCSD was regarded so highly that people, individuals from other states, including California, would come here to learn from the Las Vegas schools. But since that time, we've done nothing to improve living conditions for teachers. I'm just sorry, I had to get that out.
Mayor?
It means a lot.
Over here on the left side, the little guy.
Councilman, please.
I got to tell you, amen, Sister Tarkanian on that too, but I, you know, we're facing something that I don't think the legislature even understood, what it really created when it essentially says it wants to revise the Nevada Plan, but it also wants to break up the Clark County School District. It's, the Nevada Plan has stood the test of time. I know it's complicated, but it's judgment-proof. It, there is no discrimination between the counties. All we have to do is open up this rat's nest, and you will find losses because, believe it or not, it has survived test of time, whereas other states have had to spend billions trying to catch up when they thought they could do it better. I know it sounds counterintuitive, that it's old, it must be 50 years old now, but it's really important to understand not to just try to throw everything out at the same time and create new things at the same time. Time takes, it just takes time. I mean, I spent 30 years working on, 28 years working on it in Carson City, and the reason we weren't sued was because we met all the constitutional tests for treating everybody. Now then, they want to break up the school district, but I see that the school district itself naturally wants to put it on lines relating exactly to the school board members. Well, that's odd, that's unworkable, because you got, those boundary lines change every time there's a census change, and you got to redistrict, and so now you'd have a district changing and this and that. You know, in the end, the school bureaucracy would still run things, and so let's get our, let's not kid ourselves. Frankly, there's only one way to reorient these districts, and that's to have the municipalities take over and take responsibility. And that's my piece, because I think that, and I don't know if anybody else feels the same way I do, but in high-performing states, what you find is, there's true local responsibility. It's one thing to have people that meet in the evening, you know, a couple times a month, and they do their darndest, but they just aren't out there risking their necks on everything. And we really have the money, we know how to spend it correctly, despite all the jokes about government. I think we should have the responsibility, because our boundaries don't change. And we have a city boundary, it's the same way for a long, long time. And anyway, I probably threw you off your train of thought, I'm so sorry if I did that, but her frustration reflects mine. I wish they hadn't tried to do so much so soon, because it'll all collapse, and that's honest-to-God prediction guaranteed. Thank you.
I just wanted to add one thing, and that was, when I was talking about better salaries, and you know, just because you can't see what happens to a child's mind when the child is taught, doesn't mean it isn't as important as an operation might be, for example. It's just as important, but you can't see it. And I know through the years, I haven't followed every single year, but when I have followed, the schools that spent the most money, the states that spent the most money on education were the states that had the highest achievement by children. Connecticut, it was at one time, but they're usually on the east coast. But that's, it's, and are we wasting money now in the school district? I would say absolutely yes. But if we could only pull that together in the right way and spend that money where it's needed, instead of getting all nervous about something that comes up and then spending and then changing and all that, I think we would have good teachers, and I think we wouldn't be going around with 900 teachers that aren't qualified to teach. And for someone to say, by the way, I think I read this in the paper too, for someone to say that we don't need to have any training in teaching to teach, that's amazing to me. I've gone through years learning how to teach and to teach better, and teach in the classroom as well as teach, you know, a college and things like that, and it does take something. Now, I do believe, and others may disagree with me, I don't know how you would feel, Mayor, I believe there are some people who are born to be teachers, and they just have it in them, they can communicate, and they can get the idea across in such a way that they don't need as much formal training maybe as some others. But you do have to have some help in learning, in being prepared as a teacher. I don't know about you, but I don't want to have, and I know the district right now, has children teaching autistic, has teachers teaching autistic children, has all kinds of special needs that, my God, I had to get a master's degree before I felt competent in that area, and they don't even have a bachelor's, and they're substitutes. There's something wrong there, and you can go to other states, and they are able to do it. And I think looking at the salary schedule is part of it. Thank you, I'm sorry.
That's okay, please go ahead.
Okay, thank you. And thank you all for your comments, and this is really important dialogue that we're having here. And Mayor, if I may just respond to the councilwoman's comments, right now, we're really monitoring the arbitration that the district is going through, and it's about the teacher salary. So, you know, as you know, the last time that they went through arbitration, they let go of over 1,000 staff, so we want to look at all of those.
I have to say something else, and that is, you know, I talked to some teachers this last weekend, and not only are they worried about getting a little bit of salary, they had an increase of salary taken away, and now they have their health plan demolished, it's nothing practically, and they have to give more money to that. If you follow it, I just, I'm asking anybody who watches this, please look into it, and if you care anything about the minds of individuals, please do something about it. Thank you.
Okay, no problem. So that is, brings us to our next slide, which is the Reorganization Bill, AB 394. October 12th, the first advisory committee meeting was held. Superintendent at that time presented the committee with a 61-page response to the Assembly Bill 394, which included the plan that some of you referenced today. We can get you copies of the response, its presentation, and also their equity and funding presentation. October 22nd, the superintendent made a presentation to the Clark County Board of Trustees in which the plan was described as a starting point for reorganizing the district. And Superintendent Skorkowski's plan would retain CCSD as a county-wide district that would be, that would have seven instructional superintendents, as you said, that are based on the trustee boundaries, and then a series of boards that would report to those instructional superintendents, and so on and so forth. There was criticism about the plan being developed in a vacuum, and the school district indicated that they would have additional options for public comment in some meetings. On November 10th, the Technical Advisory Committee will have its first meeting, and Mayor Goodman serves on that. Victory Schools, AB 432. We spent a lot of time working with schools over the summer on the Victory School plans, especially since five of the Victory Schools are My Brother's Keeper and three of them are Downtown Achieves. We had a lot of the data that they needed in order to put those plans together. There was about $20 million that was appropriated to Clark County, and the school awards range from 350,000 to 1.6 million. Victory Schools in the city of Las Vegas include Sunrise Acres, Valley High School, which is the county that serves our kids, Vegas Verde's, West Prep Academy, West Prep Secondary, Wendell Williams Elementary, Andre Agassi Elementary, which is a charter, Booker Elementary, Desert Rose High School, HP Fitzgerald, which is actually in the county but serves our kids, Innovations Charter School, Kelly Elementary School, and Lake Elementary There was also an expansion to the ZOOM schools. ZOOM schools are dedicated, have dedicated funding to certain schools with a high percentage of English language learners, and they provide students with access to pre-K, a cap ratio of 10 students to one adult, full-day kindergarten at a ratio of 21 to 1, or reading skills centers, and extended school year. This year, there were 29 ZOOM schools, of which we have Arturo Cambiero, Hewitson, Pittman, Manzoni, Twin Lakes, and Rose Whelan. There was, the actual bill was about $100 million, of which $78 million was given to the Clark County School District. Previously, you asked for school star ratings by ward. That information was given to your offices several weeks ago, but this is just another illustration of school performances. Our average star rating, as I mentioned before, is a three-star, but we do have some disparities within the ward. Ward two has the least number of public schools, but the most number of five-star schools. Wards three and five have the greatest number of two-star schools, and in some neighborhoods, families only have access to one- and two-star schools, be they charter or public. Our Innovations in Education, I thought it was important for us to come back to the vision of why we're doing what we're doing, and our goal is, by 2020, to improve the schools that we've been focusing. We've been focusing on the 16 schools that are in our two collective impact models, Las Vegas, My Brother's Keeper, and Downtown Achieves, with the hope of scaling that to other schools that are underperforming. We want to, when we talk about systematically recruiting, developing, retaining excellent teachers, one of the things that our subcommittee has been working on is understanding why teachers are leaving. We'll never recruit enough teachers to fill the gap if we don't retain the teachers that we have. We've really been working on pre-K, and I'm going to talk about that in a moment. We want students at every level to be on track to graduate from high school. We've been working with the Partnership Office to try to do a demonstration on an early academic warning system. As you know, we have the Reclaim Your Future program in the district that starts looking for kids that have dropped out, and we're looking at ways that we can catch those kids earlier. And we want to make sure that our students and families have access to the resources they need for academic, social, and emotional success. The Innovations in Education Committee, which is about 36 members, continues to serve an advisory capacity for the city's overall education endeavors, and they are working to create solutions to some of the most cross-cutting issues affecting schools within our impact zones. Again, teacher pipeline, there's a subcommittee on that, very important. Family stability, because some of our schools have upwards of a 50% transidency rate. Education policy and accountability to ensure that we're monitoring state and local activities related to legislation, policy, and regulations affecting education in Southern Nevada. Identifying opportunities to influence the development of education and academic policy, and promoting and monitoring accountability of legislation, policy, and regulations. And then also, our school readiness pre-K Subcommittee, which is exploring and developing a robust early childhood education system within the city of Las Vegas to further kindergarten readiness. The Governor also has a P-20 Advisory Council to help coordinate education and workforce development efforts in Nevada from preschool to post-secondary levels so that students are prepared to successfully transition to the next step in their education and careers. I am serving on your behalf on the Community Engagement Subcommittee of that council. Downtown Achieves, we have completed two years of data analysis and community needs assessment, and now are implementing targeted interventions within those schools. We are really excited about our Star Attendance Campaign, which is to reduce chronic absenteeism. Obviously, children cannot learn if they are not in their seats, and this goes beyond just caving them in their seats, but also works with the families to make sure that they understand the importance of attendance and that we can address any challenges they may be having that's interfering with their children getting to school. And also, My Brother's Keeper is also participating in the Star Attendance Campaign, Positive Behavioral Interventions, and we're really excited about our collaboration with the Clark County Juvenile Justice Department on the Juvenile Assessment Center that is slated to be located within Metro Headquarters, a partnership with the state jurisdictions, and also, we've been having assistance with the National League of Cities. So. High-quality education, we know that our most vulnerable youth have, historically have the weakest results in terms of education, social, and school readiness. Children from low-income families often demonstrate a need for special education or additional education accompanied by other social, economic obstacles such as food insecurity and reduced health outcomes. Essentially, what we're saying is that we have a lot of kids that go into the Clark County School District that are slated as special ed or remedial, when really, they just didn't get what they needed in those early developmental years. By 18 months of age, the word gap between infants from low-income families and their more affluent peers can already be identified, and many families cannot send their children to early childhood education simply because there is a lack of accessible and affordable programs in their neighborhoods. The 2014 Children's Cabinet Report indicated that Nevada's early education and care capacity meets 34% of the need for childcare for children ages zero to five with all parents in the workforce. So, that means that 70% were not meeting their need. Yesterday, we held a, yesterday, sorry about that, we hosted a major convening to hear the preliminary report on feasibility analysis for the Nevada Pay for Success project. That is a partnership with the Governor's Office and the State Department of Ed, as well as Clark County, and we are looking to see how we can collectively improve academic and social outcomes for children living at or below poverty. And Pay for Success is an innovative funding model that's going across the country that drives resources towards social and public health programs that measurably and meaningfully improve lives and saves money. This type of funding model has been used for homeless, for juvenile justice reform, and other areas. The city of Las Vegas also convened early childhood policy leaders and providers such as Nevada Department of Education, United Way of Southern Nevada, Children's Advocacy Alliance, UNLV Department of Education, and the Nevada Institute for Children's Research and Policy to help the city develop high-quality pre-K centers. Aligning with the State of Nevada Pre-K Expansion Grant, the city is currently renovating two pre-K sites in partnership with the Clark County School District to create high-quality full-day pre-K seats. Those two sites are the Variety Lorenzi Park Site in Ward Five and the Alta MLK Site in Ward One, both scheduled to come online in the first quarter of 2017, and both funded using the RD8 education set-aside. We are also assessing two community center sites, Dulittle in Ward Five and East Las Vegas Community Center in Ward Three, to develop high-quality learning opportunities for children's ages three and four. Again, our focus is to increase kindergarten readiness and ensure that children are on track to retain, to be reading proficient long before third grade. So what are our... So, what are our next steps? The Innovations in Education Strategic Plan will be doing a report out in the first quarter of 2016 on the four areas that I mentioned. We will bring an update on the implementation of legislative bills. There were a number of bills that were passed, and many of them are in the early stages of implementation, so even the information we're providing today is going to change over the next couple of months. We want to utilize research and data-driven processes to assess problems, generate responses, responsive new interventions, develop partnerships, and deliver measurable results. We have access to national experts through U.S. Conference of Mayors, National League of Cities, and policy organizations such as Attendance Works and Campaign for Great Level Reading. The proposed city of Las Vegas restructuring will elevate the importance of the work that we're doing and further demonstrate the city's commitment to improving outcomes for youth by reorganizing current city resources to promote education reform, coordinate educational activities within the city, and research best practices with the goal of gaining valuable access to premier institutions, expertise, and local, state, and national networks. The staff will be dedicated to education policy, the systems, and the strategic partnerships to better address shared interests, including disparities in academic outcomes, 21st century education models, social sector issues, convening Las Vegas Valley Houses of Worship to help and ensuring better lines of communication between the state, the county, the school district, and city leadership. We want to also continue to provide updated briefs on these matters so you can remain informed and use your position both as a bully pulpit and, more importantly, a champion for change. Ultimately, the goal is to tackle the social urban challenges required to improve the vitality of Las Vegas community and to ensure the iconic Las Vegas remains a world-class city. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Just here to answer questions.
Here, legislate questions. So, any comments about looking forward to 2017 and will you be giving us those bills that are asking for new bills?
Yes, Mayor, Brian McEnally, Government Affairs. As we prepare for the 2017 session, we'll begin to identify all BDRs, bill draft requests for the city and present those to council and manager's office for determination for our bills that will be turned in early in the summer to the Legislative Council Bureau for drafting. We'll still have the opportunity to seek out sponsors for other measures beyond the designated bill drafts for the city of Las Vegas and also, you know, encourage others who introduced education-related bills this last session that may have had a hearing or didn't get through the process that would certainly impact what we're trying to do in pre-K and other areas. So, lots of opportunities to prepare for the 2017 session with our delegated bills and working with others who want to sponsor individual legislation.
Thank you, Mr. McEnally. Could you also provide a list of the Assembly and Senate individuals who are termed out and will be gone in 2017 so we can see, obviously, with their party affiliation, so we can see what we're looking at as elections come to bear in those particular areas, too?
Absolutely, and as you're reading in the newspaper, some folks are moving around and running in different offices, so it's changing daily, but we'll be happy to get that information.
That will be highly significant as we move forward or hit a standstill. So, thank you both very, very much. Any comments, questions further from council?
I'd just like to say you guys are working very hard and you're trying very hard, and I'm impressed with the breadth of what you're trying to do. That's good.
Thank you both very, very much. Charge on. I do want to, Councilman Barlow, as I mentioned early on, is in London for the LVCVA, and he is requested to participate in item number 27 at noon our time, so I'm watching the watch and wherever we are, we will try to make that possible. So, we're into Agenda Item 23, and Discussion for Possible Action Regarding an Agreement for Sale and Purchase of Property Between Carriage Funeral Holdings, Inc., and the City of Las Vegas Located on the Southeast Corner of Veterans Memorial Drive and Washington Avenue. This is in Ward Five with Councilman Barlow, and good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, Mayor, members of council. Bill Arnt, Director of Economic and Urban Development. This item is to acquire property in downtown Las Vegas at the intersection of Washington Avenue and Veterans Memorial Drive. The Cellar Carriage is looking to sell a portion of their holdings. They're commonly known as bunkers, and with us today is Nathan Stifler, who is their managing partner on behalf of the Cellar. We're looking to purchase this property. It's roughly two acres, 2.12 acres. We arrived and negotiated a purchase price of $6 per square foot, which we believe is a fair market value for the property. The close of escrow would be either at the end of February of 2016 or March of 2016. We build in an extra 30 days because we're looking to reparse some of the parcels. There are three parcels, and we're purchasing one parcel and then a portion of a second parcel. I do have a map, which I'll put on the overhead.
Good. And if you could point those out, starting with the first item, the first purchase that you were talking about. And is this north? Let's see. You are north.
This is the southeastern corner of Washington and Veterans Memorial. We're purchasing parcel ending in 001 and a portion of parcel ending in 002. Bunkers does want to add some additional parking, which is the reason why we're chopping up that parcel in the middle, but the total portion that we'll be purchasing is roughly in here, and it's going to be 2.12 acres. Our final purchase price is determined on that per-square-foot price. There is a gross price put in the contract, but should the price be different, it'll be set on $6 per square foot, not to exceed the amount that's listed in the Agenda Item.
And if you could, the museum that's there on the south?
That is the former lead Children's Discovery Museum that's being repurposed for the Natural History Museum, so we think this is a really important acquisition for the city, a strategic acquisition to let us continue to try to redevelop the cultural corridor for new projects and new uses. We don't have a specific project in mind yet, but we think it's a really important piece of land for us as we move forward looking.
Thank you, Councilman Coffin, please.
Thank you. I don't know if it's in our budget, but it ought to be. We have to make sure in our timeline here that we do remote sensing for archaeological and other kinds of effects that are going to be surely found under there, because there have been graves discovered in that general area of Guam before Washington Street was created. Up there, not far from there was an original burial ground before there was a city, and we may find remains. You also might find other items of interest. So, I would encourage that we really have to make sure that there is at least remote sensing done, at the very least, and trenching done where necessary if items are noticed. This is the core of the core of the city. This is where the Mormons established, and the tribe was right across the street, the band of Indians, across the trail at that time, which was then Highway 91. So, I want to make sure that we have that done. Now, I don't know if you've thought of that, but I think it's very important unless it's been done in a previous time under any other previous exploration. Do we know?
Councilman, to answer your question directly, I don't know that we do know that. We did build in the time where we can certainly look at that. We want to be mindful and considerate of the property's history. We also want to do proper due diligence, so look at the condition of the soil, probably do a Phase One environmental site assessment. So, like any buyer would, there's a series of due diligence items that we need to perform. That's the reason for having this escrow from now run into February, March of next year. But we will definitely be mindful of that and sensitive of that. Before we close on the purchase of the property, we definitely want to make sure we understand the condition of the site and be sensitive to anything that might be in the ground.
Yes, well, I'm not suggesting that whatever you find there be something to hold up a project. Things can be relocated, but as long as they're identified and marked and noted, because after all, the state museum's right across the street from there, the old Mormon fort. So, they rode at one time, probably 1920s, a little earlier, considered building a dam on that land, which would then provide water source for everything downstream, and they decided not to. But that was where the creek flew and the creek ran, and it's guaranteed to have things underneath it. So, anthropology and archaeology are two keys to having any further support. I don't want to find out that we trample over what I think is there. So, thank you very much, Mayor.
Thank you. Did you want to make any comment on this or just here for questions from council?
No, I'm just here for questions. Thank you, Mayor.
Any comments before I turn it over to Councilwoman? Okay, on behalf of Councilman Barlow, I know he asked you to speak on this behalf, please.
You know, I'm sorry, Mayor. When you asked me, I was told about item 40, item number 23. I do not believe I received a note on that from Mr. Barlow. Is a member of his staff here?
Forty?
I knew we were going to obey. He wanted to obey number 40, and I was given that information. I believe the rest is fine to go with, but I want to make sure.
Go ahead.
Just want to make sure. I just wanted to make sure. I move to approve for Councilman Barlow.
Thank you very much. This is motion to approve on Agenda Item 23. Please vote and please post. Thank you. Thank you for coming down. Appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Arnt.
I just wanted to be sure.
Okay, Agenda Item 24. We didn't have any of those cards on 24, did we? I don't think. Discussion for Possible Action Regarding Memorandum of Understanding Between the City of Las Vegas Downtown Las Vegas Alliance, DLVA, for the Advancement and Progress of Downtown Las Vegas Not to Exceed $50,000 Industrial Development Revenue Fund, Wards 1, 3, and 5, Councilwoman Tarkanian, Councilman Coffin, and Barlow. And so, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, again, for the record, Bill Arnt, Director of Economic and Urban Development. Before introducing the item, I would like to make one change. The fund listed is listed improperly. It was listed as that before some accounting rule changes a couple of years back. It is actually general fund funds. There are budget funds available in our department and budgeted for this purpose, so there's no additional funds, budget funds needed as part of this action. The Downtown Alliance, as I believe all of you know, was created some time ago, seven years ago, for the purpose of serving as a collaborative leader devoted to creating an attractive, vibrant, and diverse and sustainable downtown. And as a service-oriented organization of downtown stakeholders, it's comprised of public agencies, private companies, nonprofit organizations, all committed to creating a vehicle for the advancement of progress to downtown Las Vegas. I think of all the items that I bring forward to this body, this is one of the most important. Without private agencies and private partners investing in downtown, trying to advance downtown through all the things that are going on in downtown Las Vegas, our agency wouldn't exist. We wouldn't have been able to accomplish a lot of the things that we've been able to the last several years. And in any healthy downtown, we need a healthy private advocacy group advocating for downtown, and Downtown Las Vegas Alliance is just that. This Memorandum of Understanding would continue and further the city's support of this organization for its continued growth. Co-hosts a series of community engagement and educational events, as well as increased communication and coordination between the city and the alliance. The contract contemplates providing $40,000 annually in cash, made in even quarterly payments, as well as an in-kind value of $10,000 of public relations activities currently being contracted through Festvolly Warren. With that, I would like to invite Todd Kessler, who's the president of the Downtown Las Vegas Alliance, to say a few words, and I believe Mr. Kessler has some of his other board members here as well.
Good morning, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, councilmembers. Todd Kessler.
Yes, if you would, one second, please, Councilman.
I just have a question, Todd. So, I was watching the World Series, and I wasn't rooting for anybody. I just wanted to watch good baseball, and I get up to get a beer, and I go back and as they do with sporting events, they scan the crowd, and I look up and was that Todd Kessler on television at the World Series in New York?
Yes.
So, I haven't had a chance to ask you, so I just want to confirm that.
It was Kansas City, and I was with my partner, Mr. Donner, and it was a great time, except for I'm still in mourning over the Mets, so.
We all are.
Yeah, thank you.
Well, I was.
But thank you, yeah, it was quite exciting.
Good to see you representing Las Vegas.
Glad I wasn't doing anything inappropriate.
Your Honor.
And Councilman Beers.
Thank you. Through you, did you wear the umpire's uniform?
I was not dressed as an umpire for this game, but I'm happy to share my other previous umpire videos with anyone that cares to look at them. If you Google YouTube fake umpires, Mets Giants, you'll see it, so I'll share that with the public here and embarrass myself further. Seriously, Todd Kessler, 261 Las Vegas Boulevard, North. Here is the president of the Downtown Las Vegas Alliance. I've had the honor for one year now being the president of the alliance. It is a tremendous organization that I'm very proud to be a part of and lead at this moment in time. When I became the president, I noticed we had reached kind of a lull in our membership drive and kind of our effectiveness as an organization. I immediately surrounded myself with some smarter folks and engaged a consultant to begin a strategic plan for us. We have now gone through that strategic plan and beginning to implement that. I'm going to bring Mr. Dixon over after I speak to talk about it, specifics of it, but we've got a great plan, we've got achievable milestones, and we're going to become an incredible organization for downtown. One of the things we needed to do was form a better partnership with the city of Las Vegas, and that's what is here before you today, this Memorandum of Understanding. We needed to improve our lines of communication and coordination, as well as create an outreach opportunity for the city of Las Vegas to engage with the community and begin some educational components. And as you see in the Memorandum of Understanding, one of the lead things we'll be doing is having a speaker series downtown that will be called tentatively Downtown Matters. We'll bring in tremendous speakers from other redevelopment cities nationwide and internationally, and hopefully, this speaker series can be something that takes momentum and grows forward. It also gives the city an opportunity to use it as an outreach component for its many initiatives that it's working on, the master plan for 2035, the homeless initiatives, et cetera. So, we're very proud to be here. I'm going to now bring up Mr. Dixon, who will introduce some of our board members that are here today, tell you a little bit about the strategic plan, and happy to answer any further questions. So, with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Dixon.
Hi, good morning, Mrs. Mayor, Councilmen, Councilwomen. Thank you so much for having me. My name is Miles Dixon with the J. Barrett Company. I have the pleasure of being here on behalf of the alliance today, of which I've been a member, but also now offering some professional services as well. On behalf of our members, I want to thank the city staff, Ms. Fratwell, Mr. Arnt, Mr. Adams, and Ms. Brenda Hughes, who did so much work and have been so helpful in getting us both here today, as well as in the many years leading up to today. And with that in mind, also acknowledging some of our members who are here today. I know that our former chairwoman, Terry Murphy, is here with Strategic Solutions, one of our board members, Mr. Noonan on behalf of Boyd or with Boyd Gaming, excuse me, Lisa Robinson with Festvolly Warren, and then, of course, Todd. The other person who's been instrumental in the alliance was our founding chairman, Rich Worthington, with the Malaski Group of Companies. So, on behalf of our members, a big thanks goes to everybody who made today possible. I wanted to just take a moment to tell you a little bit about the alliance and then talk about what the partnership asks us all to do together. As you may know, the organization was originally organized in 2006 by then-Mayor Oscar Goodman, and when he approached a number of private sector leaders, Mr. Malaski, Mr. Epstein, several others, together and asked them to work together with the city to try to drive progress in downtown. In 2008, we formed as a tax-exempt nonprofit membership organization, a 501(c)(6) with a vision to serve as a collaborative leader devoted to creating an attractive, vibrant, diverse, and sustainable urban core.
What perfect timing, huh? 2008?
2008, it was a bumpy time, and in the years since, obviously, 2008 and the recession slowed us all down collectively, but in the years since the recession, the alliance's membership has grown to almost 60 organizations annually, ranging from small to medium to large businesses, family-owned to corporate, folks who are newer to downtown and folks who have been here for decades. We also have several community organizations as members. In the last 18 months, beginning under the leadership of Chairwoman Murphy, the organization started restructuring its revenues and restructuring its membership so that we had a little bit more breadth to get done some of the important work. We started investing in ourselves and planning for the future. Today, we're asking you to partner with us on our Plan for Growth, a series of community engagement and outreach events, and also a process for our two organizations engagement and outreach events, and also a process for our two organizations to work together better and more often. The alliance's Plan for Growth and Impact focuses on four major goals. One, achieving operational excellence. Two, increasing and improving our membership. Three, being a leadership voice for downtown. And four, leading and supporting key initiatives to improve downtown. As you may guess, we'll be working hard to engage the community and partners from across the valley. Uh, part of our proposed partnership will focus on accomplishing this through a series of community engagement and outreach events co-hosted with the City of Las Vegas. The final component of our partnership is structured as a process for the alliance and the city to more regularly check in with each other, to communicate about our priorities, to coordinate our actions. We'll be having more regular check-ins and reporting between our staff, your staff, our membership, our organization, as well as here at City Council. Um, over the years, the city and the alliance have worked together and created numerous successes along the way, but we believe now is the time to take a step forward, and we know that more is possible by working together. When we look at downtowns across the region and across the nation, to Mr. Arnt's point, we know that private sector participation, especially when partnered with the local jurisdiction, really has a way to move downtowns forward. We're looking at using this opportunity, this partnership, as a way to really advance that. So thank you very much for having me here, and again, thank you on behalf of our membership for considering this item.
And I must commend you, uh, Mr. Kessler. As you said, it's best way to do it is surround yourself with very bright people. We can only hope that the next president does that as well.
I'd say the same for you, Mayor, yourself.
No, we have a great team here, and it's wonderful to see the growth and development of the alliance, and knowing that in five, six years ago, and going through the recession too, that it really did need, um, a real injection of, uh, of hope, energy, and professional input. So, great job you're doing, and, uh, good to see you, uh, Mr. Dixon, involved in this. Any comments, questions here from council? Yes, Councilman Coffin?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'll be moving for approval, but if anybody else wants to speak, I would certainly yield to them first. Um, the issue is that we are doing the right thing, I think, because we are really trying to formalize what is really informal, and that is the, the, um, relationship between the business community and the, you know, the, the ability for that business community to function successfully and at the same time minimize friction with its neighbors. It's, uh, it's very important that we continue what's been working informally, with, with a few rough spots, but I think, uh, this gives another venue for people to be able to complain and also be able to progress forward. And I want to say that, um, we need to make a fundamental change downtown, and I, and I've said this before in small venues, but I, I want to say it again. We are still living with city blocks that were designed in nineteen oh five. I mean, for some reason, we had the ability to understand that there would be a block sixteen with brothels for our city, but we never understood that maybe in the future we would need a, you know, a destination resort layout, and that these little city blocks can't do it. And, uh, I don't know how long it's been since the city vacated Carson, uh, at the Golden Nugget, and I was one of those who was skeptical, and I thought, well, it's a big giveaway, and, uh, Steve Wynn's power is extraordinary, and the city is laying over. And now I know, after four years, that we cannot survive downtown if we do not have a larger footprint for our businesses. We are no longer, as the Strip recognizes, we are no longer in the business of just gambling. And you cannot be in the tourist destination business if you don't have a larger acreage, a larger footprint to perform. So I want you all in the group to be sure to consider my thoughts, that I believe we're going to have to vacate portions of Ogden and Carson, and that we are going to have to do that in an orderly way such that there is, um, for, for public safety and, and fire naturally, as well as the utilities considerations. Not a giveaway from the city, but a way for the city to prosper and double the size of the availability of the property for the purposes of just what is going on. Because if we don't, we will continue to shrink, and we will continue to be, uh, blindsided by people who have more vision. If we've let this go for a hundred and ten years, we just can't let it go any longer. I don't want to see it go another hundred and ten days. We have to begin to think about permitting businesses to expand downtown, and of course, that's all due consideration to the, the, the city, uh, authorities and the, the city residents who will understand this. But we, we need to start talking about this in a very serious way, or downtown dies. So it grows or dies. That's, it's always been since I was a kid, and I think that's the future. Thank you very much, Mayor.
And if you would, call, go for the motion.
You would like me to move then?
Yes.
And I'll move for approval of item twenty-four.
Okay, this is a motion to approve agenda item twenty-four. Please vote and please post. And thank you all for spending part of the morning with us. That motion carries.
Thank you.
Yes, and Mr. Dixon, you want to close with something?
Just one quick comment to your point, Mr. Councilman, about the business community. I wanted to acknowledge that right now, we're really proud to have sixty members, but we know there's a lot more businesses here in downtown, and we look forward to expanding our membership to include more of them, as well as working with our partners in the business community across the valley, other business organizations like the Las Vegas Metro Chamber of Commerce, the Las Vegas Global Economic Alliance, and so on, to make sure that we really are, uh, serving all businesses in downtown and partnering with them.
And therefore, in order to contact you and make inquiries, people looking to come into business downtown and maybe want to look at what you're doing, your plans, your website is?
In the process. It is up right now, but in the meantime, uh, they can contact the umpire here or myself, and, uh, we would love to coordinate, and I know that Mr. Arnt in his office can help get them our way.
And, uh, we need some contact place, night, number, anything. Give us something, because you're going to get repeated four or five times here.
Brenda Hughes is our source of contact at the City of Las Vegas for all information and all data collection.
That's B Hughes at LasVegasNevada.gov until, uh, this website is up and afloat.
And, uh, Mayor, if I could add, really easy to remember, downtown dot Vegas.
Thank you very much. It's wonderful. To surround ourselves with intelligentsia. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. Okay, we're on to agenda twenty-five, is that right? This is a report by planning staff on taverns with restricted gaming and discussion for possible action regarding direction to staff. Hello, neither of you is Ms. Duddleston.
Uh, good morning, Your Honor. Tom Perrigo, planning director. Um, Mayor and Council directed staff to look at tavern with restricted gaming, um, uh, business license category. Um, Mary McLehone, uh, business license section manager, and her team have put a lot of work into, uh, conducting the research that you asked us to do, and I think they've done a fantastic job, and Ms. McLehone is here to present the results of their research.
Please go ahead, and, uh, it is quite remarkable. I was actually astounded in your survey pool that was the response and, uh, the numbers, just the numbers responding was great, so please go ahead.
Thank you. Um, for the record, Mary McLehone, business license section manager. Um, so we were directed to do, to conduct the survey, and our survey focused on taverns with restricted gaming. So it was a very narrow focus on a very specific liquor license. So we sent out a hundred and twenty-three requests, those were sent out in July. Um, basically, everybody who had a tavern license with restricted gaming pretty much received one of those letters unless they were newly opened. Um, we ended up with a ninety-two percent response rate, which we felt was very good. We had three that did not complete any information and send it back to us for various reasons, and we had seven who did respond to us, but they did provide incomplete information, so we felt we were not able to use it in the survey. So basically, we had a hundred and thirteen, um, um, and, uh, licensees fully respond to us.
Mayor, may I ask a question right off the bat here on this? Why do we have licensees who would not respond to official city requests for information? Licensees, the privileged licensees.
Uh, Councilman Coffin, that's an excellent question. Um, of the three who did not respond to us, um, we had one location that, um, is only open late nights on some Wednesday nights, and we've been having a very difficult time getting ahold of somebody who can help us out with the survey. We had another one of the three.
Could that possibly be a private club?
It is a private club. It is a private club, and because it's after hours, at this point in time, for us to get ahold of, we just found out recently, the phone numbers that we have are, we cannot reach anybody at those phone numbers, so we'd actually have to send somebody out.
Buffalo Wild Wings Grill and Bar?
Yes, Buffalo Wild Wings. We've been in communication with them. They need more time, they have to go through their main office, and we have been chasing them around. Um, at some point in time, we had to draw a line in the sand and say, we just have to get this survey done and, and present this.
And Fred's Tavern, I have no idea who he is or where he is, but, uh, maybe he's just a little proprietor bartender, Duffy, you know, Duffy's not here, but, uh, it's Duffy's Tavern. I don't know.
Yes. We are, we are still working on getting the information from these locations. Um, of the seven that were incomplete, we had one location that, um, just changed ownership and just opened, and so they had nothing to provide us with. We had another location that recently closed. Uh, we have four locations that is managed by one individual, and we're having problems communicating with that individual.
And, uh, who is that? Because I see that, that, that's the group that owned the lodges at Grand Deaton. They're, they're out here in the west, they're pretty nice, they're affluent people. What, what is their, uh, problem with conforming with their licensing agency?
Um, our staff has been trying to, um, has been trying to get them to provide us the information, and they've just been stonewalling us. Um, we do plan on catching up with all of these locations, the ones that should have provided us information and did, did not.
I, I, okay, I'm going to stop my questions at this moment and just say, Your Honor, I think we should consider something to put on the agenda for either the next meeting or the week after, to discuss the status of the licenses of people who refuse to cooperate with requests for information on their very business for which they are licensed. I, I find that astounding, that they have the guts to not supply information, or pretend that their company is too big to provide the information. We all know that's BS, so, you know, I mean, what are we doing here?
Please go ahead.
We gotta have some understanding.
Your Honor, if I might, um, for the record, Karen Duddleston for business licensing. Uh, we will, uh, our compliance staff has been instructed to, um, go out to and find those, those individuals. We do have the, um, power under our codes to, um, issue civil penalties for those liquor licensees for failure to comply with allowing us access to their records and failing to cooperate with the director, and we can bring those licensees, um, based on their failure. If you remember right, three citations, we can bring those back to the city council. So we will be taking enforcement action on those.
Thank you. I'm so glad to hear that, Your Honor. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good point. Okay, please, Ms. McLeone, continue.
Okay. So, we've, um, talked in the past about the survey questions, where I'll go over them briefly. If you have any questions, uh, please let me know. Um, on the survey itself, we wanted to know what the square footage was, the hours of operation, now, most of these are twenty-four, um, seven operations. They, ones that have kitchens, we wanted to know how many hours the kitchens were open for. Um, we, uh, also wanted to know about their kitchen operations. Were they using a microwave and a convection oven? Was it a full kitchen? We also collected menus from all of these, because we wanted to see the types of menu items they were actually, um, preparing for the customers. We asked for the number of employees, and we asked for the number of seats. We asked for the seats, and we wanted to break down by dining seats, gaming seats, lounge, bar, or high-top, um, tables. We also collected information on the number of slot machines in bar tops, or whether they would just stand alone on the floor. Slot machine operation was also really important to us. Were the slot machines fully owned by the tavern, or did they engage with a slot root operator? Did, if it was a slot root operator they engaged with, who was that? Did they have a space lease with them? What was that monthly fee? If it was a participation agreement, what was the percentage fee that the tavern was getting? We also asked for gross revenue, and we wanted that broken down by gaming, food and beverage, alcohol sales, tobacco sales, and other. Now, the other category usually ended up being novelties, you know, t-shirts and mugs and things like that. So here we are. Here's the percentage of gross gaming room, uh, gross gaming revenue. Um, what we did was this, so we had a hundred and thirteen fully respond to us. However, we had twelve that had less than fifteen slot machines. So to do an equal comparison, we took those twelve out. So in these slides, you'll see that our sample size is a hundred and one. And we have this on the next slide on a bar chart, which kind of brings it a little bit more into perspective. But basically, how you read it is, we have six, um, licensees in which their gaming revenue, the percentage, is somewhere between ninety to a hundred percent. So seventy-five of a hundred and one licensees have gaming revenue that is above fifty percent. And of those that are above fifty percent, the seventy-five that we're talking about, their average percentage of gaming revenue is actually seventy-two percent. And if you take the entire sample that we used, which is the hundred and one, the total average gaming revenue is sixty-one percent. So this is that same information, it's just shown in a bar chart. It kind of brings it a little bit more into perspective. One of the things that we did was, uh, we asked for a year's worth of, uh, revenue. Not everybody was open for a year, so we did some extrapolation. So this seventy-six million is, is an estimate. So what we have is, for all these locations, um, their total reported revenue is about seventy-six million dollars, and sixty-five million dollars of that is from establishments who, whose percentage of gross gaming revenue is fifty percent or more. And in comparison to, what does the City of Las Vegas receive for restricted gaming license fees just for these taverns? It's about two hundred and twenty thousand dollars. So what we did is, we, we looked at all these different factors, and we analyzed whether they had, one would say, an impact on gaming revenue or not, and we used fifty percent as a measurement. So these items here did not have, um, an impact on gaming revenue. In other words, it didn't push that gaming, percentage of gaming revenue below fifty percent. And we'll, we have a few more slides on these. So we have the physical bar, the number of bar, uh, top slot machines, and whether you were a, using a slot root operator, or you were owner-owned slot machines, the type of kitchen, and also the kitchen hours. So the first thing we'll talk about are the bars and the bar top slots. So the physical bar. So we had fourteen in our sample that said they did not have a physical bar. The percentage of gaming revenue is seventy, uh, about seventy-three percent. We had eighty-seven that did have a physical bar, and their gaming revenue is fifty-nine percent. Now, while there's a, a, a pretty good swing in the percentage of revenue, the ones that do have a bar, it still does not bring it below fifty percent. Then we looked at the slot machines, uh, that were in bar tops. Did that have an impact? So we had twenty-five that did not have any slot machines in bar tops. Their average gaming revenue is about sixty-nine percent. We had seventy-six that had slot machines in bar tops, and their average revenue is fifty-eight percent. And then we looked at slot machine ownership and management. Um, uh, slot root operator, and we've talked about this before.
Excuse me, one second. Yes?
With your permission, may I ask, Ms. McLeone, uh, can you go back to the previous slide? So did, was there any big difference in the bar top and, as opposed to not bar top locations here? I'm not seeing that. Is, there's no significant difference here?
There, there really is, um, no significance. Um, uh, right now, um, s- some locations, a lot of locations have slot machines in bar tops, and some of them don't, they just have them sta- on the floor as standalone machines.
But, okay.
But there really is no difference here.
Okay.
Again, you, we don't have any numbers that are below fifty percent. So our conclusion was, well, you may see a slight difference in the percentage, it really doesn't matter. It doesn't push it below fifty percent.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
So then we looked at the slot machine ownership. So the slot root operator, um, if they're, um, involved, they're either doing a space lease, or they're doing a participation agreement. We looked at all the participation agreement, um, numbers. We didn't actually look at the physical agreements, but they're all between seventy-five to ninety percent. That's what the taverns are keeping, uh, on gaming revenue. We only had two that had space lease agreements. So we had thirty-one that had, were tavern-owned slot machines, a hundred percent owned, and their average gross gaming revenue is sixty-three percent, versus the ones that are involved, the slot root operator, which are roughly sixty percent. So again, there really is not, there's no material difference.
Um, in that non-material difference, um, did you get the, um, ownership of the slot route operators, and do any of them also own or have ownership in the tavern itself?
Yes, we did. We did collect that information, and, um, I would say the majority of them, a lot of them, um, are separately owned. Well, first of all, all of them are separately owned in the sense that the business entity itself is, is separate.
Okay.
It, do some of those have shared ownership? The answer is yes. But whether you're a hundred percent owned, or whether you're engaging in the, using a slot root operator, it doesn't seem to matter, as far as, does that dramatically affect the gaming revenue?
Thank you. Yep, that was the question following. Thank you. Yep, that was the question following. Thank you.
So, kitchen operations. We looked at this as well. We had locations, we have locations in the city that don't have any kitchen. We have 31. Of the 31, we have five that have leased kitchens, so they're not getting any money from the leased kitchen, other than through that actual lease. And then, we have 70 that actually have full kitchens. So, we have 67 percent versus 58 percent. Again, there is a difference, but nothing that pushes it below 50 percent. We also looked at the hours of operation for the kitchen. So, if the kitchen was open at least 24 hours, for a full 24 hours, or less than 24 hours, or 12 hours or less, you'll see that there really is no difference whatsoever. It just doesn't matter. So, now, we'll talk about the factors that are related to gaming that do seem to have an impact. Now, the first one here is the topless nightclubs. I don't have a slide on this. It's approximately 30 percent, and it kind of stands to reason they're not there to go play the slot machines, and look at the slot machines. They're there to do something else. The big factor that we found that did affect gaming revenue is actually the restaurant. And the restaurant is intertwined with the number of dining seats, the square footage of the restaurant, also the number of employees, and also whether they have that full dinner menu or not. So, we'll look at the dining seats first. So, our sample size in this situation is 70. These are the 70 locations that told us that they have restaurants. So, you can see here, we're 0 to 24 dining seats. Your revenue is about 67 percent. 25 to 49 is about 67 percent, has not moved. It only starts to move when you start to get a little bit at 50 percent, but it's still 50, almost 56 percent. So, at 75 seats, the average percentage of gaming revenue now really starts to drop to 41 percent. And 100 seats or more is about 35 percent. And this is just the information below in this bar graph. So, now, we looked at the size of the, these establishments that have a kitchen. And what we found was this. If they have 5,000 or more square footage, their average percentage of gaming revenue is about 48 percent. If you have less than 5,000 square feet, your average gaming revenue is about 63 percent. So, the conclusion here, and we use 50 percent as a measurement, dining seats or 75 or more seems to have an impact. 5,000 square feet or greater has an impact. And having a kitchen with, you know, the extensive dinner menu also has an impact. What we found were those taverns where they were operating below 50 percent of their gaming revenue, they operated very closely to our restaurant with alcohol model. So, here are the, some of the other liquor licenses we have, and how they size up with slot machines. So, the tavern, there's a distance separation from other taverns. It's 1,500 feet. You get 15 slot machines. There's no square footage requirements. There's no dining seat requirements. There's no restrictions on the revenue source. Our restaurant with alcohol, there, there's no distance separation. You're only allowed five, five slot machines. There is the square footage, there's no square footage requirement, but you are required to have 100 dining seats. And 55 percent of your revenue, alcohol versus food, the food must be 55 percent or more. And urban lounges, we have no distance separations, no other requirements. They're allowed to have five slot machines. So, there's some options here for consideration. We could restrict the number of, of slot machines. Unfortunately, the 12 that we had that had less than 15, we didn't have enough information to provide some good statistical information to all of you. But it kind of stands to reason that the fewer slot machines you have on the floor, the less money, you know, you would generate from those slot machines. We can also do some restrictions on the establishments. We can do leniency requirement for, for those locations with eight or more slot machines. We could have a required square footage. We could require 100 dining seats, or perhaps even 75, in a full-service menu and kitchen. We could also restrict the revenue derived from gaming to a certain percentage. That's also an option. Or, we could just defer to the state for their definition of incidental, and go along the path that we've been going along.
Great report. Thank you for the time, energy, and effort your team's put in. I hate to ask you, but can you go back to either one, two, or three slides where you're showing the percentages of those above 50 percent where, keep way back?
The first few factors?
The first few charts. The first two, I think it was one or two or three. Because what I was looking at was, if in fact you determine yourself that incidental is anything under 50 percent, because it hasn't been defined, but to me, if someone had said to me, well, something is incidental, at the largest piece of that, it would be something under 50 percent, just to be very generalized. My question is, knowing the numbers, and you listed them, it was back further, I guess. Go, keep going back to the beginning. Yes, there it is. If, how many employees are in the 50 to 59 percent and above? How many employees, if, if we, the city, took it upon ourselves to say 50 percent below is incidental, and 50 percent above is not incidental, because the state hasn't determined it which is the licensing body. But let's assume we did that. How many people, how many tavern restricted would we be putting out of business? How many employees that have been in these establishments would we be putting out of business?
Well, I, I don't have an actual, you, you mean the number of employees?
No, I didn't ask. Well, I just thought you might know it all.
No.
No, you don't. Because, I mean, to me, that's a consideration, looking at what's here, and as we make an analysis for state for ourselves, or look at grandfathering in what is, and set up a new establishment going forward. So, there's not even approximation. You don't know if there are 100 employees or 500 employees in these.
For the, for the ones that are above the 50 percent,
Yeah.
I would probably say it's a sizable number of employees.
Okay. Well, we can't rely on the data
It's probably a few hundred, a few, several hundred.
But looking at these numbers, I mean, I was quite surprised by that. And when you consider, and I always listen to the council people, but I know there's always a drive about jobs and jobs and keeping jobs, and who we're putting out of work, unless we don't consider grandfathering in what is, and then moving forward with a whole new ball of wax, unless we can find out from the state, yes, we're going to define it. At which case, this then applies, because they may say incidentals below 30. You know, I mean, because we don't have that guideline. But from your analysis and looking at this, unless I was reading it incorrectly, what you're saying then, or I don't want to put words in your mouth, but what the county has done in restricting, who cares, putting in high bars and upward, all these restrictions that the county has put in over the years, has been insignificant to, to the income from gaming?
No.
According to your data?
Okay, according to our data, yes. A, a lot of what they've implemented, if you're looking at strict gaming revenue.
Yes, that's what I'm asking.
That is correct. So, right now, and this is basically, it was effective December 17th of 2014. It's to be, they have to meet the new requirements by this December 31st of 2015, if your location in the county. They've only really fully grandfathered in those locations established before 1990. If you're between 1990 and December 8th of 2006, you can materially operate the way you have been operating, but if you make, it says, you must operate in a manner substantially similar to the physical layout submitted to Clark County in December 2nd of 2014. So, if you make material changes, you are now subject to the new rules. The new rules are effective for everybody from December 8th of 2006. And there's, there's two things that you can do. One of them is you can, well, actually, it's an either/or. You either put in a physical bar, you have 12 bar top slot machines, or you have a restaurant with 25 seats. The kitchen has to be open 16 hours, and you have to serve hot, hot meals that are not reheated in a microwave. Or, you, your revenue from your slot machines cannot be more than 50 percent, and you must submit annual records to the Department of Business Licensing.
But based on your survey,
Based on my
You're saying this has been ineffective in affecting the gaming?
That is correct. That is correct.
Wow.
Based on our results, if we were to implement this, and, and again, you have to ask yourself this question, in that this presentation and our survey that we did, we revolved it all around the percentage of, of gaming revenue. And are there other factors besides gaming revenue that, like the business operation, that would play into whether it's incidental or not, or are we solely looking at gross gaming revenue?
Wow. All right, can you go back to your very last slide of what are the, the options that you were talking about here? Oh, I forgot what time it is.
There's one more.
Eight minutes.
Okay. Okay. And in, in reference to this last thing, which is what we've been talking about forever, when was the last request to the state for the definition? Do you happen to know when it was last asked for a definition of incidental?
Well, I do know that NRS 463.161 was recently changed, and I believe it became effective January 1st of 2014. And similar to what the county did, the state also put in some requirements. Basically, anyone who is going to operate 15 or fewer slot machines, an establishment which is licensed to sell alcohol, must meet the following requirements. You have to have 2,500 square feet available for your patrons. You have to have a permanent physical bar. You have to have a restaurant that serves food ordered by patrons from tables or booths. And you have to have at least 25 dining seats, and your kitchen has to be operated no less than 12 hours. And those are the state's new requirements, as, as they would relate to the presentation today.
And the date of that?
And that was, that's effective 2014.
And December?
Or 2013, very recently.
Okay, thank you very much. And Councilman Anthony had a question, please?
Thanks. So, Mary, the, I mean, the, it seems like the, the word that we keep going around and around in circles are, is the last word in your PowerPoint, incidental. Because, I mean, I can ask 10 different people that are kind of in this business to, you know, give me the definition of incidental. I get 10 different answers on what that is. And I know you gave us a state law yesterday, and that doesn't really clarify it that much. It gives you some, kind of some things to think about. And then, our own, we don't even have a definition of incidental in our, in our ordinance. So,
Correct.
We're going to go around and around in circles until we define that. So, I mean, for me, you know, I'm trying to keep this as simple as possible. If I walk into some taverns, you walk in, and there's maybe a hostess there, and there's people sitting around, and they're eating and drinking, and there's a bunch of tables and booths and stuff, and people are eating and drinking. Then, you walk towards the bar, and people are sitting at the bar, and they're eating and drinking, and then you see some slot machines. Okay, so, that seems like it's incidental to me, that gaming's incidental, just as an observation. Some taverns, you walk in, and all you see are people gambling. So, is that incidental? You know, you can get something to drink. You can get something to eat, but it's everybody just kind of sitting around gambling. So, but that's just a, that's just a, an observation. So, we really need to sit down and decide that one of these days, is what does incidental mean when we're handing out tavern licenses? And, you know, I guess we can use a state law, but we have to figure that out as we start moving forward on all these licenses, or we're just going to go around in circles forever. So, that, I don't know if you want to comment on that, but it's just kind of an observation.
That, that's true. I mean, I, I think a big part of that is to decide, is it solely gross gaming revenue? And if it is, what would that percentage be? And if it's not, what are those other factors that would come into play that would help it, help to define incidental? In the state, in Regulation 3.015, and we've talked about that a little bit here, there are seven factors that the state uses to determine incidental. They may use some or, or all, or one of these factors, and only one of them is revenue, and it doesn't give a percentage.
Thank you. Councilman Coffin, you had a question, please?
Thank you, Mayor. And I'm sure we're going to be discussing this for a little while, so I reserve the right to ask again, if I may. But we, I don't think we ever foresaw the spread of gambling into the neighborhoods like, like has happened. I know, growing up as a youngster here, it was in certain places, and that was it. And then, everybody else, you had to go there to gamble, which helped, it helped slow down some of the obsessive gambling habits that broke people and caused people to lose their homes and cars and leave town. It was, it was pretty bad. But, but we went ahead and liberalized the laws and the tavern, particular tavern classification. I never quite understood it. I guess, I guess I, I never knew that it would be the one that would grow so much. I can't tell you exactly when it started, but I never realized that that would become the driving force of neighborhood gambling. And right now, we have a lot of them. I never realized we even had this many. I, I'd like to see it stop right now. I, I'd just like to see no more of them for a while, until we can figure out just what is a right mix. All this free-market stuff about, well, let's put it out here, and we'll see if it fails. It, it fails, and it goes away. They don't fail, and they don't close because of people's obsessive gambling habits. And so, when it's right around the corner from your house, it's pretty hard to avoid. So, but I'm no blue-nose, you know. I know we, we live on and die on gambling revenues in this town. So, there's got to be a way to look and see where we go, you know. How many, how many we ultimately have?
Okay.
I want to know if, how many tavern applications are in the pipeline, Mary?
Right now, we have one in the pipeline. We have one tavern with restricted gaming. It's going to be on the last agenda in the month of December. We may have some other ones, but they're not taverns with restricted gaming.
Because we put a moratorium on alcohol sales in a certain part of town, so that we could grasp how big it was, and what kind of effect it would have. You know, and I'm, I'm thinking we probably ought to be considering a moratorium on these things, stopping it for a while, and just gather our breath and figure out, why are, why aren't we doing this again? Because there was a reason why we didn't do it before. Now, we did, started to do it. Does the reason we started to do it again still make sense? That's all I'm thinking, Your Honor. There's other things to discuss, but that's,
Yeah.
I just want to throw the M-word on the table when it comes to taverns.
Well, and too, if I may add to that, you know, we look to the inordinate growth in the northwest and Ward 6, and we know there are parcels out there that are reserved for hotel casinos, which would mean non-strip hotels casinos, that there are really some appetites out there, that going forward, that really to look at, and probably staff just needs to continue on with the study, that let's assume that one of those parcels that is restricted for hotel casino, what is that distance separation from restricted tavern licenses? I mean, really, perhaps because of the growth of the town, the way it's becoming, I think that is also to couple with the alternative, the different choices, what we, what we need to look at going forward. And I think we really, as, as a body, would like to ask more of staff to investigate. I mean, we've done, this has just been a great job and very significant for us. But going forward, I'm sure we're going to want to continue this discussion. We're dealing with what is now, and I think we're getting Councilman Barlow on, who wanted to have participation in, where are we? On 5, on 27. So, I don't know if they're, oh, Councilman, Mayor Proten, please?
Yeah, I'll try to be brief, Mayor, because I know we need to get Councilman Barlow on the phone at noon for time specific on Agenda Item 27. Ms. McElhulm, can you go back to the, go back a few slides with the, the list of percentages of how many? Keep going. Keep going, keep going. That's it.
Okay.
Can you tell us, the top 18, who those, who they are?
I, I hesitate to discuss that in a public forum, because we were, in our code, one of the reasons why we could ask for the information is there's a confidentiality clause.
We wouldn't share that information.
And so, without permission from the city attorney's office, I would hesitate to disclose that.
Okay, but we can certainly identify who they are.
Yes, yes. I do know who the
Can you go to the slide showing the amount of gaming revenue from these restricted licensees? Compared to what? That's it, right there. $76 million reported gaming revenue. 65 of that, 85 percent of it is 65 million from the establishments, whose percentage is gross, 50 percent or more. The $220,000 is, is a concern of mine, and a great is gross, 50 percent or more. The $220,000 is a concern of mine in a great, in a great way, because I'm not sure we're receiving enough revenue off of these unrestricted. So, I'm throwing that out there right now. It seems like we're getting pennies on the dollar there for them. I can't, I want to concur with Councilman Anthony and Councilman Coffin in regards to this. You know, maybe it is a moratorium, but I think we do need to find some closure and get this over with and move on.
Okay.
That's what's significant. And I think you have given us some great recommendations. I also think that, you know, Ms. Fretwell, with your staff, Ms. McElhough, your staff as well, that we can explore our options a little deeper and in depth on how we want to frame this. Give you guys some time to do that in that respect. Maybe there's separations. And the mayor makes a good point. I've got a huge gaming overlay district out there in Centennial Hills, and, you know, that's going to be an issue. Is it, you know, do we need to look at separations from unrestricted to restricted licensing categories? Look at these fees. I think there's a whole lot of things we need to take a look at. And I concur with Councilman Anthony in regards to, how do we, maybe we need to define that. Maybe we need to define what that means, not the state, or work more closely with the state to get that definition from them. That's something that certainly has, you know, brought this to light today. So, that being said, I think that would be my recommendation to you, Ms. Fretwell, and your staff, is to, you know, explore those options. See where we're at and how we can frame that. And, you know, of course, with Mr. Gerbik in your office, and where we are legally in that respect.
Well, and I may add to that.
Thank you.
I just really, I feel very strongly, this is a state licensing issue. They issue through the Gaming Commission, Gaming Control Board, and either they need to clarify it or give each municipality or the county the ability to go ahead and make their own decisions. But, I mean, I definitely think somehow the state definitely needs to decide, are they going to follow through and give us a definition so we can move forward, or do they not want to define it and just give us generalities and let us each, as a voting body, make our own decisions? So, at this point, have we gotten Councilman Barlow yet?
Not yet.
Mayor Goodman, for the record?
Yes.
I do have those statistics for you. You had asked, how many employees above 50%? 989.
989 employees and-
That work at that, those establishments that make above 50%.
Above 50% income. 980. And do you know how many units, entities, you know, of a tavern or whatever? In addition, there are 980 employees-
That's 75 locations.
Seven locations.
Of the 101.
Okay.
Oh, you would have had to make a longer spreadsheet than this. Or some type.
Wow. No, I mean, that's very significant information that we would, if in fact, we went backwards and just did this retroactively, we're putting now close to 1,000 people out of work, and we're doing something to change what's happening in 75 different locations. So, that, that to me is also a considerate. I mean, I'm shocked at these numbers, to be perfectly honest with you.
We have Councilman Barlow on the line.
And do we have Councilman Barlow on the?
No, actually, on 25.
Okay, thank you. And if you would, just in case it's a question, thank you, you could have a seat. You don't have to stand. Councilman Barlow?
And-
Hello?
And Mayor, I don't think there's any action on this, on this report.
Councilman Barlow, can you hear us?
I think I did.
We want you to know, it's raining here. It's raining here, so we could be compatible with you in London. Okay, we're going to hear, we just had the presentation, which I think you've already seen. And Betsy Fretwell, our city manager, is going to make comment.
I was just going to suggest, Mayor, that you were planning to go to item number 27 at noon. We need to close out item 25. So, if there's any direction that you want to provide, this is a great time, or otherwise you just need to close that item and move on to 27.
Okay, thank you very much. I think we should take a motion to accept the report as submitted with great thanks to you and your team. And if you'd make a motion.
I will, Mayor, with this, with these comments and direction to staff. I think, I think the report is very comprehensive in its end, very telling. So, that's very helpful to know. Your staff did a fabulous job on bringing that to us, that information. But I want to find some closure to this. I think we need to get this over with, figure out we're going to do this, get, move on, get it figured out and move on. So, again, Ms. Fretwell, I would direct you and your staff, ask that you guys explore that opportunity or those options that we have. Ms. McElhough laid out several options for us to consider, but I think there should be more. Again, separations, categories, licensing categories, fees, the whole nine yards is where I think we need to go and get some closure to this, as Councilman Anthony has proposed. So, that's the, that would be my request, Mayor, and council members? And I move to accept the report.
Well, may we, can I say something before you move?
Okay, I just, if, what I would like to do is just accept the report, as that was the instruction. Thank them very much for the work. Do that. Then, we should have a discussion to give staff further instruction as we see, to please investigate this, this and this going forward.
Motion is to accept the report, then.
And-
Okay, on the motion.
All right.
I'm sorry.
I understand, accepting the report as is, we're not making any further motion than that. I just wanted to say, if we are going to get into anything further, we should look into what you're saying, any other possibilities. We should be very definite on, why are we doing this? And what is the need for this? That sort of helps us a little bit. And secondly, this should be out for a while for people in industry and everything, so they can make their comments, too, get in as many comments as possible from people who are involved in that.
So, can we maybe agendize an item going forward for a discussion on the future of this particular, how the city's going to look at it?
Your Honor?
You could do that, you can not do any action on this item and obey it, because this one is actually posted, so that you could take action today and provide that direction. If you're not ready and you want us to do additional research based on the conversation we've heard today, we're happy to bring another item back along a similar line that further-
I'd like to make this, this particular report-
Enhances that data for you.
Accepted, so it's piece of the record, done. And then move on further instruction and get the common input from council as to what they would like further from staff to look into.
Sure.
Because that makes it very concise today. Thank you. Great for this record and what you've done, everything, all the work. And then to have another item brought up, and I don't know what the protocol would be for that, for all this input, all our questions to move forward on further instruction to staff.
We're happy to do that when, whenever y'all are ready.
Well, soon. I mean, I would like, Councilman Coffin?
Mayor, thank you. I think you may have just covered my concern with your last statement, but I just want to clarify. Some of the questions had answers that were important for the record. And so, particularly the number of tavern applications that are in play here in what we call the pipeline, and we better figure out what the pipeline is. And if we in fact have to consider the possibility of a moratorium, I'd rather play it safe and have it on the next meeting agenda, a discussion. I can't make that part of the motion unless the maker accepts that. But I think you get the idea that, you know, we're going to have to consider that possibility. But definitely want to know the results of the citations that your staff is about to issue today for the failure to comply on those other tavern owners.
Okay. So, if I may, Councilman, that's going to all be part of the next piece. What we've got here, there's been a motion made to accept the report with gratitude. So, would you please vote and please post? And then, having been cheating, and I ask Councilman, Mayor Protem, to make, wrap that thing up for the next, to give an instruction request to staff.
And that would be it, Mayor?
Oh, do you, well, you have the report, Councilman Barlow. Do you accept that, in yea or nay? He's underwater.
Yes, yes, I have it.
Great. And you vote yea or nay to accept the report?
Yea.
Thank you very much. All right, Council, Mayor Protem?
Mayor, my suggestion to staff is to explore this a little more in depth, and I will certainly support what Councilman D'Arcani suggested about the stakeholders and everyone's input as we move forward with this. But I think we truly need to get a definition of what we're dealing with, how we're going to handle this in the future for other applications, including, and not limited to a moratorium, distance separations from unrestricted licensing categories and fees. All of these are issues I think that need to be addressed.
And could I, in fact, and I don't know how you'd go about it, but ask the conversation from staff to continue both with the county commission, somebody from there, as well as with the state? So, we're not working at loggerheads with everybody, and then, of course, with all the participants that are involved with the whole issue. So, if you would include that, that would be great. Do we need to make a motion on this? No, so it's done. Okay, so at this point, we're going to move on, not pull forward number 27. Thank you, Councilman Barlow. It is, what time is it? 8 o'clock over there? Okay, discussion for possible action regarding the approval of a restricted gaming license, Nevada Restaurant Services, Inc., DB at Dottie's, number 110, at 10,000 West Sahara Avenue, Suite 100. And this is in Ward 2 with Councilman Beers. And so, do you want to continue or?
For the record, Mary McElhough, Business License Section Manager. Dottie's opened with an administrative temporary license on March 9th, 2015. They were abated from the April 5th, 2015 city council agenda. On July 1st, 2015, city council approved a temporary license which will expire on November 25th of 2015. There is one six-month extension left that can be utilized, that would extend the license to May 25th of 2016. Staff at this time does recommend approval of a permanent restricted gaming license.
Okay. Comments? Any comments, questions, anything? And staff recommends the extension of, yes, sir?
Stepford was giving him a permanent license.
Okay. So, Councilman Beers, this is yours.
Thank you, Your Honor. I believe state law in our ordinance only allows gaming if it's incidental to a laundromat, tavern, grocery store, or convenience store. This applicant is not operating any of those kinds of enterprises for profit. Their self-reporting for their first two months was that they gave away more than 90% of the tavern business, so the food and beverage, which raised their gaming revenue to, I think, over 90%. So, at this location, under the temporary license, it's clear to me that the gaming is not incidental to a primary business. As well, I think going to character, this applicant did make significant misstatements to gaming regulators. So, I move, I move forward denial of the gaming license.
On the, on the motion, Mayor?
Yes, and I'd like to ask a question, too.
Sure. I'm, I'm a little concerned, Councilman. Ms. McElhough, can you tell us how many of these similar licenses we've given permanent licensures to since we began this process with this location?
We have given two permanent licenses since we began this process, and the rest of them have been temporary licenses.
Okay. So, Councilman, you're concerned about this particular location only, not the other applicants that we've approved, the other brand names that we've approved in the past several months since we started this process with this applicant? Is that, am I, through the mayor, of course, I can ask that question to council members?
Your Honor?
Yes, please.
Through you. That's not on the agenda. Do I have to deal with the stuff on the agenda?
No, I understand that, Councilman.
That we've already given temporarys.
That's my concern. And my next question, then, through you, of course, Mayor, would be to Mr. Gerbik, our legal counsel, in regards to that. We have an applicant who's had an application that's received a temporary licensing. Don't care what the business is, but here's the process. They received a temporary license as normal, normal operating status for the city of Las Vegas, for whatever the application is. Staff's recommending approval to give them a permanent license. Planning commission approved them, I believe. And here we are today to deny them. Where are we going to end up with this at the end of the day? Of course, with your permission.
I think Mr. Jones is out there, and he can answer that in a moment.
Madam Mayor, I would like an opportunity to speak. I didn't know, I assumed that the applicant would be allowed an opportunity to have some comment before there's a vote, but, but-
Well, we would have anybody comment then, but at this point, what I'd like to do, I have, if I might, just preempt you for one second, Councilman Coffin, two questions. The evaluation on this particular location was two months into operations, is that correct? The report, I shouldn't say that. The report that was made, to which Councilman Beers is referring, was in the first two months of operations?
That is correct. They opened on March 9th, and the information that they had provided to us, that was heard on the, I believe it was the April 15th agenda, or the information we were talking about, the gross gaming revenue figures were just a few weeks old.
How many weeks old?
I think they were three weeks old.
Okay. My second question, in light of that, in this polling, all the stats that you've given us.
That's correct.
Was that, and it's privileged information, I understand, but are you allowed to say that they, that particular location did report with now this length of time?
Yes, they did report. So, we, again, they've only been open since March 9th, but we did get some additional months.
Okay, but we're now like nine months out.
Yes, well, probably less than that. From March, the survey went out July 28th, and they reported to us in August.
All right, in August, was there a change to the number?
Yes, there was.
Did it go up higher or did it go down lower?
It went down lower.
Significantly, incidentally?
In comparison to all the other statistics that we provided today, they fall in line with everybody else, if that helps.
So, you heard that, Councilman Beers?
And if they would like me to share that number, we-
Your Honor, I need to be recognized, please, if I could.
Okay, yes, please, Councilman Coffin, before you fall over.
I seek recognition to make sure, thank you. I need to seek recognition to make sure we're following proper order, because this is an important subject. So, there is a motion on the floor. Now then, if people, and I don't even know how I would vote yet, but I do know that if there's differences of opinion on the council, amendments would have to be allowed. And in order to know if there's going to be amendments, we would have to hear testimony. And that would be pro and con on the initial subject, I think, not on the motion, at least because people who are going to be witnesses or testifiers had no idea what a motion would be until it was made. But I suppose we, the configurants pretty well know what the motion was going to be. But to follow proper procedure, I think the city attorney would have to agree with me that we've got to get into order on this and make sure that we break up our questioning of staff at this moment and say, is there any testimony? Because I'm afraid I think-
Well, if I may interject here-
We're forming our judgments based on incomplete testimony.
It is proper, when a motion's been made, to have a discussion by council, which is where we were. My comment was going to be, which needed a response from our staff on how that was done, how many weeks, the report that Councilman Beers had made was, he was recommending denial based on the fact of the data he had, and I needed to know the timeframe before I could vote. And Ms. McElhough said, well, that was three weeks of information. So, I asked her at that point, which is significant, and germane to the, to the motion on the floor. My first question was, did they participate in the survey? And at what month was that? Which happened to be five months later, yes, they did. And was there a different number? And yes, there was. So, what I'm getting to is then, for Councilman Beers, he did reference two misstatements that were made in reporting information. That's where I was getting to, to ask Councilman Beers, what was the misstatements made by the applicant? And so, that's what I'm asking.
I didn't say you were out of order.
Inference, sorry.
I didn't say.
Okay.
Your Honor?
Thank you, please.
Thank you. It was, I, I don't have it with me. I had it at our last meeting when we took this topic up. But it was their Form 27, I think, that was part of their submission to the Gaming Control Board. They gave a copy of that to us, and it had, I think, three pretty significant misstatements on it. We sent a letter to the gaming regulators and have not heard back.
We have not heard back?
I assume they are embarrassed and not wanting to do anything in touch with this. This has always been an area of concern for the legislature, because the way they've structured the fees, the state gaming regulators don't make any revenue from the regulation of these particular small places. And so, they just haven't put much energy or manpower into it.
I mean, I wasn't quest-
So, that's the, that's the misstatement. And I don't believe that a, a new application has been sent to Carson City, or I think we have heard from gaming people.
Thank you, because that was, but basing your denial on the misstatements, I just needed to know for myself, the misstatements that could have been reported early on, which I don't know what those were. I don't know what those were, after three weeks of operation versus after five months, the data difference collected after five months, as you said, fits in with the rest of the population. So, I don't know if that alters your opinion or not. And so, we can have more comment here. I'm going to reserve no comments, no public comments, because I want, there is a motion, and I think we have the significant information we asked for from staff. And giving me this particular information now is very different from what was originally presented after three weeks of significance of operation. I mean, brand-new to the game, do they fall in line with everybody else that's been submitting at this point? So, going back, anybody else, any questions? Because there is a motion to deny.
Your Honor?
Yes, sir.
One more thing. I wrote a letter to the gaming regulators, and a copy was distributed to all members of the council. It was probably two months ago. But that did detail the specific things that were misstated in the application.
That's what's important, is it's a matter of confirmed record.
And I believe Betsy read that into the record here at our meeting.
Okay. So, it's just a matter of record what the misstatements were, but that was submitted to us within, that data was collected in three months, three weeks of operations. Where the misstatement took place, was it in that three weeks as well?
No. What Councilman Beers is referring to is Form 27. That's the form that they have to fill out that addresses the regulation and those seven criteria. And so, there were three criteria that he felt were not properly addressed, and that was the substance of the letter that was sent to the Gaming Control Board. I have the letter here. I can briefly go over it if that would make a difference.
I just wanted to make sure that, you know, to me, a misstatement is a misstatement, but something that's a matter of record gives it at least a trailable follow-up? And is it, in fact, was that misstatement or those misstatements after three weeks of operation in a brand-new business, or was it done five months later, the misstatement? Or a year later?
Your Honor, I think it was done a year before.
A year before? Okay.
Or six months before. It was part of their application to gaming, so it was before we looked at it.
Mayor, with your permission, Ms. McLehone, did you state that they are eligible for an additional temporary?
Yes, that is correct. They're eligible for an additional six-month temporary license that would pick up after this one expires and would be affected through March 20, I'm sorry, May 25 of 2016.
Okay. As much as I would hate to make this recommendation because of the pain and suffering we're going through on this item and this issue, I would almost, as we directed Ms. Fretwell and your staff to move forward, or exploring the other agenda item in regards to where we go from here, I would rather probably see us move in that direction than just deny this flat out at this point. And I don't know what the vote's going to be, but that would be my recommendation, my thought, because I think we've got to find some closure to this. We just can't keep kicking this can down the road.
Are you asking, if I may, Mayor Protem, for Councilman Beers to change his motion to...
I'm...
Or do you want to call on the question? We'll vote it.
I'm letting the motion stand. Let's vote.
Okay, thank you. All right. Any, your lights on? Do you want to say something?
I just wanted to clarify the question you made. My understanding is, Councilman Beers, and I remember what you sent to us, and I did read it, the material, that you thought the information was not accurate. Then, did you or did someone in our city offices contact the applicant and ask them to clarify? And then, they did not reply, or?
Councilwoman Tarkanian, the letter was addressed to the chairman of the Gaming Control Board...
Right.
And the chairman of the Gaming Commission, and a copy was also given to the licensee as well.
But we did not contact them separately and say, you know, what is your answer to this? We sent them just a copy, not requesting their answer.
Right. I think that the crux of the letter was to have the Gaming Control Board, I guess, readdress Form 27 and take a look at those items and those issues again, and we've not heard back from, we didn't hear back from them.
And Councilman Beers, would you answer what your letter specifically asked for?
My recollection is that it asked for clarification from Gaming Control what the primary business was, they saw here that they thought gaming was incidental to.
So, then, the applicant didn't deliberately not answer our questions. You let them know, and the state did not decide to help us, guide us. What control, without guidance?
We can, we'd be happy to...
No, I think, you know, I think at this point, there's a motion to deny, and we'll just go ahead and vote, and, right, we'll see, go from there. So, are you with us still, Councilman Barlow?
Yeah, I'm with him.
Okay, there's a motion to deny the approval of the Restricted Gaming License Nevada Restaurants, Inc., at the West Sahara location in Ward 2. There's a motion by Councilman Beers to deny that application. So, we're all voting?
And this is on this one specific?
This is just on his motion, and so, you vote, you have to vote, so it's either yea or nay.
We don't give them a chance to talk at all.
No, because we've heard from him. We've heard from everybody. I think we have enough information, and certainly, staff has given us, unless Councilman Beers wanted more clarification, but I think his motion was clear. So, we can, it doesn't mean, there can't be anything. So, I'm going to wait till Councilwoman and Councilman Coffin vote, and then I'll ask you for yours, because I could cheat and tell you what everybody did, which I won't do.
Well, Your Honor...
Yes?
I'm going to vote, but I have to tell you, I am, I'm going to abstain because of incomplete testimony. The fact is, testimony is warranted, testimony is our custom and a courtesy. I do not know if we have somehow got a rule. I'm being approached by the legal staff. Why do I feel a buzzard circling? So, put a comma.
We're going to pause while you breathe.
And turn off your microphone, please.
Turn off your mic, please. Okay. So, we're still, we're not posting, so I think everybody's in the Councilman Coffin. How say you, Councilman Barlow? You want to vote on the motion, which is to deny the application? Or vote that's a yes, or do you want to vote against that motion?
Against the motion, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Would you put that in? Okay, so we just now await Councilman Coffin? You know, it's very interesting, since I have this free moment while the discussion's going on, even though we have a functional rule now from Dillon's rule, I just would hope that one day we would be given home rule, so we wouldn't have to wait for the state to make up its mind when it won't define a word. I think this body could come up with a definition as we move forward. So, regardless of this diatribe that's going on now, it's amazing today.
And I agree with the mayor on that. If you're going to say you have the authority, then you also have the responsibility to define what you passed as law.
Right, thank you very much. So, we got two votes here for home rule.
Your Honor, I've received some information, legal information. I'd like to ask council to restate what he told me, so that everybody is aware of the implications of an abstention vote.
Thank you. Mr. Jurek, would you please enlighten us?
I'd be happy to. We have always required of this body that a reason be given for abstention, and when you abstain, you are out. You never back in. If the item were to be continued, do continue to be out. Reasons for abstention would be a conflict of interest. Another reason might be, subjectively, you have made some decision that you can't get over in evaluating an applicant's merits. Those would all be legitimate reasons to abstain. Incomplete information, I do not believe, is a good reason for abstention. I believe that incomplete information is a good reason to continue something, or to, in this case, if it can't be continued, to give a temporary, to get more information. But if a lack of information were a legitimate reason for abstention, that could be used very easily by every member of council on every issue. And typically, once you've abstained for one of the other reasons I've given, you're out and you don't get back in. This would lead to a dangerous path of people getting in and out of discussions, depending on how much information they had. So, I would advise against abstention based on lack of information. Advise it either to be continued to get more information, or continue the discussion with the best information you have at the time.
I suppose, when I said lack of information, I guess I was thinking of the courtesy that we usually extend to people to testify on an issue which has been posted for action. And I do not know if this happened to fit in that category where you don't have public comment allowed, because certainly, if public comment is allowed, the way it is posted, we haven't given a chance to have public comment heard, because if that's the case, anytime someone, a motion, not, no, anytime an item is up for discussion and in proper order, if someone immediately makes a motion, then you've cut off the possibility of having testimony. You know what I'm saying? It sets a bad precedent. I don't like what I'm hearing, because I, just against all my experience in voting on difficult issues, is that you have to hear it all. But I think I have to vote no, because I don't have enough information, and I don't want to abstain and take myself out of the issue, and I'll have to disagree with the council as to...
Okay.
We'll have to define how far out you're out of an issue.
Okay.
Because to me, it's one vote at a time.
Well, and where we are, we have an agendized item, and it's either it's an action, yes or no, and/or whatever's going to come, and it's not a public hearing, so...
It wasn't.
We're going to, no. So, I mean, we really need to move on on this, and, oh, all right, so post please. The motion fails. So, now, that motion, a motion on Agenda 27, does anybody wish to make a motion there?
Mayor, may I please, with your permission, I would move to false, well, your recommendation is to give them a permanent license. I would move to allow them another six-month temporary license while Ms. McLehone and Ms. Fretwell's teams decide and help us frame what this is going to look like at the end of the day. That way, Councilman Coffin gets more information, Councilwoman Tarkanian gets everybody in the middle of this, and we get input from all sides. Again, since we have all this new data that you just brought to us, especially those who didn't respond, and also, Ms. McLehone, give you time to get with the state and help us find that definition. I want, in my opinion, mayor and council, I want closure here. I want to get this worked out, figured out, and be done with it, and move on. So, there's no questions in the future from unrestricted and restricted gaming in the city of Las Vegas. We have clear, defined lines, regardless, Councilman Beers, of where the state is or whether they respond or not. That would be my motion with the direction.
And could you restate your motion? I thought you first said it's going to be, I mean, you're going to give them another temporary, but then you said permanent, so...
No, staff's recommendation is to give them a permanent license. My motion would be to give, extend to them another six-month temporary license. In the meantime, staff does what we recommended on Agenda 25.
Am I losing it? Is that conflicted information? Giving them another temporary?
That's the other option we have, Mayor. Deny, give another temporary or give them a permanent license?
Okay.
So, in fairness to everybody at this time, I think that would be the prudent thing to do, to bring back to this council some kind of framework. And I think by allowing them another six months temporary license, it gives Ms. Fretwell's team time to do that.
So, you are, your motion is to give them another six months temporary license with the instruction to staff continue to bring us information?
I do, and I apologize for the motion, because I don't want to keep kicking the can down the road.
Okay. But your motion, to be succinct, is to give them another six months of a temporary license?
That's my...
And then, they'll have to come back, and there are no more temporaries, correct?
No, this is it.
Okay. So, that's a motion, everybody understands?
Madam Mayor, I have a question.
Who's there? Oh.
I'm sorry. I, is the applicant not going to be allowed to address the issues at all on this application today?
At this point, what we have in front of us is what's right here, is the approval of the license and by the body, and the first motion to deny them the license didn't pass.
I understand.
So, where we are now is, based on Councilman Ross's suggestion, to give another six months temporary, and no discussion from the public on this item.
And I understand, Madam Mayor, just so I can, I need to make this point just briefly, if I can. This is my client's only opportunity to make a record, and so, not being allowed to make a record, and this kind of goes to what Councilman Coffin was saying, this is the only chance I have to make a record. And so, denying the applicant, the ability to make a record...
Oh, would you give your name too, and who you're representing?
Yes, I'd be happy to, Madam Mayor. Randall Jones, Kemp Jones &amp; Co., 3800 Howard Hughes Parkway, on behalf of the applicant. So, my concern is, is my client is being denied the opportunity. You have very capable counsel. I've known him for a long time, but, so I know you can rely on him, and he may have a different opinion about this.
And that's exactly what I'm going to do. So, I'm going to turn this to Mr. Jurek, because this was not public hearing, and so, because we've had so many discussions on this. Mr. Jurek, how say you?
I'll tell you, I know your husband's been in this position, and I have too. As a representative of Dottie's, I do believe that Mr. Jones should have an opportunity to make a record, because if they do plan to go forward and challenge the council's vote, whatever it may be, this is his only chance to put it on the record. So, I would highly recommend you give him an opportunity to make that record.
And with or without questions from council? Just the straightforward comments for the record, and that's it? Or are we in a position then to permit questions from council?
At a minimum, Mr. Jones should be able to make his record. If you decide you want to go further and question Mr. Jones or flush it out more, that's your prerogative. But at a minimum, I think he has a right to make a record.
Thank you very much. Please go forward.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And by the way, I welcome any questions the council may have, to the extent you have them. The, and I understand that before I interrupted you, and again, I apologize, but again...
Quite all right.
I have to protect my client's interests. And just so it's clear also for the record, Susan Johnson, General Counsel for Dottie's, is here with me, representing the company. The, I understand there's a motion to continue this, and here is, here is the concern. And Ms. McLehone has already addressed this issue, I think, in response to one of the councilmembers' questions about whether or not any other application, I think actually was Councilman Ross's question, about other applicants. This store, Store 110, the application that's pending before the council today, this store has been in operation since March 9, as you've already been told. And since that time, we've gone back and looked at the county, or the city records, and I certainly have to defer to the city, but my review of the records indicate there have been four other 15-machine restricted license applications, permanent license applications granted, the Hideaway Bar Grill in April, the City Bar in May, Oasis Bar in August, and Molly's, one of the Molly's locations in September. So, since my client's application has been pending, at least two, and we believe actually four other license applications for restricted licenses for taverns for 15 machines have been granted. Here's our concern. The city is now talking about doing something it's never done before. And I've heard the discussion today about a moratorium, and I've been through this issue with other clients in the past, including in the county, but also in North, in Henderson, where a moratorium has been entered, and nobody has been treated differently. In other words, the municipality took action to say, we want to study a problem, we have a concern, and we want to study it. And why we're going to study it, nobody is going to change the status quo. The problem that we have and the concern we have is that the action the city is considering here today now with this motion is to say, let's, in effect, kick this can down the road. But what's happening is you are treating Dottie's differently than you've treated other applicants. And I don't believe that this council wants to do that. I don't believe that you want to treat one person in a discriminatory way than another, or one applicant in a discriminatory way than the other. And here's my point. There was, and I've got your own records, all of those votes were unanimous on these other applications that have come up in the interim. They were unanimous with one exception. I can't remember which one it was. There was one abstention. It was six to one with one abstention. All the other ones were seven to zero to approve, and most of them went on the consent agenda. There was no issue in those applications of a revenue test. You all didn't consider that with these other applicants. You didn't say, well, wait a minute. You didn't say, "Well, wait a minute, before we grant your application, we want to know how much money you're making on, on gaming versus liquor or anything else, or your kitchen." You didn't say, what, how do you define incidental for those other applicants? You didn't do that. So now you're taking my client out of the queue and saying, "Wait a minute, we're going to treat you differently. And, and we just don't think that you, in, in your hearts, really want, are going to do that. That's not fair. That's not right. That's not what this council is about, to treat one party differently than you treat other applicants." And what you're contemplating today is going to be doing that very thing. We understand, by the way, clearly understand, if you want to change the law on a going-forward basis, of course you have the right to do that. You, you, you understand, and you, as I said, I know Mr. Gerbic for a lot of years, very competent legal staff. You, you do what you have to do to set up any change, and you give the notice to the public, and you go through that process. But this applicant has passed every test that the state and the city has put before it. Your own staff is, right now, is still recommending approval of this application. And why? I don't know the particulars, I can't read their mind, but I certainly can make logical assumptions. And those assumptions are, because this applicant is the same as the other four that you approved in the last six months, that were in the same condition. So why, why is it you're treating this applicant differently? And, and with respect to this issue with the state, Councilman Beers did send his letter to the state and said to the state, "We think there is something wrong here. We think there's a problem." There, there has been no response of the state, which is a response. The response is, clearly, Dottie's is in compliance and has done nothing wrong. So you have your response from the state. If the state read Mr. Beers' letter and believed there was something inappropriate about this application and the license they granted, with, with this definition of incidental, then presumably, they would have taken some action. Again, this, this shop has been in, store has been in operation since March ninth. So we, we would ask you not to treat this applicant different than you've treated others in the interim period. If you want to go forward and do something different in the future, we understand that, and, and you have the, obviously, the right and authority and legal basis to do so. But with this application, we would ask you to let this store get its permanent license. It's been put off long enough. You've allowed four others to go forward. And then you've got your study now, some interesting things obviously came out in that study, and which, which I would just seem to, based on what I saw today, would indicate that Dottie's is not, is not some outlier, anyway. So let them move forward, approve this store, and take whatever action in the future you think is appropriate. And that would be our request to you, and that, that is, we would, we do not want the application to be kicked down the road, because what can happen then, which would really be doubly unfair, is then you impose a moratorium, in the meantime, you pass a new ordinance, and this particular store gets treated differently, because now it has to abide by criteria that the other four applicants didn't have to abide by when you approved their applications in May, August, and September, that had the same criteria that Dottie's was under when it got its temporary license in March of 2015. So that would be our request to the council, and I would be happy to answer, the best I can, any questions you might have.
Anybody comments, questions? Oh, please, Councilwoman.
You just made a couple of good points there. One is that this is one that has already been in the process and been approved, it would be the only one.
That, that is correct, that...
And then if changes were to be made, it would be made.
I'm sure...
And it's obvious that we don't feel what we have is right, because we're spending all this time and trying to figure it out. So if it's going to be figured out, you just have to determine where this one goes, and it seems that your point was well taken.
Thank you, Council.
Okay, any other comments, questions? Okay?
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
All right, so there is a motion, thank you, yes, Councilman Coffin.
On the motion to amend, I'm going to support it reluctantly, because I think we have too many of these taverns. And I'm going to support it to, I think in the interest of preserving our, our order here, so that we, we don't run afoul of accusations that we, we have been treated, or treating somebody unfairly. The moratorium word is not a dirty word. Every time we've done that, we've made sure that we've had, anybody in this pipeline, as we use that term, maybe a little loosely, but anybody in the pipeline is not affected, ultimately. And so in a particular case, in my mind, as I vote, my impression of the testimony and of the legal counsel is that I have not given up the right to vote for Dottie's or against Dottie's, or in the future, perhaps to abstain. Because I, I think that we need to stop issuing these things, and just stop it. And there are way too many in this community, and it boils down to that. So I will support this motion if, in essence, the council agrees that we're going to have a moratorium and stop this. It's just, you know, I'm sorry, I, I know we're on the motion, and I'm entitled to talk, but I try not to talk at length.
Or babble.
But I do, and I do, and I do. You know, Your Honor, I'm, sometimes I repeat myself, and...
It's all right, we still love you.
Um, if you have to...
And we respect your wisdom.
I'd like another milkshake, too, while I'm standing. I, I can't help but draw back on old man's stories, and you know how they are. You come here at age nine, 65 years ago, 64 years ago, and you remember what made this town successful was gambling, and you remembered that we've made sure that our population didn't get so involved.
And all the bodies are down there on Las Vegas Boulevard North, under the...
Yeah, and it was, it wasn't a whole lot different, but it's amazing how much change happened between your time and, and the 13 years earlier that I came. So I know that we can control it, but we haven't had the guts to do it. There's been no moratorium talked about. So I'm, that's why I'm saying, we need to talk about it today.
Well, that's going to be the next request to staff.
And we need to do it. It needs to be on our agenda.
For the future of this issue, that's part of the request, and we have lots of input from lots of us about what we think, one of the requests being considering moratorium going forward. However, there's a motion on the floor, and I want to ask Mayor Protem a question, if you're ready for it.
Okay.
What happens at the end of six months? That's the end of the temporaries, right?
Yes, that is the end. It would be May 25th, 2016.
Okay.
I, I can say this, Mayor, I cannot disagree with what the gentleman has, has discussed and shared with us. I can, however, I, I can support where Councilman Coffin's going with, with this, regardless of those in the pipeline already, and this, this applicant is one of them. But I think that gives Ms. Fretwell, Ms. McElhone, and their teams enough time to help us frame this right, so we know exactly what the definition is moving forward. It's only fair to this council, to the unrestricted's and to the restricted's, as to what it, what does this look like?
But what's good for one is good for all.
It is.
So you're saying that conversation and that exploration, does that do something to those that are not put through the consent agenda in the past month or two? But those currently in the pipeline, are they on hold, or are they going to come back to us next month?
Mayor, maybe I could weigh in here. The way we've been handling all these applications is that we've been no longer doing any administrative approvals. So all of these applicants are coming to you. So there's not a moratorium, nor is a moratorium on the agenda for consideration today. So that's the plan that we would go forward with. And as Ms. McElhone indicated in her earlier testimony, there are a few applicants that are in the queue, so to speak, making their way towards an agenda for the council to consider. At that time, you would do what you've done with all the applications that have happened over the last several months since this conversation began. You would make a decision to issue a permanent or a temporary, given the specifics of that particular application, and you'd take them one at a time. Unless between now and then, you chose to take a more umbrella-like action, whether that would be a moratorium or some other measure to keep those from, those decisions from happening individually all along the way, while we continue to do the staff research. So our, our plan is to put an agenda item on at one of the upcoming meetings where we can further discuss those other related matters. And meanwhile, we will continue to bring these applicants, one at a time, to you for your consideration and direction.
Okay, thank you. And Mr. Gerbic, I know you were going to say something.
I just wanted to add that under the open meeting law, I recognize there is a spillover between item number 25 and item number 27. But item 25 was your discussion as to what to do in general with taverns that have restricted gaming licenses. And I think the direction to staff was to come back with as many ideas as staff can think of, which would include a potential moratorium or other ideas, and that would be at a future meeting. This item really needs to be focused on Dottie's and whether or not they are a suitable applicant for a permanent license. And so having said that, I would urge you to bring the discussion back to that and focus on that, because I think we're straying off the topic for purposes of the open meeting law.
Okay, so there is a motion at this time on the floor, having had the record made by representation, that there be a, what did you call it? A...
Six months.
Six month?
Yeah. Go ahead and give them a six... The motion is to, to give this applicant a six-month temporary license. That's the motion.
So it is different than staff's recommendation to go ahead and give them a permanent license, is what you're saying?
Correct.
Okay, so that's the motion. Would everybody please vote?
No, Mayor.
Okay, and that was Councilman Barlow?
He voted no.
Okay, would you please post on that motion?
No, she fails.
That motion fails. Okay.
Your Honor?
So, yes.
Can we have a burger and a shake?
I would move that we grant a permanent license to Dottie's number 110, limiting them to seven slot machines.
Okay, did you hear that, Councilman Barlow? There's a motion on the floor to give them a permanent license with seven machines on the floor.
I agree with that. Yes.
Okay, there's a motion, and please vote on that motion.
Your Honor, we do not, because of the motion, we do not be entitled to an opportunity to speak. We would ask, that's a completely different issue than...
Yes, please.
Thank you. Since that is not something that my client has had an opportunity to consider or discuss, and, and the implications of that, I, I don't know what they are. I certainly don't feel that I could, that the applicant could acquiesce to that at this time. I think what we would need to do, what would you...
Well, Susan Johnson for the applicant, that would be unprecedented. I don't believe you've ever not given a tavern application, 15 machines, and it's, it's built to spec, it's built according to all your requirements for 15, and to cut those in half would essentially decimate the business.
Okay, thank you.
So it's a, it's again, taking this, this application out of the norm, from what you have ever historically done for a tavern, you know, that applies for 15. And I don't know that there's been any record made as to why that is a justifiable action to take. We certainly, you know, it's not acceptable to us whatsoever.
Okay. So there was a motion to approve with permanency, but only with seven machines. So please vote. And Councilman Barlow with seven machines for permanency, yes or no?
Yes, yes, I approve that. Thank you.
Okay, please post.
The motion passes.
That motion passes. So what that means then, at this point, I guess you have to go back to your, I don't know where this goes, at this point legally, do they have to go back to their, to the ownership?
Legally, they have seven slot machines on a permanent license. It's up to Mr. Jones and Ms. Johnson to discuss with their client what their next move's going to be. But that's it.
Okay, so you will then be in touch with us. Okay, thank you very much.
If you want to go eat, I'll take places.
Okay, what I'm going to say, hold on one second. Thank you, Councilman. Have a wonderful rest of trip and safe travels. And what I think I'm going to ask, only because it's 1:00, we're going to have a 15-minute recess at this point, and we'll be back here at, at quarter after 1:00. I'm very sorry for those of you who've been here, but we had to come to resolution here. So thank you very much for your patience. We'll be back in 15 minutes. We'll be back in fifteen minutes. Everybody, so sorry. We're here.
I'm checking your blood levels. Sugar levels.
I want two.
Okay. They're that good, though, huh?
Okay, we're right back to the beginning of the meeting. Okay, we are back here, but we're waiting for our city manager, who said, "Could I wait a minute?" Is it still raining outside? Has anybody been outside?
Loose guys. Loose guys. Going to the races.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I would like a reconsideration of that vote.
Where's our attorney? Councilwoman Tarkanian has asked for reconsideration of the previous vote, just to proceed and pull back, tell us what do we do here?
What we would do, Your Honors, have you recall item number 27? The rule, the parliamentary rule is if you have voted in the majority, only somebody who votes in the majority can ask for reconsideration. The councilwoman did vote in the majority, so she's entitled to. In order for this matter to be reconsidered, she would need four votes. So, with that, I'd ask you to recall item number 27.
And I have one more question of you. One thirty. Let's try and get Councilman Barlow back on the line.
We tried him.
We...
We're unable to get him.
And maybe he's asleep. Try him again.
Yes.
Okay. All right, so we can go ahead without that plurality of vote?
That's correct.
Okay, so, we are, do we vote on this then? To pull it back?
If we could just recall item number 27 for the records discussion for possible action regarding the approval of a restricted gaming license, Nevada Restaurant Services, Inc., DBA Dottie's #110 at 1,000 West Sahara Avenue, Suite 100. Councilwoman?
Okay, so, you want to turn on your microphone?
That's what happens when you sit next to an educator, they give it to you play-by-play. I'd like to give, to reconsider the vote. And so, I make the motion to reconsider our last vote.
On item 27?
On item 27, yes.
Okay, so, all in favor of that motion, please vote to reconsider Agenda Item 27's And please post. That motion carries. Okay, so now, your motion.
Can I go through, legal counsel, can I go through with this, even if we don't have everybody here?
Well, since you've moved to reconsider, what you do is you go back to the motion that was originally made, and if the maker of that motion wants to make it, and you re-vote on it, because you're reconsidering it, so...
All right, then, Mr. Beers, would you like to make that motion again, please?
Oh, I'm sorry. Councilman Beers, I'm sorry.
I would make the same motion that I made on our second-to-last vote, including the reconsideration vote, which is to grant them a permanent license, restricting them to seven slot machines.
Right.
Okay, so, there is reconsidering, but Councilman Beers is remaking his motion, therefore you vote.
Yeah.
Would you please give us that little thing, so we can vote on...
Should I say why?
That previous motion. Right, correct.
You have the right to...
And you better close your machine. Okay, so, the motion is, give them a permanent license, but with seven machines. So, now you vote, so now you...
Yes, that is the motion. I just wanted to say, and my reconsideration was based upon the fact that I felt it showed sort of a nebulous way of why you're selecting. What's your legal term that you use? Arbitrary. It, you know, seven, was it just between seven and eight, or seven and five? And I know they hit that in court very hard, and it is, and also, secondly, it didn't seem fair to me at this time. She just wants you to vote.
Then you go over here, this time. You're voting against his motion, not for his motion, if you're reconsidering.
I'm fine. That's what I'm doing.
All right, now, we're missing Councilman Coffin still.
No, I'm still here.
Have another milkshake.
The motion is, again...
The same motion was to give a permanent license with seven slot machines to the applicant. So, we're revoting on that, which is what councilwoman asked, and so, then please Okay, so, that motion does not carry. We need another motion. Why did it not carry?
Are you sure we need another motion?
Well, you can follow staff's recommendation. You can either be permanent, or you could go back to, goodness, what was it? Give them another, yeah, you can give them an extension for the six months to May, you can make them permanent.
Let me, if I could, Your Honor, let me jump in for a moment, and I can just look at Mary. You can just nod, yes or no. If the permanent, I mean, the temporary they have right now expires on the 25th of this month, so there would be an opportunity to do one of two things, either make the one motion that hasn't been made yet, and that would be a motion to give them a permanent with all fifteen slots. And of course, the other motion that could be made, I just want to make sure that that is available, is to hold this at abeyance for two weeks. They still wouldn't expire, and Councilman Barlow would be back for the vote.
But what happened to the, to give them another temporary for six months?
You've already voted on that.
We voted that loss? Okay. All right, so, there's what's left, yes?
If I could just throw in at least my opinion, and I want to make sure it's not, it's not on process. I could vote to deny this license.
You've already tried that.
Or I could vote for it.
No, 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 it failed. That was the first motion.
Well, but I'm entitled to make another motion. I just wanted to say that the only way I could really support this #110 shop opening up, because I think we have too many, is if we, at the same time, vote for a moratorium on all, and we take no more tavern applications.
I have to advise you, you're not at all agended for a moratorium at this point, so you could not be part of a motion.
Ah. So, then, probably the next motion that could take place theoretically is for Councilman Ross to restate his original motion, which was six months.
It died.
It died one time.
We can't vote on it again.
You can't vote on it again?
He said it died.
No, you can vote on it again.
That's right. Oh, no.
Wait, yes, it can be.
You can make your motion again.
Carson City's a lot more fun. They can bring the same thing thirty, forty, fifty times.
It's different, isn't it, Bob?
Because, you reason you have to bring it back here is because you have not been able to get a motion to pass. And unfortunately, because you have an applicant that's asking for an answer, you're obligated to give them one. And that's why we have you make motion after motion until you get one that passes. So, if you feel that new information has been proffered by council, or by questions asked by a member of this board, you're entitled to re-ask, remake your motion if you want to.
Okay, well, I'll make a motion to follow staff's recommendation and give them the permanent license.
But...
That's what, my motion is going to be, follow staff's recommendation.
Okay, so, I can't have a moratorium on the same issue?
No, you can, because it's not a gen, we'll talk about that the next time.
I understand, I understand.
Okay, so, I've made a motion, if you get a chance.
Your Honor?
Yes, sir.
Through you, thanks, Your Honor. I would, I'll be voting against this. Couple of arguments have been made that may seem persuasive. For example, there's been an investment already made here. Well, chop shops, whorehouses, counterfeiters, all make significant investments in their business enterprises, but we shut them down if they violate the law. And the law is very clear, it doesn't need changing, you might need a term defined, that being substantial. But the law is clear, if you have a tavern, a laundromat, a C store, or a grocery store, you're allowed a limited number of slot machines, as long as it's incidental to your primary business. This location had 1% of their sales, food and beverage. That is the tavern business, and only 1% of their sales were tavern-oriented. I can't see how gaming is incidental to a primary business, so I will have to remain an no vote.
No, and I absolutely respect everything that you've been looking at and hearing. I hear that either we take everything above 49% and close them down and say, "You're all going to seven slot machines," because it's not incidental, which puts 980 employees out of work, and closes down probably 75 locations, or we move forward. And since every other motion's failed, I certainly agree with the absolute, we are at a point that this needs to be a definite dialogue among council going forward for what the future is in reference to tavern restricted. But based on the evidence that was brought to us today, and the facts that were given to you after three weeks of operation, it's not a level playing field. And so, we're going to try my motion, and it's either going to pass, or it's going to fail, and Councilman Barlow, unfortunately, is not going to get to vote. But mine is to follow staff's recommendation, give them a permanent license, and then beyond that, if in fact this, regardless of whether it passes or not, to instruct staff to go forward, we're looking at where we go from here for the future. And so, this isn't this horrendous mess that we've gotten ourselves in here. So, given that, there's a motion, please vote, and please post. Well, there we are.
Your Honor?
Okay.
I think I would move that we obey this for two weeks. Wasn't that our last choice?
Well, but, well, that was the other thought, or bring back the original one, the question I say, we're going to be right back here. I mean, let's fish or cut bait. We're here, so make a decision, because this will go on forever, except time will run out.
Isn't there a rule, we can put this to a special election?
Say something?
Isn't there a rule that we can put a 3-3 tie to a special election, or something like that?
You're going to waste time with a special election? Oh, my God, money.
Mr. Beers, though, if I could just say, asking for an abeyance, is that what he said?
Yes.
I would agree with that.
Brad indicates that was one of our two remaining choices, we just shot down one.
All right, we shot down one. Let's drive this one in two weeks of abeyance.
I would move that we obey this matter until our next meeting in two weeks.
There's a motion? Please vote. No abstentions either.
If we're going to fish and cut bait, or cut bait, we've got to have seven lines in the water. So, I hope everybody's ready to be here.
Good for you, Mayor.
I just, no, I do what I'm supposed to be doing. So, the mo, we will have two weeks, and I'm expecting you, Councilman Beers, to come in with a solution that passes unanimously.
Oh, yes.
It's your ward, and you're at fault here, because we have been doing this for so long. Gosh, okay. Sorry, we'll see you in two weeks.
I feel like I've been in a cage by you, you know who.
Okay, so, moving right along to Agenda Item 26. Okay, this is Report by Planning, Staff and Discussion for Possible Action Regarding the Progress on Packaged Liquor Proposals That Allow for the Sale of Sealed or Closed Containers for Consumption Off Premises of a Business with Direction to Staff if Necessary.
Thank you, Your Honor. For the record, Karen Delston, Deputy Planning Director, and also with me today is Tom Perrigo, the Director of Planning. In June of this year, City Council enacted a moratorium on packaged liquor licenses and land use approvals for those establishments under 1,500 square feet. Requested staff to do some research on not only our current types of licenses and what's happened over the recent history in approval of these locations, but discuss some of the neighborhood and impacts, secondary impacts of these types of establishments. It's very clear, both in the Nevada revised statutes and in the Las Vegas Municipal Code, that the City Council has the power to collect license fees and to regulate the sale of both beer, wine, and other alcoholic beverages. A packaged liquor establishment, which is the type of license that we are discussing right now, is a license that authorizes the sale to consumers only and not for resale of alcoholic beverages in original sealed or corked containers for the consumption off the premises where the same are sold. These are approved both by land use, through a special use permit, and they are either designated as ancillary, which comprises restricted amounts of alcohol available in those stores, such as a convenience store, a drugstore, a grocery store, or as the primary business, which allows the sale of alcohol as their primary business, which we commonly refer to as a liquor store. We currently have 27 active liquor license categories in the city. We have 907 licensees that operate those various types of liquor establishments. One of the key regulatory concerns that we have, our regulations around, is the preventing the over-concentration of alcohol outlets and the health-safety problems that can result from that type of over-concentration. A lot of our national, as well as regional, studies have showed that over-concentration or oversaturation of alcohol outlets can lead to increased crime, drinking and driving, public health concerns, and increased nuisances such as graffiti, loitering, and excessive litter in these oversaturated neighborhoods. So, what our task was, was to really take a look at those studies, as well as what local data was available, and look at locations, specifically those with less than 5,000 square feet. So, those over 5,000 square feet are typically your grocery stores, your big-box stores, such as Costco or Sam's, those sorts of places where alcohol is purchased in conjunction with your groceries in those types of environments. They are all restricted to the percent of alcohol that they can have in those locations underneath their land use, so it's specific amount.
Question, please?
Yes.
Going into Costco and buying five, six-packs of beer, does that count in this, if they also have other distributorship? I mean, anybody buying in over, it's just the liquor establishments, that's all part of the greater than 5,000 squares?
That's greater than 5,000 square feet, the building, the premises that is approved is 5,000 square feet. So, grocery stores are over 5,000 square feet, Costco is over 5,000 square feet. Those locations are usually limited to 10% of their retail floor space, that's all they can display of alcohol. The rest has to be groceries. So, it's sold, you'll see across the nation, alcohol, off-sale alcohol and groceries, purchasing them together as a commodity. Liquor stores traditionally are those locations that are restricted by age, so minors cannot go into a liquor store on their own, without a legal parent or guardian. A lot of states have their liquor stores where they're state-run liquor stores, so very different model. A liquor store, which is primarily liquor, and underneath our code, they may have some ancillary items that go along with liquor, corkscrews, those sorts of things, periodicals, and those sorts of things. But that's a liquor store. The other model for the large places we have are the grocery stores. In the past years, three years, we've seen a dramatic increase in the requests for additional packaged liquor, and I've reported this to you several times. We looked particularly at the downtown, and looking at a 55% increase downtown in those small packaged liquor stores. 16% of all of our active liquor licenses are packaged liquor, out of 147, which is our total number of packaged liquor, out of our 907 licenses. 56% of those licenses were issued prior to January 2012, 82 of them. So, in 22, we, in 2012, we had 82 packaged liquor stores. That's everyone. That's not just the small ones, that's your grocery stores and everything. That's not just the small ones, that's your grocery stores and everything. Since January of 2012, in the last three years, we've had 44% of ours issued. So 65 in the last three years. So those are the types of increases that we're seeing in those liquor stores. Of the locations under 5,000 square feet, they have grown at a much faster pace than those larger liquor stores. So 51% of our packaged liquor licenses are in spaces greater than 5,000 square feet. And now, in the last three years, our under-than-5,000-square-feet have come up to be 49% of our liquor outlets. 50% of our packaged liquor establishments of less than 5,000 square feet have been issued, again, as I said, since January of 2012. So in the last three years, we've seen 50% of our small, current small places issued. It's a 22%, is the average annual growth rate of packaged liquor from 2012 through 2013. In looking at our population, you can see that the red line is our packaged liquor stores, and they have outpaced our population growth. So usually you would see liquor continue as we expanded to new areas, you'll see new liquor outlets coming. We have seen in the last three years that our small liquor stores have outpaced our population. You'll see the, at the very end, in 2014, the City Council did a moratorium downtown. A lot of our small packaged liquor stores were downtown, and you see the effect of that and the situation we were really in in 2013 with those liquor requests. The objective of the moratorium that the city passed was to review the Metro Calls for Service, study the secondary effects of regulations in our community, especially the saturation, look at what the saturation is in the city of Las Vegas, as well as those jurisdictions around us, to see how we stack up, and to create and forward proposals for an ordinance. This is what a map looks like of our 147 packaged liquor establishments. That's where they are located throughout the city, that's both the large ones and the small ones. We looked at Metro Calls for Service. Metro helped us immensely in trying to narrow the calls for service down around the smaller liquor establishments. So within 1,500 feet, which is the neighborhoods around those liquor establishments under 5,000 square feet, on average, in total, Metro responded to 3,348 calls. The average was about 35 calls per liquor establishment in that six-month period. We also had 188 code enforcement graffiti calls at those locations for those small liquor outlets. The types of calls, we did narrow the calls for service, trying to correlate what actual calls we were pulling and looking at, based on a lot of national studies on the types of calls that correlate directly to those off-sale liquor sales, and this is the list that we saw. This is our packaged liquor establishments in 2005, and this is what they look like So you can see that a lot of these are locating within proximity to another one. So it's not often that we see one by itself. Where you see one by itself, it's not as big of issue as where you have two and three. And sometimes in looking at the Metro Calls for Service, it was difficult to attribute those to a specific packaged liquor, because on places where we had a high call for service, we had several liquor stores in the same corner, same locations, those sorts of things. So it really became where we had a congregation of them, we could see that data change. The surrounding municipalities, we talked to North Las Vegas, Henderson, and Clark County. In North Las Vegas, they allow packaged liquor in grocery stores, in standalone liquor stores, and in some gift shops. They have a gift basket license, which we also allow, so if you're doing gift baskets, you can get a license. And hotel gift shops are allowed full alcohol. Convenience stores are only allowed beer and wine. In Henderson, grocery stores, drugstores, and gift shops, again hotels, and liquor stores are allowed full liquor. Convenience stores are limited to beer and wine since 1995. In Clark County, they allow grocery stores and drugstores, depending on the square footage. And they are currently considering restrictions on drugstores. They only allow in convenience stores beer, the beer, wine, and spirits. The city of Las Vegas is the only one that allows our convenience stores to receive the full package license. So we looked at the number of packaged liquor establishments per square mile for saturation, and you'll see that North Las Vegas is .62, Henderson is .69, Clark County is .48, and that is the urban, unincorporated area of Clark County, and Las Vegas is 1.08 per square mile. So we have a significantly larger number of liquor stores, package outlets, than our surrounding neighbors. That saturation is an issue that we deal with both a lot in coming up with our regulations, as well as trying to control some of the concerns that neighbors have about those liquor outlets in our communities. And I'm going to let Tom talk about the secondary impacts from a planning perspective.
Thank you, Ms. Duddleston. So we looked at some studies more at the national level and, in fact, the international level, and things like the Center for Disease Control showing that the number of outlets has negative secondary impacts on things like overconsumption and assault and aggravated assault and these sorts of things. Led them to recommend that local governments consider limiting those, as well as the World Health Organization has come out with similar findings and similar recommendations, not only because the oversaturation, at some point you have increased supply, which can lower the price and the access to it financially, but also they have shown that without lower price, just the availability of alcohol in certain areas can lead to some of these issues. And we see here other studies at Indiana University and Harvard University all coming to similar conclusions. Oops.
Go ahead. We'll come up to it.
Oh. You got out of order.
It is, and I apologize for that. This is basically the saturation map. It shows all of the liquor that's available within 1,500 feet for off-sale. So we have package, remember that taverns can sell off-sale as well, so you can go in, purchase a six-pack from any of the tavern locations. So this is your grocery stores, your convenience stores that have packaged liquor, and your taverns. So this is where liquor is available within walking distance.
So going back to some of the studies, the overriding concern, of course, is public safety and maintaining a safe and vibrant area for not only our residents, but we find in a number of other cities where heavily relying on a tourism industry, that this is something that they look at very carefully and craft their codes accordingly to not only provide a safe place for people to enjoy their vacation or their time off, but also a safe place for residents as well. We see that in 2012, highway deaths increased to 10,300 due to alcohol after a period of decline previous to that. In Nevada, 79 people died in 2014 in drunk-driving incidences. A case study that we found is City Vallejo in California, where they actually instituted some policies to start to weed out and reduce the number of package outlets. And during that period, we saw an 18% decline in the number of outlets and a 53% reduction in nuisance calls for police service. In the state of Nevada, drunken driving is the number-one cause of fatal car crashes, and this is reported by the Nevada State Department of Public Safety. 42% of all crashes involves at least one impaired driver, and impaired driving was responsible for 33% of Nevada's roadway deaths in 2010. Nevada is among the worst in four out of five categories that insurance companies look at: failure to obey, drunk driving, speeding, careless driving. The bottom 10 cities in these factors were also the top 10 in terms of alcohol-related incidences. So this is not only important in terms of public safety and all of the work that we've done for zero fatalities, but it's also important for insurance costs and other factors. In the city of Las Vegas, 31% of pedestrian fatalities involved either the driver, pedestrian, or both being under the influence, and 33% of fatal crashes resulted from the driver being impaired. I'm going to turn it back over to Ms. Duddleston.
Our regulatory systems both are on the land use side, so a lot of times we see distance separations, those sorts of things, also on our licensing side and how these operate. Our regulatory systems are really geared towards reducing the social issues that Tom talked about, about our public health, about our public safety. So we'll see across the nation that increased density of liquor outlets and the issues associated with that are dealt with through our regulations. The lower prices, where we have too many outlets directly competing with each other, we see lower and lower prices, and we see higher consumption, higher purchases in those locations, in those neighborhoods. The promotion and advertising, I know you're very well aware of that, we've discussed that down on Fremont Street, and there's regulations across the country that tighten control over more and more dangerous alcohol products. One of those we saw in the state legislature this time, and that's powdered alcohol, that's getting popular across the country, and our state banned that. But it's all of those types of new alcohol that is coming out that we have to deal with in our regulations as well. We work closely in licensing with the underage drinking program, and they were able to provide us with some of their statistics. This is a federal grant, where they actually go out and do sting operations in our alcohol establishments, and we asked them where they saw the most violations and where they had the most issues with underage drinking law enforcement. They said that convenience stores are their number-one offenders for selling to minors, and the second are liquor stores. And the number of attempts by minors to purchase alcohol is greater at small locations versus large, controlled environments, and the attempts are more frequent when there is a greater density of locations. These statistics from them confirm the national research that Tom looked at, that in our grocery stores and some of those larger locations, they have the card readers for licenses, they have control systems, they have managers, there's several people on duty rather than one person watching those things. Our task at this point was to propose new ordinances for your consideration during this moratorium period, and to focus on that public health and safety that I discussed, the regulatory control both on the land use and licensing side to further reduce the density of those liquor off-sale establishments, and to allow our current alcohol outlets to operate as grandfathered businesses. The summary of our recommendations at this point is to provide distance separations to reduce the density. So right now, you have distance separation between taverns, is to provide distance separations between packaged liquor outlets, so you won't have as many located on one corner or one street or in one neighborhood. Other than grocery stores, all packaged liquor stores would, in the future, be considered a liquor store, which limits access by minors. Convenience stores and drugstores would be limited to the sale of beer and wine. Required off-sale establishments to monitor their security and their business practices to ensure that they are good business partners in their neighborhood and their environment, and they reduce the nuisance activity that we're seeing around these locations. Those are the basics of the recommendations. Our timeline is, we're waiting right now for a final draft from the city attorney's office, we expect that this week, is to go out for business impact and begin that on November 10. We'd have a meeting with all of our packaged liquor businesses, make sure they got a copy of the ordinance, they had a chance to review it, they can come in, ask us questions, sit down and talk to us about their ideas, their concerns with what we're proposing. We're proposing that on November 19 at 3:00 at the Development Services Center, and then we would have an introduction and hearing of those ordinances back before the city council in December. At this point in time, we're here for any additional direction that you have for us to make sure if there are items of particular concern that you want to make sure that we take care of in those drafts that we put out for business impact, and that we put together a final package that we can bring before you in December.
Very good report, thank you very much, very thorough, and look forward to going forward. Do we have any questions, any comments, anybody?
Need a motion?
Are they exhausted and awake?
Yeah.
Drinking liquor in the back. I have a question.
Yes, please.
Great presentation, thank you guys, this is eye-opening, eye-opening in regards to the number of locations. I have a scenario for you, though, I have a great butcher shop out in Centennial Hills that is expanding, and I know there's been discussions to sell beer and wine at that butcher shop, so as you go in and buy your pork chops, you're walking out, and that's just never going to happen, is it? Through the mayor, to you, Ms. Duddleston.
Thank you, Your Honor, if I might, for the record, Karen Duddleston, that is beer and wine. We are talking about full liquor.
I understand that, but you mentioned beer and wine in convenience stores moving forward and drugstores.
Right. The beer and wine right now, it depends on if that butcher shop is considered, if they have a restaurant, they can get on-sale and off-sale. If that's something that you want us to look at, right now, I don't believe they would unless they are a convenience store, can have beer and wine right now, but I don't believe under our current regulations, they would be eligible for beer and wine. Now, since currently we have no restrictions on packaged liquor, they would be eligible for full liquor. They would not be eligible for beer and wine. That's one of the issues that we were asked to address.
Okay. I'm not real concerned about it, Mayor, and it's certainly not a hill for me to die for, but there's just some of those businesses that, you know, offer unique opportunities for shopping or purchasing things, and then that's one of them. I mean, the smoke shop here at the Paiute in downtown comes to mind, too. I recall they were considering doing something to that effect, where they were going to sell not only cigars, but cognac and high-priced liquor at one time, and how controversial that was. But, no, I think this is a telling. I think this map is extremely concerning to me about when it comes to public safety and public health. And I'm curious to what you come back with and how this goes, because, you know, that growth pattern for more commercial retail is going to be out there in Centennial, and how that's going to affect a lot of the stores out there. But I think I'm looking forward to your recommendations when you come back.
And what we've done on Fremont Street has been significant, right, with the advertising and the restrictions that were put under the canopy?
The restrictions that we have under the canopy, we are continuing to monitor. We are finding fewer and fewer business licensing citations are issued down there, so I think we're getting good cooperation from our locations. I'm sure as we go through this, both the outlets on Fremont, as well as their neighbors, will want to make comments on the regulations in that community as well. And we'll listen to them and bring anything forward. Also, I just want to mention, Your Honor, if I could, on beer and wine, there is a general retail store license available for beer and wine, and some of those opportunities may be available for those stores, if they're of the right size.
And do you have any concept as to when the county may go forward with their restrictions on drugstores and convenience?
They're...
Just beer and wine I'm talking about.
They have been asked to look at drugstores. They allow packaged liquor in drugstores. It's one of the historic places that has been around since the '30s, when alcohol was considered medicinal purposes during prohibition, it was able to be sold at drugstores. It's continued at drugstores. What we've seen in a lot of drugstores is that they become convenience stores, to the most part, they are more of a general retail store rather than just a pharmacy only. They sell a lot of other things there. The city put in our regulations that you must have a licensed pharmacist on duty. County does not have that provision in their code, and they have drugstores that have licenses as drugstores that would like to close their pharmacies, which makes them, in our jurisdiction, a convenience store. So they are struggling with, as people change their business models, just as we are, those sorts of issues.
Well, and I recall in front of this council came the issue of CVS going into what is no longer on the table, but the Las Vegas Club, and how much liquor and frontage they could have, because they're a drugstore, and we have something, whether it was in order... could have, because they're a drugstore, and we have something, whether it was an ordinance, but a certain number of feet beyond whatever it was, 1,200 square feet, that there were different ballgames to play.
Correct, and we are addressing, we are coming up with proposals to address that specific situation in this packaged liquor and make it more uniform.
So you are looking for just the go-ahead from this body at this point?
At this point, to make sure that if there are specific issues that you want to make sure along the lines of packaged liquor, that we include, and then we will advertise all of those for business impact, and work with this council, as well as our licensees, to bring you something that is pared down and that everybody's had a chance to look at.
Great, so, any other comment here? So moving forward, I'll make a motion to have you continue on with the direction you have undertaken. So that's my motion, since we're voting. There we go, all in favor, please signify by voting aye, and opposed, please so vote, or abstain, which I'm not allowed to do, we're a voting body. Okay. And then please post. And that carries, we'll move on to agenda item 28, Boards and Commissions, Discussion for Possible Action, the Appointment of a Council Member to the Nevada League of Cities and Municipalities, NLC, and am Board of Directors, that the city appoint a replacement member. I would like to make a motion to recommend Stavros Anthony to this seat. So that's my motion, please vote. Do you accept? Oh, do you accept? Oh, wait, we have an objection.
Yeah, I need to.
You don't think he has experience, right? Okay. We'll put it on hold for an abeyance for two weeks there. Okay, there's a motion to appoint Stavros Anthony to this position, please vote and please post. That motion carries. Agenda item 29, Recommending Committee, Bill Eligible for Adoption at This Meeting, Bill Number 2015-86. Councilwoman Tarkanian, would you like to have the bill read?
Yes, please.
Yes.
Thank you, Bill Number 2015-86, First Amendment, An Ordinance to Amend the Unified Development Code to Require a Special Use Permit for Short-Term Residential Rentals with More Than Four Bedrooms, Establish Minimum Special Use Permit Requirements Pertaining There Too, and Provide for Other Related Matters.
I would just like to add that Jay Brown, who represented some people who objected to this in the past, has spoken with me and said that he would not oppose this, and so I move to approve.
Thank you, there's a motion to approve on Agenda 29.
First Amendment.
First Amendment. Please vote and please post. Motion carries, we'll move on to Agenda Item 30, Bill Number 2015-93. Councilwoman, would you like to have the bill read?
Yes, I would, but...
Could I, just before he leaves, Jules, out there in the audience, he sat through a long, lengthy meeting today, he's been at every other meeting that we've had this discussed, and he's been one of those that have had a terrible time with, and I'm going to call him, party houses next door to him, thank you for your support. You stuck by it as a good citizen, thank you. Yes, mayor, I would like them read.
Please read the bill.
Bill Number 2015-93, An Ordinance to Amend Ordinance Number 6466, and LVMC Chapter 6.78, Regarding Multi-Vendor Permits, to Include Provisions Inadvertently Omitted from Ordinance Number 6466, and to Provide for Other Related Matters.
And you will move to have...
And move to approve.
Thank you, on Agenda Item 30, Motion to Approve, please vote. Please post. Motion carries. Agenda Item 31, Recommending Committee, Bill Eligible for Adoption Later Meeting, and Bill's, Items 31 through 36, Bills Numbers 2015-87 through 92, will be heard at a later meeting, we'll move on to new bills.
Okay.
Agenda Item 37, New Bills, Items 37 through 39, Bills 2015-94 through 2015-96, will be heard at the Recommending Committee Meeting Monday, November 16th, 2015, and please, attorney, read the new bills.
Mayor, our extern, Scott Morse, will be reading the bills.
Thank you.
Okay, so Bill Number 2015-94, An Ordinance to Extend the Boundaries of the City, to particularly describe the land to be annexed, to make its inhabitants subject to the laws, obligations, and benefits of the city, and to provide for other related matters. Bill Number 2015-95, An Ordinance to Amend LVMC Title VI, to Establish a Business License Fee for Transportation Network Companies, and to Make Transportation Network Company Business Licenses Eligible for Multi-Jurisdictional Business Licensing, and for Other Matters Related There Too. Bill Number 2015-96, An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Las Vegas, Nevada, Authoring the Issuance of Its City of Las Vegas, Nevada, General Obligation Limited Tax City Hall Bonds Additionally Secured by Pledge Revenues, Series 2015-C, for the Purpose of Prepaying the Lease Purchase Agreement for City Hall, Providing the Form, Terms and Conditions of the Bonds, and the Security Therefore, and Other Details in Connection There With, Providing Other Matters Relating There Too, and Providing the Effective Date Hereof.
Thank you very much, these new bills, 2015-94 through 2015-96, are assigned to council members, Barlow, Anthony, and Coffin, thank you very much. We will now move on to Items 40 and 41. On the consent agenda are considered to be routine and recommended for approval in the Department of Planning, Agenda Item 40, EOT 60708, applicant owner 3,000, MW LLC, and a request for an extension of time of an approved site development plan review, SDR 41779, for 136-unit apartment complex with a waiver to allow no landscape buffer along portions of the north perimeter where six feet are required, and on 9.92 acres at 3,000 North Michael Way, R-3, medium-density zone, Ward 5, Councilman Barlow. And Agenda Item EOT 61306, applicant owner 1213, South Las Vegas Boulevard LLC, on a request for an extension of time of approved special use permit, SUP 49910, for Tavern Limited Establishment at 1213 South Las Vegas Boulevard, C-2, General Commercial and C-1 Limited Commercial Zones in Ward 3 with Councilman Coffin. Mayor, I know, Councilwoman Tarkanian.
I just wanted to request, move for abeyance of Item Number 40 for our...
Councilman Barlow?
Right.
Okay.
Two weeks is fine.
Two weeks? Which will put it to what, 18th of November? There's a motion to obey Number 40 for two weeks to the 18th of November, as requested by Councilman Barlow, and that's a motion made by Councilwoman, and if you will, please vote in a moment, there it is, please vote and please post. And that motion carries, and on Agenda Item 41, Councilman Coffin?
I've moved for approval, Item 41.
There's a motion on Agenda Item 41 to approve, please vote and please post. And the motion carries. And now we will go on to planning, and Councilwoman has asked that Agenda Item 45 be pulled forward.
And I ask that because I know the applicant waited a long time our last meeting before.
Oh, but we're on 45, no, we aren't, it's 42, 3, and 4. Oh, you already rearranged in my book, okay. Okay, so there's 45, sorry. All right, Agenda Item VAR, this is 45, VAR 60361, Public Hearing, applicant owner Nephi Sanchez, Possible Action, Request for Variance to Allow an Eight-Foot-Tall Wall in Front Yard Where Maximum Wall Height of Five Feet Is Allowed on .57 Acres, 820 Lacy Lane, RE Residential Zone, Ward 1, Councilwoman Tarkanian. Planning Commission and Staff Recommend Denial to Public Hearing, which I declare open, is the applicant present or someone representing the applicant?
He's here.
And if you'd say your name, please.
Nephi Sanchez, 820 Lacy Lane.
Thank you very much, and could we hear why staff and planning are recommending denial, which I know the answer there.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Tom Parago, Planning Director, for the record, yes, staff finds that the proposed wall height is not in conformance of Title 19, and there's no evidence of hardship of a physical nature on the property, and therefore is recommending denial.
Thank you very much. Okay, anyone, this is a public hearing, anybody want to be heard on this item, please come forward and state your name. Councilwoman, yours.
At first, when I heard this, I didn't think this is going to work, particularly in that neighborhood, but if you look at that picture that you just had up there, the one that showed the side, that, it's on the edge of a cul-de-sac, if you can see the cul-de-sac ends where the wall is, right on the left side, you could see it ending, and behind that is the water district, and we have had several robberies in the area, not just at this home, but at other homes, because there is just not enough security over there, and sometimes openings occur in walls, and people get through where they crack through the stones to crawl up. So this yard, which is a beautiful yard, will have a, it's proposed to have a artistic metal-type fence put around it, and that's what we are seeing right now. And I'll just let him continue for a short period, but our concerns about it have been addressed, and we are no longer concerned, and we're ready to move for approval, so I don't think you have to take too long, but you just might show them. And say your name first, please.
Nephi Sanchez, 820 Lacy Lane.
That's fine.
Sure, I'll just show you, I have an updated design, so these are some preliminary designs, so here's the latest one, hopefully this one communicates a little bit better the goal, which is that it will be a piece of art, and the neighbors that have seen this design, they all think that it would be a great addition. Late in the game, I went out and tried to get and communicate with all my neighbors, and I gave Councilwoman Tarkanian a heat map of the neighbors that supported me, and it's concentrated right around me, because all of them that have seen what I'm doing, they all agree that this is going to increase the property values, and it will be, bring an air of security and art to the neighborhood, and they're all for it, so.
And it isn't a wall, exactly, it's a fence, as you can see, it's only in a small place where it's a wall, it is this type of iron that oxidizes and gets this arty look to it. He did contact almost all of the neighbors, and I even had neighbors call me on their own and just say, pass this, this is a beautiful fence, and we really could use it in the area. He's also adding extra lighting, which is helping the area, it does not have good lighting from public utilities, and I believe that you have a great amount of people behind you, and I move to approve. And I ordinarily wouldn't, but I move to approve.
Thank you. There's a motion to approve on Agenda Item 45, please vote and please post, and probably all your neighbors are going to say, come do it to my property. The motion carries.
He has put up the cameras, security cameras, and they are also putting up security cameras. It's just when you're next to someplace that's not well, you know, guarded, it's hard.
Thank you. Good luck, beautiful. Okay, Agenda Items 42 through 44, 42, VAR 59491, on a request for variance to allow a zero-foot side yard setback where 10 feet is required, and 18-foot rear yard setback where 20 feet is required, a 16-foot tall wall along a portion of the front property line where five feet, top three, three feet, 50% open, is required, and to allow a 16-foot tall wall along the east property line where eight feet is the maximum allowed. Agenda Item 43, SUP 59492, on a request for a special use permit for proposed 227-unit senior citizen apartment development with a waiver to allow no ground-level non-residential development in apartments located on the ground. And Agenda Item 44, SDR 59494, on a request for a site development plan review for proposed 227-unit senior citizen apartments development with waivers to allow an eight-foot landscape buffer on a portion of the north property line, zero-foot landscaper buffer on east property line where 15 feet is the minimum required. These are abeyance items, the applicant is Ovation Development, the owner is GES Family Limited Partnership on 7.09 acres, southwest corner of Vegas Drive and Rock Springs Drive, C-1 Limited Commercial Zone, staff and the Planning Commission recommend approval on all three items. These are in Ward 1 with Councilwoman Tarkanian. Our public hearings, which I declare open, is the applicant or representative present?
Yes. Hello. Good afternoon, Jennifer Lazovich, 1980 Festival Plaza Drive.
Okay, Mr. Parago, you said everything's approved?
Thank you, your honor, I've asked Ms. Rankin to give a brief report.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, the applicant has revised their plans from the original proposal, and now the number of units is 219 units. In addition, the applicant has also revised the building heights of Buildings 1 and 2 from three stories to two stories, and Building 3 was revised to a combination of three and four stories in height. Planning Commission and staff find the proposed project is compatible with the surrounding development in the area, and the requested landscaping waivers on wall height, building setback variances are not going to have a negative impact to the existing single-family residential uses to the north and west, and the multifamily residential land uses to the south of the subject site. Staff and Planning Commission both recommend approval. Please note, we do have some additional condition changes here, first of all, delete condition number 10, as requested at Planning Commission by the applicant, and amend condition number 2 to read as follows, all developments shall be in conformance with the site plan, landscape plan, and building elevations for Buildings 1, 2, and 3, date stamped 9/2115, as well as in conformance with building elevations for Building 4, date stamped 8/1215, except as amended by conditions herein.
Thank you, and do you accept those conditions?
Yes, mayor, all of them, yes.
Those were the applicant's conditions, those were, did you go, you requested those?
Those are our changes based upon feedback that we got through the process.
Okay.
So this is a public hearing, and I am familiar with other developments that have been undertaken by this group, and they're phenomenal senior developments, just, I wish we could get rid of some of the ones that are already constructed 25, 35, 40 years ago and replace them with these, but you do great work. So with that, this is a public hearing, and anyone wishing to be heard on these items?
Mayor, could I make a brief presentation?
Yes.
Thank you. Jennifer Lazovich, as I said, 1980 Festival Plaza Drive, here today on behalf of Alan Malaski of Ovation Development. On behalf of Alan, we thank you for your comments, I am proud to represent Alan and all of his projects, and in particular, his senior housing projects, they really are beautiful. And if you could look at the overhead, please. This is an aerial of the location where we are proposing to do the senior apartments, it is hard zone C1, we are asking for a special use permit to do senior apartments, we don't need a zone change or anything like that, through your code, we are able to do senior apartments in a C1 zone with a special use permit. I do want to state a couple of things for the record, for us, perhaps not for the city council, but for the applicant and for the neighbors, this has been a long process. We originally submitted our application back in early June, and we did our first voluntary neighborhood meeting in June. In July, we had our first Planning Commission meeting, and we did the presentation, but there were still a number of neighbors who appeared and had concerns, so we held the Planning Commission, and we did a second neighborhood meeting at the end of July. As part of that neighborhood meeting process, we also invited neighbors who had attended to tour one of Alan Malaski's senior housing projects, it's called Tempo, and it's over on Russell and the 95. Now, the difference with that project versus the project before you today is that that's an affordable senior housing project, but honestly, if you've had the opportunity to see any of Alan's affordable senior housing projects, you would never know it. They really are beautiful from the outside and even the inside. We did have some neighbors who took us up on that offer, and they did come on a tour. In August, when we were supposed to go back before the Planning Commission again, we held it again, because there were still some additional meetings and dialogue we wanted to have with the neighbors, so we had another neighborhood meeting. And at that neighborhood meeting, there were some changes that were made, and I'd like to point those out, because it is what staff referred to, and that is, we reduced the height of some buildings, I'll walk through that in a minute, and we also reduced the number of units that we had been showing, so we had to get those changes incorporated with the conditions. We did go forward with the Planning Commission hearing on September 17. We did go forward with the Planning Commission hearing on September eighth. They did recommend approval. And of course, now we're ultimately here before you today so that Councilwoman Tarkanian can participate. Now, I did pass out a binder. I did go through this at the Planning Commission meeting. It has been updated. I won't go through it as in-depth as I did there. But I would like to highlight a couple of key things that I think are important. First of all, under tab number one are a number of question and answers that we had as we went through the neighborhood meeting process. We did that to address specific questions that the neighbors had. But under tab number two is the site plan that's before you today. And this is an important site plan because it does make the changes that we verbally talked about at the Planning Commission. Namely, if you look at this, here is Rock Springs right here. You have Vegas Drive to the north and you have ninety-five to the east. Originally, we showed three- and four-story buildings adjacent to Rock Springs. On the other side of Rock Springs is where you have the single-family homes. And in our, what I'll call, third neighborhood meeting, there was dialogue about, perhaps it's less of an impact to the homes to the west if we took those front two buildings and we made them two stories. So we did. So everything that you see in pink is what the two-story element of our project will include. Now, if you are in a home or driving down Rock Springs and you look east, you're going to see two two-story buildings. If you look farther east of that, right here in blue is our three-story portion of our building. And then this portion in green will be the only four-story component. And if you can visualize this particular piece of property, it sits, I say kind of down in a hole, but it's because Vegas Drive starts its flyover over the freeway right there. So we strategically put the four-story component here because it's dropped down pretty low. You do have the flyover and it's set back closer to the freeway and away from the residents, both to the west and then also to the south. The individual, I'll call them smaller, units that sit to the north and east, those would be units that are over garages, okay? Those are our only units that we have. When we did that design, we had to ask for some additional waivers and variances, which your staff read into the record. But we did that to try to accommodate any type of height that was moving towards the single-family residences. Now, this, right after that, you'll see, this is an artist rendering of what the proposed project would look like as you would drive into the gated entry off of Rock Springs. You'll see the two-story buildings in the forefront closest to Rock Springs. And then as you look back, you'll see the three-story. If you know any of Alan Malaski's projects, especially recently, he has been doing the concept of all interior hallways. In particular, I think that's good for a senior community because it, not that they maybe need to be forced to talk to each other, but you're going to pass each other naturally in the hallway. I think there's a lot more interaction. And certainly, when I've been on tours of the Tempo project, a lot of the residents participate in activities. They even have community gardens and things like that. It's very social on the inside of the building and I think that's important. Number three, for those of you who couldn't come to the Tempo project with us, I quite frankly think this looks like a fake or an artist rendering and it's actually an actual picture of the courtyard from Tempo. You can see Alan in particular is very, very, very big on landscaping and it shows. This again is the courtyard. This gives you an idea of what it looks like on the inside. This is a common area on the third floor of the Tempo project. In the, by the way, those are all free computers for the residents to use that are back there along the wall, which is a nice amenity. Again, this is just the level of detail that he has. This shows you what a model unit could look like with the floors. He does like a theater-type room where they show movies. This is the exercise room at Tempo. And then these are the hallways that I was talking about, where, you know, it's designed to be all internal. That's why you don't see any doors on the outside. Under tab number four, a lot of discussion was had during our neighborhood meetings about the traffic. And so what we did is, and we showed this to the neighbors and we did pass out, by the way, for the record, the neighbors got a copy of this binder in our last neighborhood meeting. So they've seen this information. But what we did is, we took our proposed project, and while it still says two-hundred-and-twenty-seven here, that is not what we're going forward, we're even less, we're at two-nineteen. But we did a traffic study comparison between our un, our project with, well, what would happen if you developed, which you could fit a hundred and six single-family residences on there, or what would happen if it was a combination of either commercial or office? What would the traffic look like for the neighborhood? And in all accounts, categorically, the senior apartments is drastically less in terms of traffic on the adjacent roadways. It all but doubles with the single-family comparison. And it more than, gosh, I don't even know, quadruples or, you know, it's far greater with the commercial and the office. So we did that in an effort to try to calm some of the concerns about how much traffic this project would have on, on Rock Springs. Now, one of the questions that came up when we did this original study, it was done in the summer and the school wasn't in. So the neighbors asked us to go back out and study traffic at peak school times, pick up and drop off, which we did. And the asterisk in this binder now shows that volumes are site-specific and do not change to school times. The point of that is to say that with our proposed project, we won't overburden the streets during those peak school times anymore than it would be whether school was in or out. Under tab number two, there, or excuse me, tab number five, there was quite a bit of discussion about, you know, this is a senior project. It is restricted to people who are fifty-five years of age and older. But there was a lot of discussion about, well, if you had one person who was fifty-five, what if you had a spouse or significant other who was forty? And, you know, we were honest about that. And we said, well, as long as one of the residences is fifty-five, you could theoretically have someone who is fifty or under fifty-five. But from a practical standpoint, we know from all of our senior projects that we've done that we don't have very many residents that are under fifty-five, period. So when you look under tab number five, we took all of our projects, senior projects, of which there are five here in Southern Nevada. And the tab to the far right shows that out of the total number of occupied units, which is five-hundred-and-forty-seven over five projects, only fourteen occupants spread across those are under fifty-five. So just naturally, you tend to have residents who are fifty-five years of age and older. Now, finally, I have two, two final points and then I'll turn it over for questions. As I indicated on this aerial, the property is already hard zone C-one. And we tried to spend some time with the residents and they're very educated on their own, but kind of describing for them what would happen or what it would look like if our project didn't go in and a commercial-type project went in. So in the binder, we showed examples of, I would call it, surrounding commercial projects, just in that immediate area. And there's all kinds of uses in there. There's Lowe's, there's fast food, there's grocery stores, there's auto parts stores. I mean, there's everything, there's coffee shops. There's everything from intense to maybe not so intense. But in all respects, it is all commercial and it naturally means that you would have more traffic coming from any of these types of projects. We didn't do that to threaten anyone. We just merely did it to educate about the nature of a hard-zone C-one piece of property and what could go there if, for whatever reason, our project didn't move forward. And the final piece is under tab number seven. Two things that I want to make a point about. This is our declaration of restrictions. Our, under Planning Staff's conditions, we have to agree to a deed restriction that would limit the property because of the nature of the use permit to fifty-five years of age and older. And we have submitted a document that we believe complies with that condition. And all it says is that this project would be inhabited by at least one occupant per unit that was fifty-five years of age and older. The only exception to that would be if we had an onsite manager who lives there, who might be younger than fifty-five, but that's an employee of us and it's only one exception. So we have to do that by the terms of the conditions of approval and we're happy to do it. But through the process, and, and we've already had this dialogue on, at the Planning Commission, so I just want to note for the record that I understand that what I'm about to say is not enforceable by the city. Your city attorney made that clear at the Planning Commission. But there were certain restrictions that the neighbors asked for Alan to agree to in addition to it just being limited to seniors only. And just to highlight what those are, and he's committed to do it. And so I just want to verbally state he's willing to do that. He is willing to verbally limit the number of occupants per unit as I described during the Planning Commission hearing. He is willing to not participate in a voucher program typically, if that's a voluntary basis and he's willing to not participate in it. And, and then of course, as I indicated, the other restriction is the part about it being all fifty-five, at least one occupant would be fifty-five years of age and older. I know that those two things that I just said are not enforceable by the city. I can't ask for them to be part of the conditions today, but I stated it for the record at the Planning Commission and I'm stating it for the record again today that he is willing to do that to try to address some of the neighbors' concerns. Now, that concludes my presentation, other than to say, I have a number of people in the audience. Alan Malaski is one of them. Should you have any questions for him? We also have Ted Egerton, who prepared the traffic study. If there are any traffic-related issues. If there's any engineering-related issues, we have our engineer, Pete Loss. And then last but certainly not least is Bob Mills. He is the attorney who was president at the Planning Commission. He is, specializes in real estate law, but once worked for HUD. And in his role in working for HUD, he specialized in fair housing. So the deed restriction, the things that I've just talked about, about whether or not we have the right to say we aren't going to participate in voucher programs. We have already talked to our own external attorney about that. He's said that we have the ability to do that, but he's here for questions as well if there's anything that you would like to ask him. So thank you very much for your time. I know it's been a long day.
Thank you. Any questions down here? Very thorough. Was there anybody, I did not close the public hearing, anybody from the public? Please come forward and state your name for the record. There goes your whole five-hour speech. Thank you. Very thorough report.
While he's coming up, could I ask a question? Did you limit the number of occupants in an apartment?
Yes, we did.
You did. To how many?
Under tab number one, lucky I have this book. Under tab number one, what we agreed to do is, we have three types of units. In a studio, we would limit the maximum number of residents to two. In a one-bedroom, we would limit the maximum number of residents to two. And in a two-bedroom, we would limit the maximum number of residents to three.
And that's all in what you'll, what you'll go down as permanent usage? So that it can't change? I'm asking planning.
Do you want me to answer?
What was the question?
Should I ask that, legally?
What was the question?
I think the answer is, we are willing to do that voluntarily, but, and certainly, your city attorney's going to say, that's an unenforceable condition from the city. So I have to state it for the record because, and Alan will abide by it, but you can't, I can't actually put it on as a condition.
Okay, I know that we can't enforce it on the city. And what I was talking about, Brian, was just the number of occupants in each apartment, each type of apartment.
Whether or not we could enforce that, the number of occupants?
Can we?
We couldn't, just because that would be an everyday three-sixty-five, twenty-four-seven job to try to do that.
So we can't. But they're putting it down and Alan is committing to that?
Correct.
Okay, so.
And they could also, they could also put that in their leases.
Until he sells it, yeah.
They could also put that in their leases, that they would only allow a maximum of, you know, three people.
And would you put that in your leases?
Yes, yes, we would. Yes.
And if you sell it?
Well, by the way, let me just say this, and again, it's unenforceable. But one of the things that we talked about doing is recording a second deed restriction that, that we did so that we could put, if Alan were to sell the project, a future buyer on notice of conditions that we had agreed to through this process.
And, and Mayor and Councilwoman, the conditions of approval that planning places will also be recorded on the property as well?
Okay, so is that a condition already? I didn't hear it when we talked about it, the condition that a sec, that a second deed would be done to restrict the way you said.
I think, I think the condition was that it'd be a fifty-five and older. Tom, if you could state what the condition was regarding to senior housing?
That is correct, yes. We have a condition of approval on our, all senior apartments that come through the process for a deed restriction requiring at least one member of each unit to be fifty-five years or older in accordance with other practices throughout the United States.
And we also, we know that there's a limit as far as how many in each apartment. Now, what I'm asking is, are you going to go ahead? You said, he talked, you talked about this second deed restriction.
Yes, we, what I'm saying to you on the record, based upon what our dialogue was at the Planning Commission, is that we are voluntarily agreeing to put on a second deed restriction on our property that, that lists the conditions that are otherwise unenforceable by the city, which limits the number of occupants and says that this project will not participate in Section eight or, or accepting vouchers.
And that portion would not be part of the conditions? Because I don't know if that's a.
Yeah, but it would be down legally. All right, thank you.
And if and when, Council, if and when it would be sold, would they come back in front of this body to be asked to accept those? Or do we have no control over those conditions going to a new buyer?
The selling of it wouldn't, you wouldn't have any control of those conditions, but the conditions would be recorded on the parcel to let any future buyer know that it is conditioned to be a, a senior apartment complex.
But the vouchers and all of that, that's just theirs?
That, that would be up to the.
That would not be enforceable.
That's correct, that's this owner, Mayor.
Okay, so that's fine.
But a selling doesn't come before the council, does it?
No.
It's not, no.
Okay, this is public hearing and please, sir, come on up, state your name for the record and make your comments.
Thank you, Mayor, Councilman, and especially my Councilwoman, Tarkanian, who, I appreciate all the help that you've given us on this. Can you see this?
Yes.
Okay. This is a little bit different perspective on the neighborhood. The proposed.
Oh, yes, your name, sir, please.
Pardon me?
Your name for the record.
Dennis Schultz, seven one zero four Copper Leaf Drive.
We only needed your name, but thank you. Please go ahead.
All right. It's a little bit different perspective on the neighborhood. The proposed development is right here. And up at the top, we have kind of a summary of what I call the core neighborhood, which would go from Vegas Drive down to Washington and then Rock Springs over to Tenaya. Most of these properties are quite, you know, they've been around for a while. Thirty-five years, thirty years, thirty years. And the newest one is to the south of the proposed development, which is a fourteen-unit-per-acre townhouse community. And that is twenty-five years old. Everything you see on this map is one and two stories. We had a lot of neighborhood interest in this development because of the density and the height of the development. Everything existing that you can see is two stories and the proposed development is two, three, and four stories. Fortunately, they did move the units towards the freeway, but nonetheless, there's still three- and four-story development in a one- and two-story neighborhood. The other issue is the density. And I guess this number right here, that was the original density, thirty-two units to the acre. But I guess that two-hundred-and-nineteen units, seven acres, were now about thirty units to the acre. But if you look at the existing development in the area, we have as low as seven units per acre. And then we have ten units to the acre, which is the RCL zoning. And then we have fourteen, two-fourteen unit-to-the-acre developments. And then we're going to be coming in here with a thirty-unit-per-acre development. It's just a very high density for an existing established neighborhood. The only density close to what is being posed here is across Vegas Drive at the Summerlin Antrada Apartments. And they're two-story also, and they're twenty-three units to the acre. So our neighborhood did not feel that the density. So, our neighborhood did not feel that the density and the height were compatible with what existed in the neighborhood. This is being proposed as a special use permit under a C1 zoning. And some of you might be wondering, why is this zone C1? We have a 60-foot neighborhood, a street on Rock Springs, and I think we have an 80-foot street here on Vegas Drive. It's really not a commercial location. In fact, everything you see here is zoned residential. To find commercial, the nearest commercial, you'd have to go over to Rainbow, over the overpass, or down to Buffalo, or you'd have to go up to Lake Mead. So, this somehow, in 1984, was spot-zoned by the city council, not you all, I'm not pointing fingers at all. It's just, it was zone C1, and it sat there through all these boom years, never developed, and there's not a mystery why it didn't develop. It didn't develop because it's not a commercial location. In fact, I believe that the developer would even agree with waiver number two, that if you're going to do a special use permit of senior housing in a C1 zone, condition two requires that the ground floor be commercial. Now, we really don't want ground floor commercial either, just as the developer does not either. But I think the concept is, he agrees with us that this is not a commercial location because he's doing residential on the ground floor. With respect to the traffic study, the original traffic study that was proposed to us was done when the school was not in session. Has that traffic study been updated, or is it the same traffic study?
She told us, I don't know if you're here at the time, she told us that it was updated.
It was updated.
And it was almost even.
Okay, okay.
The one that was with school open and without school open.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify that, because I know the road would be widened. This property would probably never develop as commercial. It might someday, somehow, but being that we went through a boom, just a development boom in this town through 2007, it did not develop commercial. It tells you it was not a wisely-zoned, commercial location. So, basically, I appreciate what the developer has done, and how he's worked with us and stuff like that, and he's addressed many things, but the issue is still the density of the development and the height of the development. And what we would request is that you send him back to sharpen his pencil, as they told him at the first planning commission meeting, and reduce the height and reduce the density. So, thank you.
Thank you very much for coming.
I believe we have one more person.
Anyone else wishing to speak? And please, come on down, state your name for the record.
I'd also like to say that Dennis did a lot of research on this, and it's in the back of your blue book under this item.
I have a question.
Yes, please, Councilman.
I think it's of our staff, our planning staff. Well, it is zone C1. I mean, yeah, and if wishes were other things and so on, we could wish it wasn't, but it is, and it's a property right, so it has a certain value. And it is true, we could restrict or lower the height of residential if we chose, but if somebody wanted to put up a rather tall building there of any particular purpose they chose, they could do it, couldn't they? They could put an office building of sorts up there?
They would be in a commercial property, they'd be limited by residential adjacency standards, so there would be some limits on the height.
But when you say, that's rather vague, isn't it? Because we'll have people come to us with limits of 50, 60, 70 feet, which, next to a freeway, is reasonable, and if you've got a sectioned land road like Vegas Drive, you know, I guess it's like, it's probably a reasonable height. And then, you'd try to scale back to houses, you know, you'd try to do your best, scaling back to houses that are there, but you could put up something a lot higher than this stuff.
That's true. By the time you got to the portion of the property next to 95, you could get up pretty high, because you would be far enough away from those residences. Without running the numbers, but yes, you could.
You could reduce the density of dwellings, but you could also put up a dwelling that's pretty darn high.
That is true.
You know, you could put one with large units that might be 50, 60 feet high, you know? I mean, it's possible. This is C1. I mean, that's not my word, but it is C1, and it looks to me like they've done a good job of trying to conform with what the neighbors have wanted. There are just some things that you can want, and some things you can wish for, and there are other things that are already set in law, is the way I see it. Thank you.
Ms. Lazovich, do you want to say anything else?
Just for the record, I was going to address, because your staff hadn't, we had run height models to see what you could build on that property and still meet the residential adjacency, and you could get up to 50 feet. And Tom's right, I mean, it's where you put it on the property, but you could meet residential adjacency standards and get some height.
Thank you. Okay, ma'am, you state your name, please, for the record.
Hi, my name's Judy McWharter, and I actually live on Vegas Drive, or, I'm sorry, not Vegas Drive. Well, I forgot where I live. What can I say?
Rocks, Rock Springs?
English in a circle. I'm sorry. I'm nervous, yeah. English in a circle.
Next to Katz-McMillan? Are you next to the elementary school Katz-McMillan, the two buildings there?
No, I'm straight, when you walked out my front door, you'd look straight at the development property, right? I'm just south of Vegas Drive. Anyways, I have supported this from the beginning, because I know what could go in there. I can see nothing but this big rock pile with a fence that gathers every type of garbage that blows through. I can see the freeway behind, I could actually see the cars, day and night, the noise and the overpass. So, this development, as proposed, being a senior community, the landscaping, the night lighting, the architect that is going to be involved, the gated community is so welcome that I can't even begin to tell you what an upgrade and a boost this would be for an older property that has been there for a while. We got hit really, really hard. A lot of people walked away from their homes, and it's starting to come back. So, to have something visual on that corner with the dog park across the street on one area, and then the other apartment buildings on the other side, it would just blend, and it would really upgrade that whole corner. For myself, I cannot wait for this project to go through. As far as the height and the different requirements and the things that was, you know, brought up as possible stumbling blocks, this developer addressed all of them. We talked about them, they made their changes. That's unheard of. I just don't know what else could be expected. I'm just really hoping that this moves forward. Like I said, I am the one in my neighborhood that looks directly at this lot. That is where I am at. And as far as the traffic goes, we've been asking for and hoping to have a stoplight there where the elementary school children come through. There's no traffic over there. I'm retired, I'm home, and the backup does result from not having a light there. So, if there was a traffic light there, the flow would be wonderful.
And if I were Mr. Malaski, you'd get your choice of occupancy in his development if you're yet 55.
Oh, I'll take him up on that. Thank you very much. I'll have the penthouse.
No. He does, I mean, you know, appreciate your coming down, and certainly the points and concerns, I understand them from my perspective, but knowing this developer and what he does, and knowing seniors, people over 55, they're, I mean, you could have any other type of apartment complex going in there.
We could have container storage.
Kids and kids driving everywhere.
I'm already looking at something ugly, you know, all the time.
And so, I mean, my knowledge of this developer, you couldn't, and he delivers what he says, always, 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 so.
I do believe that.
Appreciate it, but, you know, looking at the alternatives, what could be there? Forget the commercial development, which is right, that, you know, it hasn't been in all these years, and knowing everything, because I drive the 95 in that area, used to do it twice a day, every single day of my life for 30 years, and know that dirt that flies around there, so.
Yeah, it's bad.
You know? But we appreciate both of you coming down, certainly, and I'm sure that Mr. Malaski, Ms. Lazovich, really appreciate the comments and concerns for it.
Thank you for your time.
So, Councilwoman, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Councilwoman, let's go.
All right, I need to check a couple of things. The applicant also is, as I understood, as I read through everything, going to put a buffer?
Oh, sorry, I didn't close public hearing either. One more. Please come forward and state your name. Yes, you're on.
Hi, good afternoon, I'm Janet Carter. I just wanted to just briefly state that because of the length and time of the meeting, it was very difficult for a lot of other people to come and join us at this meeting today. But, so I'm here representing about 554 residents in my neighborhood, either by signed petition or by homeowners association from the Willow Tree or Rainbow Gardens. And we're seeing that a very high, four-story building does not fit into our neighborhood, regardless of the comments that are made, and how beautiful his apartments are throughout the valley, and they are. He does a good job. But it does not fit into our neighborhood, and at the planning commission, we felt our voices were not heard. We had people that came to the meetings and went through the process, but our voices were not heard. So, because it's America, and I believe in the voice of the small person versus the big business, that possibly you'll hear our voice today. We are concerned about this size and high-density people in a small area is negatively going to impact our neighborhood. So, I appreciate the time. Thank you.
Thank you for coming down and for your comments. Anyone else? I will close the public hearing now, Councilwoman.
I wanted to check with planning, and that is, my understanding was, on the initial material that I received, there was going to be something of a buffer along the wall on the freeway side, done by the applicant. Am I correct?
Yes.
Yes, Jennifer Lazovich, for the record. We are asking for, it's either a waiver of variance, I'm sorry, and I don't have it in front of me right now, to build a 16-foot-tall, I'll call it a sound wall, along the 95.
And it's a sound wall that, according to what I read, is meant to be a buffer between the noise of the freeway and the, which I thought was a wonderful idea for you to put in there.
Yes.
It really was, and I haven't had any other applicant offer to do that.
Thank you.
So, that is something that's very good. And the other thing was, on the landscape, on the pictures that were shown, the backup and some that we even had in your backup, it didn't show the walkable community streets that we had talked about, so I want to make sure that that's in there. You remember, Mr. Malaski and Jennifer, that we talked about, we were going to have, you'd have the street, and then you'd have some landscaping, and then you were going to have the sidewalk, and then you were going to have additional landscaping. And with that, I feel that the view from outside with the two-story right there is going to really be very, very good for that area. I have to tell you, when I go down that area and I help start those two schools, I sort of feel ugly. You know, I feel there's this big, open space, and it collects, it collects stuff, paper, newspaper, and once in a while, a vagrant or so, and I have always hoped that we could improve that neighborhood. We had all that time where, even though it was C1, somebody could have come in and said, hey, I'd like to build houses there. It wasn't that you had to build C1, you could build the others, you can always go downwards as far as that's concerned. And I never had one come to me, and I don't know of one that came to the city, that for that property was interested in doing that. So, I do have a concern about that property. I do have a concern about the neighborhood. The four-story is going to be where the land lowers, so that'll help some. You still will have some three-story, four-stores showing, but it's all towards the freeway. This whole thing has put me in a rather difficult position, because I believe so strongly in resident input, and I don't believe that I have ever, I always have worked for a win-win situation. I don't have that with all, you know, with the majority of the neighborhood this time. I have a lot that came to us after our meetings and told me, it's all right with me, it's all right with me, you know, they stopped me as we, this is fine. Some of them that sent letters had misinformation, and so I'm assuming that through time, they've gathered the correct information. But we've tried very hard to make this something that is good. And secondly, we need good, solid senior housing. And we need it not only for those who have, do not have the monies, we need it for those who may have the money, you know, the middle class that maybe wants to go someplace but leave their bigger home or something. We need something that when you go in there, you don't feel old and worn out and ready to be thrown out. And as I've visited Mr. Malaski's homes, I felt that. I felt that this is something, somebody could enjoy this, and who knows, it may have lots of romances in there, too. Who knows, you know? In all these nice places. But in any case, I feel bad in that I haven't, I don't have it as close to a win-win as I would like. This happened one other time, though, and I'm going to explain it. When they wanted to put the Buddhist temple on Charleston, I had hundreds of people who did not want that. I felt it would be good, and I tried for win-win, got as close to as I could, but not as close as I like to get, and you know, since the day that opened, I have not had one single complaint. I have all positive, all positive, and everybody says how happy they are that it's there. So, I'm going to move to approve this, but I'm going to say, I hope it turns out the way the...
It will. It will. I guarantee you it will.
I think it will, but in order for it to happen, Mr. Malaski is going to have to make that landscaping as beautiful as we talked about. I saw beautiful landscaping when I went out to visit your other senior home, but it has to even be more beautiful than that. And do it so that when you walk along there and you take your walk on what we call a walkable community, sidewalk and everything, you feel as if you're just about in a park, and that's what we need to have. And was there anything else from planning? You know all the questions that I brought up? I think we've addressed them all?
I think we have, and to confirm on Rock Springs, it appears there are three rows of trees, and the sidewalk goes right down the middle of them, so I think it meets everything that you expected.
Three rows of trees, because there was another row closer to the buildings, right? Three rows on that walkable community park.
And Councilwoman, if you'll take them one at a time.
Yes.
First, on 42.
Okay. And before I do take them, though, I want to say Dennis is the epitome of what you should be if you are a concerned citizen and you care about your citizenry. And that's why I feel bad that I can't go in the direction he would like me to go, but Dennis, I respect very, very much what you have done. I've got that gut feeling, from what I've experienced through my years here, that this is going to turn out good for your community, and so I hope so. And I will then move to approve item number 42 with all conditions.
Thank you. There's a motion on agenda, item 42, to approve, subject to all conditions. Please vote, and please post. Motion carries. And on agenda, item 43.
I move to approve with all conditions.
There's a motion to approve on agenda, item 43, subject to all conditions. Please vote, and please post.
And I also will move to approve item number 44 with all conditions, and I would like to say that some of the variances that you needed, the waivers, were due to the fact that we were doing other things, the barrier wall and other things along that line. It wasn't due to what you needed so much as what you were doing for the community.
That's right. And Mayor, just one quick clarification on item number 44, the site plan review, it's per the revised conditions.
Hold on one second, please. Hold on one sec. Agenda item 43 carried. Let's go on then, please comment.
On item number 44, just want to note that the motion is to include staff's revised conditions.
And what were your revised conditions? Would you read them out loud, please?
Delete condition number 10, and then we changed condition number two to include some updated date stamps of plans from the revisions that we got on September 21st.
What was item 10 that you deleted?
That's the removal of the billboard. There's a billboard on this site. It was approved in 1992. The app... The applicant asked for that to be removed at planning commission. Planning commission agreed with that condition to be removed.
So the billboard is gone?
No, the billboard will remain.
How, and why, again?
I can answer that. So we are not, that's a condition of sale. We do not own the billboard. Our condition to purchase this property does, means that billboard stays, and we have always shown it on our plan all the way through, that the billboard remains in its current location. We don't have the right to remove it.
So you're saying whoever owns the land wants to keep the billboard?
Correct.
Maybe he should turn it into one of those secret-looking billboards next time that we have a review.
Okay, so there's a motion now on 44, Councilwoman? Motion to approve on 44?
Yes, yes.
Subject to all conditions. There's a motion to approve on 44. Please vote and then please post.
Is there anything I could have?
And what is the timeline for beginning construction, and how long will you be under construction while we're posting? Has everybody voted? No, Councilwoman, you didn't vote yourself. There we go. Motion carries. So now that you're going forward, what's our timeline? Good afternoon.
I think it'll take about a year to get through the city approval on the design of the building.
Okay.
To get it approved for permit, maybe a little less if things go well.
Well, as long as the staff hears that, it'll go fast.
And it takes about 15 months to construct.
Wonderful.
Correct.
You know, I wonder if maybe when you do open up, you might invite the neighbors so they can come and see how peaceful and...
No, he's obviously going to have a party because there are those who live around the neighborhood that really are tired of taking care of their lawns and want somebody else to take care of them.
I'll have an open house.
Yeah. And, you know, you have, and the amenities you have in the senior home that I visited are similar to what we'll have in this home, right?
Similar, but not exactly.
I will tell, not exactly the same, they couldn't be, but I will tell you, a senior might not want to leave much with all that's in there.
Thank you.
Thank you very, very much.
Thank you, and can't wait for you to come downtown.
Thank you.
Downtown.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Good luck.
Appreciate it.
Okay. Agenda item 46, a date on appeals filed, the required public hearings, and instruct the city clerk to set the public hearing dates and appeals from the city planning commission meetings in dangerous building or nuisance letter abatment.
Thank you.
Thank you. And now we will move on to citizen participation. And that's agenda 47, citizen participation, public hearing. Public comment during this portion of the agenda must be limited to matters within the jurisdiction of city council. No subject may be acted upon by the city council unless that subject is on the agenda and scheduled for action. If you wish to be heard, come to the podium, give your name for the record. The amount of discussion on any single subject, as well as the amount of time, any single speaker is allowed, may be limited. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak under this portion of the agenda? Again, please come to the microphone and give your name. No address needed.
Good afternoon, Mayor Pete Los, Councilman. I'd like to specifically talk about recycling, and I would like to address it to Councilman Anthony, because I'm in your ward, Ward 4.
Please.
So first, the preface of, I want to bring up recycling because I want to know what your feelings are, and if there's no precedent set, this isn't big on your mind, then I would like to tell you a little story.
Any comments to specific what I'm going to recommend, probably, is that if you have specific issues to be addressed with it, that you would call Councilman Anthony's office, make an appointment with him?
I'm going to write him a letter specifically, but I just want, this is public comment.
Okay.
I just wanted to tell you a quick story, Your Honor.
Yes, sir.
I'd just briefly say that on behalf of myself and Councilman Coffin, we both are in favor of recycling old legislators into city council members.
You're going to love my story.
That's probably not what you're talking about. But so you know, our staff is currently in negotiations to bring single-story recycling to the city of Las Vegas.
The co-mingling bins?
Yes, sir.
We need to step that up.
Yes, we do.
Because a long time ago, I lived in the city, and I would bring my little recycling bins down to the curb. This is my story, by the way, I'm sorry.
Okay.
And I'd look around, I'm the only one. Wow, okay, well, I'm doing my part. And then about 14 years ago, I moved to the city of North Las Vegas. Same thing, take my little recycling bins down to the curb every other week, only one on the block. And about seven years, seven years ago, North Las Vegas converted almost the entire city into the co-mingling bins. Once a week, pick up, wow, everybody recycles. It's amazing, and it's so easy. And then I, we just moved back to the city this year, and I'm back to these bins, and I'm the only one on the street that's recycling. So I talked to Republic Services, they said that if I spoke with, and I'll write you a letter formally, this is just a gripe session, but if my councilman can spearhead and have my area go first, Republic Services says that they've got the whole valley program to be converted to the co-mingling bins, but it just seems like the city is not moving.
Sir, my assistant is right over there. He's going to give me, give you his card, and we'll keep you updated on what's going on with cycling, when it comes to the city council for an agenda item, and we'll keep you posted on it, absolutely.
Okay, well, thank you for your time, and thanks for letting me complain.
Bye-bye. Thank you. Anyone else wishing to be heard, please come forward. Those with twisted ankles are allowed to come forward. Okay, hearing done. I will close. This will move on to 48, which is, goodness, council participation. Council member recognition comments made by individual city council members during this portion of the agenda will not be acted upon by city council unless the subject's on the agenda scheduled for action. Is there any member of the city? This is the dumbest question, of course. Every council member always has something to say. We'll start with Councilwoman, since she just finished up the entire agenda. You go first.
All righty. We are going to have in Ward 1, an enjoyable afternoon of high-spirited country western music, just like they have in Ward 2. Isn't that great for us? And I can't play anything, so it's wonderful we have it. The music will be provided by local children's band called Mama's Wranglers and Nashville's Independent Music Awards Best Country Duo in 1314 called Tennessee, comprised of Tennessee Bowie, is that how you pronounce that? Sure. And Matt Keeler. This up-and-coming duo combines their songwriting and performance skills to create a refreshing Americana pop sound, coming from two different sides of the country, from Las Vegas and also from Indianapolis. They both moved to Nashville in pursuit of furthering their solo careers. There will be plenty of fiddle-playing, yodeling, boot-stomping, clogging, and good old-fashioned country music at this free, family fun event. Food and refreshments will be available for purchase. This concert will have lawn seating. Please bring low-back chairs and blankets to be more comfortable, and sorry, there are no glass containers or pets permitted at this performance. For more information, call 702-229-3514. And this will be held Saturday, November 14th, at 2:00 p.m. at Essex Circle Park, which is located where Essex Drive meets Charleston. And thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, Councilman Beer is way down there at the end, who caused the long day to happen.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I didn't hear on that senior apartment project in your ward, Councilwoman?
Yes.
How many machines?
How many?
Fifteen, fifteen or seven.
Fifteen or seven.
Machines, how many slot machines is there?
Never mind.
Two.
Two, okay.
One for you and one for me.
Per apartment.
On this Friday, two days hence, it will be the very last Coffee with the Councilman for 2015, although I'm not, you know, swearing coffee off. I don't know where my staff came up with that idea. We'll be out at the Einstein Brothers at Sahara and Durango in the Lakes Business Park from 7:30 to 9:00 o'clock this Friday morning. Hope to see our city residents out in that neck of the woods there. Interesting event this Saturday at La Cordon Bleu College of Culinary Arts in Ward 2, starting at 10:30 in the morning, is a Come Cook and Be Married Gingerbread Decorating Contest slash shindig slash, should be fun. And everyone is invited. Details, just Google La Cordon Bleu Culinary College and look for the Las Vegas campus. Interesting, one of the instructors at Cordon Bleu, Chef Robert Teddy, I guess he has since moved on to M. Antoinette Legendary Cakes and Confessions, just won the Halloween Wars contest on the Food Network. He's one of our local success stories. In the final episode, which aired this last week, Undead Dinner Party, was judged by Shin Min Lee, a famed pastry chef, Brian Kenny, makeup artist for horror and science fiction films, and of course, another Las Vegas connection, Elvira Mistress of the Dark, was another of the celebrity judges for that event. Again, Chef Robert Teddy, former pastry instructor at La Cordon Bleu College of Culinary Arts, currently with M. Antoinette Legendary Cakes and Confessions. Apparently a play on historical words, let them eat cake. Last beers with beers, coming up. Because of Thanksgiving, we moved from the 4th to the 3rd Thursday of November, that'll be November 19th, from 5:30 to 7:30, we will be at the now venerable neighborhood hotspot, Three Angry Wives Pub's, 5:30 to 7:30, 7:30 to 8:00, because Sarah will be with me, we'll have the Four Angry Wives Pub session briefly at Three Angry Wives. On this day in musical history, November 4th, 1961, a very young Bob Diddin' made his Carnegie Chapter Hall debut in New York City. Fifty people, fifty people showed up and paid two bucks apiece for tickets. Wow. And that's all we've got, Mayor.
Yeah, that's good hair.
Good hair.
Could I ask Mr. Beer something?
If you're sure you want to ask him something.
Well, it's a unique situation. You know that they held an Irish wake in the Three Angry Wives, and I don't know of any other place where we've had an Irish wake held.
Ask Terry Murphy.
Terry Murphy.
Terry Murphy will tell you everything.
She'll let us know. I mean, in the tavern.
Oh, in the tavern.
I know they had it home.
She's the consul for Ireland, and she would know.
Yes, she would know. But I just thought that I'd never heard of one in the tavern before, because he was there.
Yeah. I've once, once there seen a leprechaun.
Not once?
Just once.
Oh, you got to be better. See, it's naughty, they don't show up for you.
It was really late at night. You were a really stinko, probably. Okay, Mayor Protem, hopefully you're getting an answer.
I'm getting an answer. She's working on it right now.
Good. Oh, I think I know those, too.
Mayor, you came out to Centennial Hills just the other day for your Coffee with the Mayor, and had a lot of great folks come out. The place was packed over at Lulu's on the corner.
Which is adjacent and owned by Metro Pizza, which is the second Metro Pizza, because the first one's on Decatur at Flamengo. The best pizza, best, best, best.
Didn't one of your boys work there?
Yeah, Obie, Oscar Junior.
Obie.
While he was in high school.
Well, we had a great turnout there, Mayor, so thanks for coming out to Centennial. Of course, it's always a good time when we get the mayor out in the Northwest. Events coming up, just one actually in the near future. It is my shredding event, which all of us do in our wards respectively. This one I want to make mention, folks, as you see this and get this information down, Saturday, November 14th, 10:00 a.m. to noon, at Centennial Hills Community Center, in the back. Don't park in the front, it's in the back, right across the street from the library. But we are having a prescription drug turn-in. So that's been a big request, I think, of all of us in our respective wards. So, folks, if you've got old prescriptions, please don't flush them, please don't throw them in the trash, bring them out there. No sharps, please. We don't, we're not accepting any needles at those locations, and we'll take your stuff and get it shredded. You can watch if you want to.
Do you use Opportunity Village for the shredding?
We do, in fact. I've got three boxes in my garage, ready to go for this event.
But it is Opportunity Village. So you're doing a mitzvah by having them come out and do this.
Yeah, they're great partners with the city of Las Vegas, and they do our internal shredding as well here at the city. Also, our continued partnership with Nevada Childseekers. We do have a missing young man. His name is Mackay Jackson. He's 17 years old, five foot 10, 150 pounds. He wears glasses occasionally, last seen around October 16th. Not exactly, know where he was last seen. Please, everyone, take a good look at this young man. We don't have a whole lot of information on him. If you know him, know of his whereabouts, please contact Las Vegas Metropolitan Police Department at 702-828-3111, or Nevada Childseekers at 702-458-7009. And well, let's get this kid back to where he is cared for, and people who want to see him, healthy and happy. Easy to stay in touch with me, as always. You can find me on Facebook, LasVegasNevada.gov/ Ward6 is always the easiest thing, or of course Twitter, or you can call my office, which everybody has this number, as well as my cell phone, or you can email me as well. So always trying to stay in constant contact with our constituents. So, thank you, Mayor, that's what I've got for you.
And did we get an answer?
I'm working on it.
Okay, we did get an answer.
No.
Okay. My question had been, is there first Friday this Friday? And we're trying to find that out, but it looks like there's not going to be a celebration other than normal whatevers. So, normal first Friday regardless, anyway. So please tune in, well, I think this is right after, no, it is right before our next council. KCLV, Channel 2, on the 3rd Monday at 4:00. For my TV shoe, shoe, my TV shoe. Hello.
You can do it.
Hello, Mayor. My pleasure this time to host once again our chief metro officer, our sheriff, and new East Area Command, and, let's see, we have a new officer also, a new position that's been created to work in community service, so we're very excited. We'll discuss the 130 new officers that are being hired, and how Metro again is responding once again to all of us when we get in those traffic accidents.